Hello. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our second meeting in April. The meeting will come to order. Madam Clerk, would you read the adequate notice compliance statement?
Yes. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk's Office in the preparation of the Council Annual Meeting Notice dated December 15, 2022, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised that the fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room.
Okay. Please call the roll.
Ms. Allen, here. Ms. Fox, here. Ms. Hairston, here. Ms. Hamlet, here. Dr. Levine, here. Mr. Miniger, here. President Vartan.
President. Okay, thank you. We'll now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And I forgot to ask somebody, so I'm just gonna do it.
Our honorary mayor?
Yes, you wanna get started?
I'm not sure if I still remember it.
That's gotta start.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you. And would you now read the explanatory notes regarding closed sessions and hearing and comments?
A closed session meeting is authorized by state statute, was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed session agenda. Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HGTV on Comcast 36 and Verizon 33, and we are televising live on YouTube this evening. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern and clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please give or email a copy to the City Clerk's Office at cityclerk@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit all to be heard, speakers are asked to limit their comments to approximately three minutes or so in length, unless you're using an electronic device to follow the meeting agenda, or needed for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We're now moving on to approval of the minutes. So we'll entertain a motion to approve the regular enclosed session minutes of March 21st, 2023. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries, the minutes are approved. We're moving on to ceremonial awards. We've got our mayor for a day, and I'll turn it over to Mayor Rehnes.
Good evening, everyone. The New Jersey League of Municipalities established several years ago that we would have a local government week throughout the state, and each municipality can determine what they want to do. One of the things that Summit does is we ask the eighth graders who are interested at the middle school to write an essay, and the contest winner, the essay winner, gets to be mayor for the day. So we did that today, this, today, and I'm very proud to say that the highlight so far of my day and my week is spending time with mayor for the day essay winner and eighth grade student Yiming Yang. Come on up. We started off the day when I picked up the mayor at LCJ SMS and took him to City Hall. We went to the Division of Public Works Garage where he delivered donuts to the workers. We met with Chief Evers and Deputy Chief Ambimbo and the police captain Ryan Peters. We also spent time at lunch with our city clerk, who explained the inner workings of the City of Summit, and then he had a tour of police quarters and City Hall before returning to school. And tonight, he will be sitting with me on the dais to give an update that he worked on with the communications staff earlier today. It was a pleasure to meet Yiming, who is a very impressive young man who took his role as mayor seriously and used his platform to champion a cause that is important to him. I have no doubt that Yiming will continue to make a positive impact in our community and beyond. So thank you for joining me earlier today and for participating this evening, and I wish you all the best in your endeavors. Your award for a really outstanding essay? Yes, we're gonna pose for a photo, because I told you. So now, without further ado, I would like to ask Yiming to read his essay. And then you can come up to the dais when you're done. Okay? Well, yeah, what you and Amy worked on. Thank you.
Hello, everyone, and this is my essay for the prompt, "What Would You Do If You Were Mayor For the Day?" If I were given the opportunity to be mayor for the day, I would create a day dedicated to community service and multicultural celebrations. Many people sometimes forget how fortunate they are to be living in Summit, New Jersey, as beautiful parks, a spacious library, and a great public education system. Residents of Summit are also diverse, for example, with a higher percentage of foreign burn residents. The best way to make Summit an even better place is to have more opportunities for community service and cultural representation. As a member of the Boy Scouts, I have had the greatest pleasure of doing all kinds of community service. My service ranges from packing sandwiches for the less fortunate to maintaining the infrastructure of downtown Summit. This day focuses on the same type of service, except on a much larger scale. This day would generate both community spirit and promote diversity within Summit. This plan is logistically viable for this city and would be a fun event for citizens to enjoy and learn from. First, the planning portion is relatively simple. We can contact multiple public and nonprofit organizations for specific community service events. For example, the Summit Free Public Library might need help reshelving some books or labeling books. Martin Brooks Park could have a trash cleanup like it does. Just keep in mind that this event needs enough variety and options to accommodate the community turnout. There could be snacks provided to incentivize people to come. For the multicultural celebrations, contacting some local members of the community and finding a location would suffice. A good start to find representatives for the night of different cultures would be to contact all parents that were in, say, the elementary and school multicultural nights. They can bring all the cultural fruits they want, as long as it's labeled for allergies. They can bring performers or musicians to show off parts of their culture. The city should also encourage them to bring artifacts and information about their culture, like they do for multicultural night at their schools. A good location is the field next to the library or memorial field. After preparations, the city can start advertising. This can be done through the Summit website newsletter, a physical letter sent to all houses, or posters. Poster locations include downtown shops and also public spaces. Advertising should be a few weeks in advance to reach the maximum amount of time possible. From 8:00 to 12:00 p.m. is the community service portion of the day. If the actual community service has a physical limitation on the number of volunteers, then there should be a sign up online through sites like signupgenius.com. Liaisons from the organizations needing the help could facilitate the service for, again, maximum efficiency. Snacks, again, could be prepared to incentivize people to work. From 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. is when the multicultural celebrations take place. Each country is given two tables to decorate outside. They can bring posters, artifacts, food, or anything they want to represent their culture. There could be a stage for performers, and everyone is given time to perform. The cleanup from 8:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. will be relatively easy, as everyone takes back whatever they brought themselves to the event. This theoretical, this theoretical day is what I'd create if I was mayor for the day. I really believe this can make Summit a better place in so many levels. Summit will benefit from the free community service, and residents will be more educated about different cultures. The town is already great, and this day will make it better. Thank you for listening to my essay.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you. And now we'll turn it over to you for your report, Mr. Mayor, as well.
As mayor for the day, I'm pleased to announce these upcoming events. The Summit Department of Community Programs is hosting the 2023 PAL Fishing Derby on Saturday, April 29th and Sunday, April 30th, from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Summit Municipal Golf Course located at 189 River Road. The pond at the golf course will be fully stocked with more than 1,000 rainbow trout, including 10 prize fish that are over 21 inches in length. Attendees are asked to bring a fishing cord and reel. Bait and tackle will be available for purchase. Admission to the fishing derby is free, and all residents are invited to attend. Summit Municipal Golf Course memberships are not required. The event will take place rain or shine. More information is available at summitcommunityprograms.com. The Earth Day Cleanup is on Saturday, April 22nd, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. People of all ages and abilities are invited to volunteer to help beautify city parks and open spaces. Individuals may volunteer on the day of the event at Bryant Park or Martin Brooks Park. To participate as a group, email event organizers prior to the event to be assigned to a site. Participants should bring work gloves and a beverage in a reusable container. Community service hours are available. Participants should bring relevant forms with them to the cleanup site to be signed by event organizers. Students in grade eight to 12 may attend without a parent or guardian with a signed permission form. For more information to schedule participation as a group or obtain permission forms, email There will also be a ribbon cutting ceremony for the new Lord Family Park Line Bridge on Saturday, May 22nd. The event begins at 2:00 p.m., and members of the public are invited to attend. On Sunday, May 23rd, is the first day of the Summit Farmers Market 2023 season. It is held from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. in Park and Shop Lot Number One on D Forest Avenue. The next Summit Free Market Friday event is on Friday, April 28th, from 12:00 p.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the municipal transfer station. This is a resident-only event. Bring yard sale quality items to share and take whatever you need. It's all free. Now, before I stop, I'd like to share a more personal story regarding a fundraiser. I lost my father to cancer in 2017, and after that, my family went to a nonprofit organization called Good Grief, which some of you may be familiar with. Good Grief is an organization that helps grieving families through nights of support and other programs. They help grieving families at no cost, meaning all their programs are dependent on donations. Their program is so important, because one in 13 kids in America will lose either a sibling or a parent. My family created a team for their annual fundraiser/5K called Semper Fi, a Latin motto. We've been able to raise more than $50,000 combined over the last couple of years. If you'd like to help us this year, there's a QR code, and also the link will be posted on the Facebook website of Summit. Thank you.
Very much. Nice job, Mr. Mayor. Okay. We're gonna move on to more reports? Nope? Okay. All right. City Administrator Michael Rogers, onto your report, please.
Council Resident, I'd like to reserve my two minutes plus two hours for my budget presentation.
Very good. Very good. Sounds good. Thank you. I will keep my report very brief, because we have a very full agenda. Three quick things, though. First, congratulations again to our mayor for the day, Yiming Yang. He did an excellent job with the essay and the report, and I'm pretty sure we'll see you back here one day very soon. Second, congratulations are in order to City Administrator Michael Rogers. We heard last week that Michael was nominated for the Gateway Regional Chamber of Commerce's Business Administrator of the Year Award. While we, yeah. While we all know how amazing Michael is, it's certainly nice to receive some recognition from outside of Summit as well. And third, the community will, will receive an encore performance from our spectacular President Pro Tem, Susan Hairston, at the next council meeting. I will be traveling abroad with my lovely wife to the wedding of our very dear friends. I will miss you all, but we'll be back with bells on for our budget hearing May 16th. So that is it for my report. I would now like to welcome the, the Girl Scout Troop Number 14160 to tell us a bit about their Taking Action project. Come on up. And maybe turn the microphone around a little bit. Thank you.
Good evening. How are you?
Thank you.
We are Troop 41160, and we are all thirty-three girls from here in Summit. Well, not me and our chair. My names Laura Steele, Marcello Carling, and our troop has been working on a Take Action project to earn their badge to spend September, and they were tasked with looking around the city and around town to find an issue that they felt strongly about, to investigate the issue, and to come up with a plan on how to address it. And the last piece is to present their plan to the city council. So without further ado, Troop 41160 and their Take Action plan.
Thank you. Hi.
Hello. We are Troop 41160. We are here because we want to act as a crosswalk for pedestrian safety. We have heard of pedestrian accidents happening right here in Summit. Many of these pedestrian accidents, don't even include our classmates, have happened while people have been walking through the crosswalk. We are geared to be one of the then an idea to improve pedestrian safety in our town. Through little investigation, our troops, we saw many of the crosswalks in town have faded paint, and perhaps drivers can't see the lines. We noticed when we investigated the intersection near CDS that there were no lines painted inside the crosswalks at all. After little research, we found that the colorful crosswalks have been painted to reduce dangerous conflicts between drivers and pedestrians. Up to 25, our solution is to paint the crosswalks white colors so that we can ensure safety for everything. It's important that all cars see pedestrians, so that pedestrians don't hit her. Here's an example of that, of Troop 41160.
Council President, is the microphone on? Is the microphone on?
Yep. Oh, thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Our troop is dedicated to helping save people's lives by getting the crosswalks in, in Summit, at the programs, some or all of the crosswalks are being better housed. We are strongly committed to this project and are willing to donate our own money from our recent efforts. In addition, we have researched how other cities have geared a colorful crosswalk, and we are also doing some work to help fund projects like this. We will donate to the asphalt art initiatives for the lives of up to $25,000, and we are funding some local leaders to use art to increase street safety.
Thank you.
The pedestrian safety has become a big issue here in Summit, and we want to do something about it. We see the problem is that crosswalks have faded lines and pedestrians, especially children, are scared crossing the street. We feel that painting the crosswalks bright colors is the first step to improving the safety of our community. Thank you, Summit City Council, for your consideration.
Thank you. Well, thank you so much to Troop Number 41160 for sharing your work with us and for working to make Summit a better place. This is a very important topic, and we will schedule a follow-up meeting with you and our city engineer and our capital projects committee chair, and we will hope, hope to collaborate with you on your idea. Thank you so much. Okay, I think at this point, we're gonna take a very quick break before the main event, the budget presentation, so stick around. Quick break, five minutes.
This isn't bad. Not bad.
Good evening, good evening. We're coming back.
I'm okay. Have a good day.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone, for the little break. We are back, we are back. This is the reason, this is part of the meeting, is the reason why this is my second favorite council meeting of the year, and I'm gonna turn it over to our fantastic City Administrator, Michael Rogers, soon to be awarded again, to walk us through our 2023 municipal operating budget.
Thank you, Council President. I feel like I need to change the paint line item for, from that last presentation. It seems like we're gonna have a lot more painting going on in the city area, so. All right, well, welcome, everyone. This is the 2023 municipal budget presentation. This is my eighth that I've been, I'm going into my ninth year this year, and I just, let's get into it and try to, okay. So this is just giving you an overview of my presentation, the topics we're gonna be talking about, and so you can kind of try to keep some of this in mind, but I just thought it would be important to lay out for you, just process, just our municipal goals, very, very broad explanation. I should just tell you upfront that there is a large budget document that will be posted tomorrow morning, and that will provide a great deal of much more detail that I, I intend to give in this presentation. This is just meant to give the council and the public a broad overview of, of the budget itself, but also some other topics that, that are important in this, certainly in the public and the tax impact, but some other points of interest. And this just gets into process, and so what, this process does start late August. Department heads will, will get into their, it seems like it never ends, but we, we probably start in earnest in the August, September period. And so I just want to take this opportunity to thank all the department heads and the chiefs, public safety chiefs, for, again, all the hard work that goes into this, into creating, operating, and capital budgets for their respective departments. Thank you again. It's always a pleasure. It's, this particular year was very difficult, just given what we were dealing with and some other appropriation line items that, and cost increases, so I commend you for all the work. And I also want to just take an opportunity to thank my staff in Communications, Amy Cairns and her associate Megan Trindell, who work on many aspects of what we put together, that budget document, being a big part of what we do, but just a lot of the editing that goes into it, as well as my assistant Megan Champney, and then, of course, our city CFO, who works side by side for many months during this process, and thank you, Tammy, who probably would like to have her weekends back now, so thank you. And just, just again, runs through what we do and where it starts with us in October, getting all the department budgets, getting into the individual council committees and their overview of the operation and capital. We, we did a public workshop. We do a public workshop in December of every year to give you the preliminary capital. And now we go into this year, and January, February, all of the department heads come in before the finance committee. There's still discussions going on about the capital and the capital, capital projects committee. And then at some point, once we get through the operational budgets, budget reviews, the finance and capital projects chairs and myself and CFO get together to kind of finalize the capital budget plan. And then, here we are, it's April 18th, and this is the introduction, presentation, introduction night. And so by law, the budget has to be out for at least 28 days for, for public review, and then, right now, we intend to have the public hearing on May 16th. And this is just, I'm gonna quickly go through this. There's more detail about the goals, the strategic objectives and key actions in the budget report, so you can just take the time to review, so you can better understand this. This is just dealing with financial, our municipal service and our certain aspects of that, as well as just the communication end of what we do, and into certainly municipal governance and best practices, innovation culture that we try to encourage with our employees, and certainly present to the governing body, customer service, and then just our community partners and stakeholders, and then, of course, and this is no particular order of importance, but just our city assets and what we do and how we need to maintain a very large infrastructure in the city. Okay, so this highlights two sides of the budget, revenue appropriation, and I'll just speak to, revenue last year was more of a discussion, this year is more on the appropriation side, but one of the challenges we had this year was our revenue reserves that were, we've been using over the last several years, and it's sort of the depletion, the biggest one being the American Rescue Plan stimulus aid that we received in 2021. The total amount was $2.29 million. We received 50% in '21, and we had only budgeted about $1,075,000, I think, and we received 1.145. So we had a little bit that went into a reserve, and then last year, knowing that that 1.145 was gonna go away, we had only budgeted about $850,000. So we knew that we were gonna be losing this revenue, but we did preserve over $300,000 of that. So this year, we're budgeting 366, a little over 366,000, but we still have an overall revenue loss challenge that we were dealing with, with 622,000. And this was just other reserve depletions. The bigger story is more on the appropriation side, and this is what I spoke about a couple of meetings ago, just the three big areas, the big cost drivers in our budget in any given year. And municipal debt service is something that I've sort of been highlighting for many years. There's been a lot of capital budget approvals over the last 10, 15 years, and it's really due to just trying to make sure we have the best facilities, buildings, roads, sidewalks. It's just many, many, many years of large capital budgets, and sort of how you fund that is through our, our long-term debt financing, and we're paying, it's just been sort of on this escalating scale for some years now, and I think we've kind of reached a pinnacle here with this year, unfortunately. There was a large increase from 2022 to 2023, as you can see in that number. Healthcare, pension, and just those three lines were $2.4 million that I needed to, all things equal on the revenue side, which it wasn't, but that's what I had to contend with. So that's, that was a little daunting at first, but we, we got through the process, and then just a couple of line items that were increasing as well. So this just gives you, again, a very high level, and I'll, I'll be gradually through the presentation, kind of getting a little bit more granular, but not too granular. This is the general fund. What you'll, we'll focus on are, the, the main one we focus on is the general fund that's tied to your tax rates. There's two other funds that we will speak of, the parking and sewer utilities, which I'll show next, but this is what, this is sort of why, what most people think about when they think about the municipal budgets, the general fund. And there's a, you know, a near 5% change there. Capital budget's down by 7%. And these are the two other funds. Sewer's going up more, doing more sewer infrastructure work this year. And then- We feel that making the crosswalks bright colors is the first step to improving the safety of our community. Thank you, Summit. Many towns will be very concerned about it.
Thank you. Well, thank you so much to troop number four one one six zero for sharing your work with us and for working to make Summit a better place. This is a very important topic, and we will schedule a follow-up meeting with you and our city engineer and our capital projects committee chair, and we will hope to collaborate with you on your idea. Thank you so much. Okay, I think at this point, we're going to take a very quick break before the main event, the budget presentation, so stick around. Quick break, five minutes.
This isn't bad.
Good evening, good evening. We're coming back.
I'm okay. Have a good day.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone, for the little break. We are back, we are back. This is the reason, this is part of the meeting, is the reason why this is my second favorite council meeting of the year, and I'm going to turn it over to our fantastic city administrator, Michael Rogers, soon to be awarded again, to walk us through our 2023 municipal operating budget.
Thank you, Council President. I feel like I need to change the paint line item from that last presentation. It seems like we're going to have a lot more painting going on in the city area. All right, well, welcome, everyone. This is the 2023 municipal budget presentation. This is my eighth that I've been, I'm going into my ninth year this year, and I just, let's get into it and try to, okay. So this is just giving you an overview of my presentation, the topics we're going to be talking about, and so you can kind of try to keep some of this in mind, but I just thought it would be important to lay out for you, just process, just our municipal goals, very, very broad explanation. I should just tell you upfront that there is a large budget document that will be posted tomorrow morning, and that will provide a great deal of much more detail that I intend to give in this presentation. This is just meant to give the council and the public a broad overview of the budget itself, but also some other topics that are important in this, certainly in the public and the tax impact, but some other points of interest. And this just gets into process, and so what, this process does start late August. Department heads will get into their, it seems like it never ends, but we probably start in earnest in the August, September period. And so I just want to take this opportunity to thank all the department heads and the chiefs, public safety chiefs, for, again, all the hard work that goes into this, into creating, operating, and capital budgets for their respective departments. Thank you again, it's always a pleasure. This particular year was very difficult, just given what we were dealing with and some other appropriation line items and cost increases, so I commend you for all the work. And I also want to just take an opportunity to thank my staff in communications, Amy Cairns and her associate Megan Trindell, who work on many aspects of what we put together, that budget document, being a big part of what we do, but just a lot of the editing that goes into it, as well as my assistant Megan Champney, and then, of course, our city CFO, who works side by side for many months during this process, and thank you, Tammy, who probably would like to have her weekends back now, so thank you. And just, just again, runs through what we do and where it starts with us in October, getting all the department budgets, getting into the individual council committees and their overview of the operation and capital. We did a public workshop, we do a public workshop in December of every year to give you the preliminary capital. And now we go into this year and January, February, all of the department heads come in before the finance committee. There's still discussions going on about the capital and the capital projects committee. And then at some point, once we get through the operational budgets, budget reviews, the finance and capital projects chairs and myself and CFO get together to kind of finalize the capital budget plan. And then here we are, it's April 18th, and this is the introduction, presentation, introduction night. And so by law, the budget has to be out for at least 28 days for public review, and then right now, we intend to have the public hearing on May 16th. And this is just, I'm going to quickly go through this, there's more detail about the goals, the strategic objectives and key actions in the budget report, so you can just take the time to review so you can better understand this. This is just dealing with financial, our municipal service and our certain aspects of that, as well as just the communication end of what we do, and into certainly municipal governance and best practices, innovation culture that we try to encourage with our employees, and certainly present to the governing body, customer service, and then just our community partners and stakeholders, and then, of course, and this is no particular order of importance, but just our city assets and what we do and how we need to maintain a very large infrastructure in the city. Okay, so this highlights two sides of the budget, revenue appropriation, and I'll just speak to, revenue last year was more of a discussion, this year is more on the appropriation side, but one of the challenges we had this year was our revenue reserves that we've been using over the last several years and the depletion, the biggest one being the American Rescue Plan stimulus aid that we received in 2021. The total amount was $2.29 million. We received 50% in '21, and we had only budgeted about $1,075,000, I think, and we received 1.145. So we had a little bit that went into our reserve, and then last year, knowing that that 1.145 was going to go away, we had only budgeted about $850,000. So we knew that we were going to be losing this revenue, but we did preserve over $300,000 of that. So this year, we're budgeting 366, a little over 366,000, but we still have an overall revenue loss challenge that we were dealing with, with 622,000. And this was just other reserve depletions. The bigger story is more on the appropriation side, and this is what I spoke about a couple meetings ago, just the three big areas, the big cost drivers in our budget in any given year. And municipal debt service is something that I've sort of been highlighting for many years. There's been a lot of capital budget approvals over the last 10, 15 years, and it's really due to just trying to make sure we have the best facilities, buildings, roads, sidewalks. It's just many, many, many years of large capital budgets, and sort of how you fund that is through our long-term debt financing, and we're paying, it's just been sort of on this escalating scale for some years now, and I think we've kind of reached a pinnacle here with this year, unfortunately. There was a large increase from 2022 to 2023, as you can see in that number, healthcare, pension, and just those three lines were $2.4 million that I needed to, all things equal on the revenue side, which it wasn't, but that's what I had to contend with. So that's, that was a little daunting at first, but we got through the process, and then just a couple of line items that were increasing as well. So this just gives you, again, a very high level, and I'll be gradually through the presentation, kind of getting a little bit more granular, but not too granular. This is the general fund. What we'll focus on, or the main one we focus on is the general fund that's tied to your tax rates. There's two other funds that we will speak of, the parking and sewer utilities, which I'll show next, but this is what, this is sort of why what most people think about when they think about the municipal budgets, the general fund. And there's a, you know, a near 5% change there, capital budget's down by 7%. And these are the two other funds, sewers going up more, doing more sewer infrastructure work this year, and then, once again, we're not doing any capital projects in parking, and this is, again, just what the total summary, we're going up about 7%, close to 7%. So this is just general fund summary points that I'm making now, kind of leading into, we'll get in, but I'll just want to kind of pause and just show. So non-tax revenue, fortunately, we were able to get back in a lot of categories to 2019 levels, which was very good after some years of decline. That helped with offsetting a lot of what we were seeing on the appropriation side, but with not enough, not enough to make up the appropriation increases. So this is why we're looking at municipal tax levy increase of a little over $1 million. And then just when we look at department, we're speaking about municipal services and departments, there's two main categories, summary wages and other expenses, and that just gives you, in the salary wage category, fortunately, we have a decline, there's been a lot of retirements, and that's sort of helped reduce the salary wage lines. And then another expenses, that 204,000, most of it is made up, is tied to this recycling collection contract that we signed last year. We knew the increase was going to be there, we had some partial increase last year and partial increase this year. And then the other three that I've already pointed out. So tax base, I like to just talk about this because everybody, it's meaningful for all everyone who owns a property in Summit, and I just try to give sort of perspective on where, how the tax base has changed over the last 13 years. I'll show about 23 on the next slide. Back in 2010, and what that red part is mainly, it's residential, and that's what makes up most of the value in your tax base, is the residential classification. And at that point, the commercial was the second highest at 9.6, and you can see the numbers here, I'm not going to read them, but you saw a little bit of decline over a five-year period, and some of that had to do with certainly the Great Recession, what did in the housing crisis and values and through tax appeals that went on during that time. A big one also that happened during that time was the sale of the Merg property, which is now the Bristol Myers grid, the cell chain in between, and that impacted the industrial classification value. So you start to see that decline there, and I'm just, again, trying to give you some sense because what funds 54% of our revenues is tax base, and what you can see here is just the residential component that does fund the majority of that. And this is the 2023 breakdown. Again, the residential part has grown considerably over the years, and that was, since 2010, it's almost $200 million. And what you can see in the industrial, 2020, I'm sorry, the industrial was 238 million, and now we're down 150. So this was, again, mostly, most of that value lost was in the Bristol Myers. However, I think this is the year, and I think everybody's seen it, there's been a lot of work done on that property, and we do expect a pretty considerable value increase this year, that the tax assessor will eventually, will materialize in his tax records next year, so that will be an ongoing process and reassessment. So we're now up to $3.27 billion in tax value, and this just gives you the last five years, and what that yellow represents is the change in the net assessed valuation. We've averaged about $28 million in increases, and what that is, that new assessed value provides new tax revenue. And so last year, we saw close to a $35 million increase, and what that ultimately result in is about $1.5 million in new tax revenue, total tax revenue, of which 314 is municipal tax revenue. And what that 1% is essentially a one cent increase, what that reflects is one cent in your tax rate, so that ultimately will reduce what our levy at 3.6 million, I'm sorry, 3.6% increase that I showed before, without $1,035,000 revenue that we needed to balance our budget, this will take one cent off of that tax rate increase. So this shows you a six-year period, and one thing I'm going to point out, because it seems like every year, there's a slide where I don't catch one thing, but that percentage change really is a year-over-year, '22 to '23. This just gives you some sense of what tax rates have been over the last six years. That last column should just, it's year-over-year, just for clarification, and what I realized within the last hour is that total is actually, should be about 1%, a little over 1%, but from '18 to '23, it actually is below 0%, so it's been a negative. If you look at your total tax rate, it has gone down since 2018, very, very slightly. But that's what that number is, it really should just be 1% because that is the year-over-year change. And I'll get more into the property taxes in the coming slides, just want to kind of give you this, it's a two, ultimately, what you see here is a two-cent increase in the municipal tax rate. So this is the breakdown of the estimated rates, all five rates that you see on your tax bill. The municipal is what we're focusing on tonight, that reflects almost 21% of your total tax bill, the school district being about 23, sorry, 53%, and then the others. So what does the 21% mean? It's essentially for every $1 of your taxes that you pay, 21 cents goes towards municipal services and the municipal budget. So the average assessed valued home in Summit this year is $431,204. This reflect, this more or less shows you every, the impact for every estimated rate as we know it today. There will be about a $206 average estimated total property tax increase, of which the municipal portion is $95. So for the average assessed home, you'll see the increase at $206, the municipal portion being 95 that comprises. And this just kind of gives you a history of the municipal tax rate, some visual. So recently, I've been seeing some articles written about, it seems to happen every year, where some journalists, whoever's writing about, the big story about taxes in every municipality in New Jersey, and it seems when they get to Union County, it always comes out where Summit is the highest taxes. What I think is important, and this is why we spend at least one slide on the effective tax rate conversation, because what you essentially have in Summit is your values and what it is assessed at are not, so there's two terms you hear, you hear an assessed value and you hear market value. And when, of course, as an owner, when you're selling it, all you care about is the market value. When you're paying your taxes right now, you're paying on an assessed valuation. The city hasn't done a revale in many decades, we're probably going to get ordered, probably over the next decade at some point. Our equal, you hear a term, equalization ratio, and what this essentially does is it takes your taxes at an assessed, I'm sorry, your property value, takes your property value, right, you have today, you use that ratio, and it brings you up to a fair market value. And then this year, we're at 38%, so essentially, your assessed value is below where you should ideally be at 100% assessed in fair market, we're at 38%, which is a great thing for Summit for value purposes. It has been holding steady, but there was a four-point percentage drop this, over the last year, and that is consistent with all of what has been going on over the last few years in the residential housing market, and even commercial as well. So what this reflects, and I've shown, and I think in our budget report, we have every municipality, but I wanted to just focus on four municipalities. Taking the, every tax rate in 2022 and showing what the ratio is for 2022, and this is all 2022 because I don't have the exact tax rates for all these other municipalities, so it's just on 2022 numbers. And the average residential market value, a little over $1 million. And when you take your tax rate and you run it through the ratio, you get an effective tax rate. And this is just to get everybody to, when you're comparing municipalities and what you're paying in taxes, it's an apples-to-apples comparison. So this is what this reflects, and this has been something that we've been showing for many years, Summit pays the lowest taxes from an effective tax rate standpoint. It pays the lowest taxes in the county. So if you had a million-dollar home in Fanneland or Garwood or Roselle, of course, the size of the house might be different, but you take that value and you take the current rate and you run it through and to get an effective tax rate, this is what you would be paying, and Summit has the lowest pace, or an effective tax bill is the lowest in the county. Okay, so now we're just going to get, we're getting into the budget, general fund, not talking about sewer or parking, and this gives you all the categories in our revenue side of the budget. The fund balance, we have, at the end of last year, we had $10,400,000 in fund balance, surplus, as people refer to it. We are using a little over $8 million, that's about 80%. We have a free balance of a little over $2 million, which is good, that's been sort of fluctuating between $1.7, $2 million. So we're, we had a very good year the year before, we ended up about $9.6 million, or ended up this year, at the end of 2022, at a little over $10 million. So we used a little bit more this year. Local revenues, that's where we picked up a lot and sort of regained or got to a realized level of 2019. State aid, a little bit more, that reflects energy receipt tax increases. Grants are up, and this is just all the rewards that we've received thus far, and we're showing in the budget. Our enterprise contributions, sort of a little bit down, but not bad. Prior year tax receipts, we have an amazing collection rate in Summit, we're at 99.77%. That's why that number is a little lower. Municipal tax levy, this is what we need to balance the budget, which is the million, a little over $1 million. And then we have to show, we're a type one school district, that's why the school debt's reflected in this budget, and the tax, the library tax levy, we're required by state, by the state to have this show up in our budget, even though they have their own separate tax rate, and they also have their own board that approves their budget. So just going down to the, on the revenue side, and the two main categories of local revenues and enterprises, this just gives you the increases and decreases. Everyone's receiving more money on their, on their bank accounts, so that's why there's a, we realized a considerable more last year with rates going up. Municipal court fees are up, and that's almost getting back to a level where we were average prior to 2020. And then all the utility work and everything, when you see police officers, those are all off-duty police officers, and we receive administration fees on that work, that's what that lineup is, and we'll see an increase in that number, in that anticipated revenue. Some of the decreases, unfortunately, the cable TV franchise numbers have been consistently going down, that's just the result of people cutting the cord, so those revenues continue to go down. So recyclables, the same thing. And then in the enterprise fund contribution category, just more general capital, we've canceled a lot of capital projects over the last couple of years, pretty sizable reserve there to pay off debt, and then the other sewer. And then the UCC, which is its own dedicated trust, that is, even though we look, they're municipal employees, they're part of our municipal staffing numbers, they are, they're own funded, self-funding account, dedicated trust, so they, we pay their pension and healthcare increases, we just bring that over as a revenue from that trust. And then there's the other decreases that I spoke about earlier. And these are just the municipal property estimated numbers. A lot of money that the city takes in. And then if people often refer, you know, ask about the caps, and the property tax levy cap is really on the revenue side, and you hear about the appropriation cap, which we had an ordinance that was just adopted recently, that's 3.5%, and I'll get to the appropriation cap number, but once again, we're under, close to $1.1 million. And that's just, there's, if you go to the budget report, it shows the formulas for the two caps and all the exclusions, and that's really, that's what's effectively you're seeing is the result of all these exclusions that come out of what we're allowed to raise, but we're still, we're still under. So now onto appropriation side, this gives you the three main categories on that side of the budget. We have a $55 million budget, most of it's in the municipal operations, but this just gives you outlines and bullets the different categories underneath each of these. And then I'll, just the next couple of slides, we'll get into the, just break down the municipal operations and then the other appropriations. So here, this, you can see public safety is our largest line item in municipal operations, and that's down, and that's mainly in the personnel staffing, salary and wage lines. Police had just a lot of retirements over the last year, and that's what it reflects is just as we hire new police officers, just at much lower salaries, and that's what we have there, as well as fire, has been some retirements. And we have our shared services with health and municipal court, they're up slightly, and then the insurance, which I'll get into more in the insurance discussion, what that increases. But that's not just healthcare, that also reflects our general liability and workers' And then the other appropriations, we have our dispatch agreement, which is up again this year, and municipal debt being the largest appropriation increase. And this is the appropriation caps, and it's always, it seems to be a large number every year, but there's just a lot of exclusions that the law allows for, and it's almost kind of comical, this cap that we do here, but this is a requirement we have to calculate, and we are under once again. So the personnel, there's been no changes over the last year as far as the staffing numbers. We had a little bit of a dip in from 2020 to '21, where we were just not filling positions, but we're kind of up to that, a little under 2020 number, but it's the same as last year. And now onto salary and wages, and this just kind of reflects what I was just talking about, in the general fund, most of that decrease year-over-year is in the public safety area, and a little bit in the uniform construction code, which is, again, the dedicated So in the categories, municipal operations, when you, when there's the salary and wage, now we have this other expense. So when you look at the budgets, you'll see salary and wage categories, other expense, you have many line items under each. This just deals with the other expenses, and what the increase is, a large part of that is this recycling curbside collection contract that we entered into, is a two-year contract that started last July. And then the three largest items within the other expense category, our largest deals with the transfer station, that's only up $20,000, collection contract, and then fuel, that, as a lot of commodities went up last year, that's, that's the increase that we saw in fuel, but overall utilities are not as much. There were some declines in our telephone and other areas that help offset that increase. And then professional lines are overall slightly down. Healthcare. We are in the state health benefit plan. It's been well documented about it, where there was incredibly, for us, a 23% increase. We have historically, over the last six years, we've averaged about 1.7%. We have historically, over the last six years, we've averaged about 1.7%. So this was a huge, this just had a huge impact to our budget this year. We certainly looked at this, this was known probably during the summer time, we got word, they tried to, they made some changes, but not much in terms of dollars. There was a lot of back and forth with state unions that were trying to get this, change the plan, reduce things, get access to the state data. There's, can talk more and more about that issue, but ultimately, what we're, you know, what we're getting billed for reflects a 23% increase, what we're predicting. This is a self-insurance fund, the state health benefit plan. We get billed, it's all based upon billings of the previous month, so it's sort of, we have to estimate, based on right now, it's the first three quarter, the first quarter, first three months. And this is sort of what we're looking at in an increase. And what, I'll just take it quickly, employees contribute towards their health plan depending upon where they fall in the salary category. There's other, you know, with the other funds that are self-sustaining and liquidating in the parking sewer, those, whatever attributed to their personnel that comes back as a revenue, so that's why they get some of that increase in their budgets. And then what we're doing to offset this rather large increase is we're using, when the budget, that line item is funded, it goes into our self-insurance line, and it's a self-insurance reserve. We then pay bills out of that, but it all depends upon how, what's the usage throughout the year. So what we're budgeting sometimes isn't that what we're actually getting billed for. So there's some surplus that has accrued. We had about, at the end of last year, $2.15 million in this reserve, that has just accrued for many, many years. It was, this was the year where we needed to use some of that to offset this rather large increase. I think there will be changes made to the plan, I know that there's a lot of talks that still go on. I know the governor and his budget has allocated hundreds of millions of dollars for potential to offset some of these, you know, at least what they're projecting in 2024, which is somewhere between a 6 and 8% increase. So we'll see where that goes, but we felt this was the year to use some of our reserve to offset this appropriation increase. And then ultimately, what you'll see in the budget is a $2.49 million number in the general fund line. So I just wanted to try to take you through what you're seeing, because sometimes people get confused with what, you know, you see a larger number, what's this increase, why it was. And it's, and it's better outlined in the budget report if you want to read more about it. Pension obligations, just kind of gives you a little bit of information on that. Again, historically, much larger percentage increase. On the pension side, and then debt, you know, this has, again, been often talked about over the years, and I think we've kind of hit almost the pinnacle of what we have in long-term bond issuances. Most of, most of it, if not all of it, is wrapped up in the long-term bond issuance, we have a small note out. But this is accounted for in this number, and this is what we're looking at this year in what we are, the paydown, and I'll get, I'll get in the next slide, we'll get into the paydown of what, just sort of looking at it comparatively over the last, since 2014, I think I haven't been able to see it, and why we are where we are with debt service, with the capital projects that have, budgets that have been approved. Before we get to that, actually, this is, just gives you a very snapshot of our debt position, and what this essentially says is that by law, you can actually take out 3.5% of what your equalized, your statutory equalized valuation is. This is a three-year average, a $7.8 billion number. They have the borrowing power, which reflects the 3.5%. Our net debt at the end of last year was $65.5 million, and we have about 76% of statutory borrowing power that they talk about. But our net debt has gone down, last year was about 0.92, and that's really just, it's a combination of our valuation going up, our valuation for 2022 is $8.5 billion, and then just the net debt, we paid off principal, and that's gone down. So that's why that net debt number percentage is down. So this just gives you a history of the last 10 years, and this is, this is the lowest than I've tried to go back as far as 2000, yeah, 2000. This is the lowest capital budget that we are presenting in that amount of years. Certainly the highest principal amount we were paying. This is where you want to be, you want to certainly be paying more off than taking on new debt, but you can see over the years that hasn't been the case, and that's why our debt has just gone up to a level of where it is. But it reflects all the capital needs, and there's plenty of them, and I'll, when I get to the capital budget plan, I'll show you what we have, what our capital improvements plan reflects over the next five years. There's no shortage of projects. And then this, again, just reflects from 2011, where we are in net debt. So capital budget, and this is just going to be a broad overview. We had our capital budget presentation, preliminary capital budget presentation in December, it's a little more detailed. The budget document reflects every capital project within the budget, shows you the next five years and projects that we want to do, so you can get more detail on the capital budget in that, in that report and the actual budget document. So sewer, as I showed you earlier, is up. General, the general fund capital budget is down. Nothing for parking, I'm sorry. Just got to show that this is nothing. This just gives you the year-over-year changes. And then the two utilities. Specific to the departments, fire, and this is all mostly related to the new firehouse and just different IT, radio, furniture. You know, there's been a big fundraising effort for some of what our needs are over there, but this is some additional needs that we have. And then the police, there's a replacement program for our police vehicles, and also our license plate recognition cameras that, chief, I think it's this year, we're splitting it into two years, nine, is it nine that we're looking to purchase this year?
Eight or nine.
Eight or nine, right. And these are positions, this is for geo-fencing concept, and this has been very helpful for the PD, given everything that's gone on the last couple of years. And now community services, this is, this is a lean capital budget for DCS. And just to break down the categories, infrastructure, and some of what we're doing, road improvements, Vehicle purchases, that's a pickup truck with plow, logs, butter, split logs. And then just building improvements and upgrades. And our department community programs, and most of this is for the AV playground. Last year, we allocated $300,000, this year, $300,000 again, and I think our estimates were a little over $1 million to do the project we want to do. There'll be a lot of value engineering going on there, but that's what we're asking for the project this year. And then some other projects that the paddle over at Wilson Park and normal park furnishings that we have for replacement. And then sewer utility, just kind of gives you a breakdown of what's going on with their capital budget, and there's more detail, like I said, in the budget report. And this just gives you the next five years and some perspective, that's what the PP is, prospective projects, and it's, it's big. And, you know, we show this, this is what we require by law to provide a six-year capital improvement plan. And it's, and I show this only because of what I'm about to show you with, if we were doing these kind of budget sizes, 8 million, 7 million, and what this ultimately does to future debt service. So that blue portion is really what's reflected if, with those capital budgets, if we were doing those capital budgets next year, over the next, you know, five years, that blue in the bar graph reflects what the increase in debt service would be. So the maroon part reflects what the existing long-term debt is, then you add in all of those capital budget numbers I just previously showed you, and then what it, its impact is on future debt service payments. Pretty big number, but it's, you know, five or six years ago, it was a much steeper bar graph you would see, and we've reached the point where, but this year, it's six point, close to $6.6 million that we're paying. But I think we've done a very good job to do, to keep our capital budgets pretty lean over the last few years, and this is why we've been able to reduce the impact, but these projects and all the improvements don't go away. So the capital project discussions get harder and harder every year. So I think, let me just give you everything that we talked about and try to summarize, and this is what I have in this slide. And on the revenue, again, just reminding that our revenue, non-tax revenue is up, $1.26 million. Again, three main increases, which is 92% of our total appropriation increase. The municipal tax levy, that's what we need to balance our budget. Property growth, which contributes new revenue at 314, estimated 314,000. So of that one point, a little million dollars, 314 new revenue, and then what we need to raise additionally, and that's the tax rate increase of 2 cents, which is at $720,000. And then the final point is just what that reflects for the average residential property owner and average value, and it's a $95 increase that's tied to the municipal tax rate increase. And that is it. I hope I did that in under two hours. I just, that's all I want to do. I try to.
Mission accomplished. Thank you, Michael.
Yep. It's a lot, and thank you for your patience.
Thank you. All righty. Well, thank you. So I think we're going to move on to the resolution that makes the introduction of this official, so I will turn it over to you, Councilmember Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. This is number 10253, and this resolution introduces the 2023 municipal parking and sewer operating budgets and establishes a hearing date, which will be Tuesday, May 16th, here in council chambers. The preparation for the city budget is a huge undertaking, as you can, you can tell, you can see the binder over there on the table. It's a lot. I want to thank my colleagues on the Finance Committee, Mayor Radus, Council President Vartan, and Councilmember Allen for all of your work on this. Thank you to City Administrator Michael Rogers and CFO Tammy Baldwin and everyone on the city staff. As Administrator Rogers mentioned, this was a challenging budget year for a number of reasons, and the budget that we vote to introduce tonight is the result of hours of work, discussion, creative thinking, balancing priorities, and working with limitations. So to this group of hard-working professionals, thank you all. The budget documents will be available tomorrow on the city's website, cityofsummit.org. Prior to the budget hearing on May 16th, every taxpayer in Summit will receive the budget snapshot by mail. You've received that in the past, you'll see something very similar. And in 28 days from now, per New Jersey law, on May 16th, we will have the budget hearing, and we will vote to adopt the budget. Summit's municipal budget is about 21% of your total tax bill, so while this budget document is a long read, it is well worth your time. The highlights you saw in Administrator Rogers' presentation have shown you some of those important takeaways, but I encourage you to read the entire document if you can. If you can't, take a look at some of the, look at the trends that are presented, take a look at, through some of the sections of each department, come up with questions that you want to ask on May 16th. I really look forward to that meeting, I think it's going to be a great one. So bring your questions, and I look forward to seeing you then. Thank you. Oh, and I move to adopt this resolution.
That's the big part.
I second.
Okay, we're going to do a roll call vote on this one.
Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Fox?
Aye.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Dr. Levine?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
President Vartan?
Aye. Excellent, the motion carries, and on to the second finance resolution, Councilmember Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. This is number 10254, and this resolution introduces the 2023 special improvement district budget and establishes a hearing date, which will be Tuesday, May 16th, at 7:30 here in council chambers. The special improvement district is better known as Summit's Downtown. Taxes levied in Summit's Downtown, or the retail business district, are managed by Summit Downtown Incorporated, SDI. SDI's budget is used to promote downtown businesses, and this budget will be available on the website eventually as well. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Okay, and a roll call vote on this one, please.
Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Fox?
Aye.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Dr. Levine?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
President Vartan?
Aye. Okay, the motion carries, thank you very much. We're moving on to ordinances for hearing, we have one. Would you read that one, Madam Clerk?
Yes. Ordinance number 23-3278, an ordinance by the Common Council of the City of Summit, County of Union, New Jersey, repealing and replacing in its entirety Chapter 27 flood prevention and protection of the Code of the City of Summit to adopt new floodplain management regulations, associated maps, and designate floodplain administrator and providing for severability and an effective date.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and Councilmember Levine.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to please open the hearing for ordinance 23-3278, repealing and replacing in its entirety Chapter 27. This is a state-mandated ordinance, and we are following the state's model. It has been approved by both the NJDEP and FEMA. The state has set a deadline to adopt this new ordinance of May 2nd, 2023. This ordinance does three main things. First, it designates a floodplain administrator within the municipality, and for us, this will be our city engineer, Aaron Schreger. The second thing it does is it makes the issuance of a floodplain development permit a prerequisite for any application submitted to zoning or the construction division. The third thing this ordinance does is establishes a method for obtaining a variance from these requirements of the ordinance, which would then be handled by either the planning or zoning board. I move to open this ordinance for hearing.
I second.
Okay, the hearing is now open, and we'll open it up to comments from councilmembers. No, nothing? Comments from the community on this one? All right, I think we're going to close this hearing, and we'll move on to ordinances for final consideration. Madam Clerk?
Thank you. Ordinance number 23-3278, an ordinance by the Common Council of the City of Summit, County of Union, New Jersey, repealing and replacing in its entirety Chapter 27 flood prevention and protection of the Code of the City of Summit to adopt new floodplain management regulations, associated maps, and designate a floodplain administrator and providing for severability and an effective date.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Levine?
Thank you, Council President. Having just had this hearing, I'd like to move ordinance number 23-3278 for final consideration.
I second.
Okay, eventful hearing as it was, I will now move for a roll call vote on that, please.
Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Fox?
Aye.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Dr. Levine?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
President Vartan?
Aye, thank you. And that ordinance is adopted. Okay, thank you very much. We're moving on to resolutions again, back to resolutions, rather, and back over to finance, Councilmember Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. This is number 10330, and this resolution authorizes emergency, authorize emergency temporary appropriations for the municipal operating budget. The statutory language acquired in a resolution like this uses the word emergency, but this is a regular occurrence, not an emergency. These temporary appropriations are to help fund city operations expenses and payroll expenses until we have adopted our 2023 budget later this spring, in fact, May 16th. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much. We'll do a roll call vote on this one as well, please.
Did you want to open it up for any comments?
Oh, yeah, I skipped that part. Yep, we're gonna, any comments on this one? Members of council? No? Comments from members of the community? Now we'll do a roll call vote. Thank you.
Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Fox?
Aye.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Dr. Levine?
Aye.
President Miniger, Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
President Vartan, excuse me?
Aye. You're excused. Okay. Next one, please, Councilmember Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. This is number 10331, and this resolution authorizes the concurrence with the 2023 Board of School Estimates Certification of Required Funds. The Board of Education budget was approved by the Board of Education and the Board of School Estimate, which consists of two members of council, two members of the Board of Education, and the mayor. The Board of Education budget makes up approximately 50% of property tax levy in Summit, and this certification of funds required is for $70,449,531. I would like to thank the Board of Education and all those who worked on preparing the largest budget in Summit for once again staying under the 2% cap. Summit schools are what my neighbors cite as the reason why they live here, and I am very happy to move this resolution forward for adoption.
I second.
Okay, and do we need a roll call? Well, first, let's do comments. Comments from members of council? Yes?
Thank you, Council President. As a member of the Board of School Estimate, I just want to give a little bit of reflection. I know that it's a whole separate process, but you see how big a piece of the budget the, the school represents, and having served on the Board of Education and know the thoroughness by which that body puts into consideration what's going to be happening, I just want to assure the public that what you heard Councilmember Miniger said is, is happening, that that is the biggest investment in this community, and it is reflecting our priorities. And so I always like to tell people who are not familiar with, who don't feel comfortable with budgets and numbers, think of budgets as saying where your priorities lie. And so having been a part of that process, sitting on both sides, on the Board of Education, and now as a city council member and the Board of School Estimate with an eye towards looking out for our residents, I just want to applaud the hard work that's been done over the years and is now reflecting what the city wants, a really good school system that is prepared for the future. So I just wanted to make that comment, Council President.
Thank you. Other councilmember comments? Nope. Comments from members of the community? Okay, and I, we'll do, we do a roll call-
It's not necessary, but if you'd like it.
All right, well, let's just do, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Thank you very much. Moving on to law and labor, Councilmember Hairston.
Through you, Council President, I'd like to introduce Resolution Number 10304, which is to authorize extension of an injury leave with pay out of the Department of Community Services, and, which comes from a employee who was in the Division of Public Works. And this was pending, this was as a result of a closed-session discussion where a member of the Department of Community Services had a work-related injury, and per the recommendation of the Department of Community Services and approval by our city administrator, we are granting this employee leave that is effective with pay through May 3rd, 2023. And I introduce that, this resolution for approval.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, any councilmember comments? Comments from members of the public? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we're gonna skip the order a little bit, and we're gonna go to community programs and parking services. Councilmember Hamlet, would you do that one resolution, please?
Thank you, Council President. This is Resolution Number 10318. This is a resolution to increase fines for parking violations, including overtime meter, no permit, and illegal prohibited parking. In recent weeks, several pedestrians were struck in crosswalks, but Parking Services has witnessed numerous illegal parked vehicles on a daily basis. The overtime meter fine is for those that do not pay for their parking or exceed the time limit. For those that are ticketed, the $26 fine does not seem like a deterrent. Every day, Parking Services tickets people that park at street meters, meter-feeding, taking away valuable customer parking. In addition, for prohibited parking spaces, the current fine is $40, and people continue to park illegally. The city's Parking Service Agency has reviewed the court fines and is making the following recommendations. Overtime meter fines from $26 to $41, no permit fines from $31 to $41, prohibited parking fines from $40 to $65. Attached to this recommendation is a town fines survey. Many towns have similar fines that are being proposed. Overtime meter, for example, Berkeley Heights is at 41, New Providence is at 36, Springfield is at 44. All others range from $30 to $40 per ticket. The no permit fines vary from town to town, starting as low as $30, going as high as $55 per ticket. Prohibited fines vary from $30 to a high of $52, sorry, $60. It is recommended to increase the prohibited parking fines dramatically in order to curtail all of the illegal parking around the downtown. I move to adopt this resolution.
Nice second.
Okay, thank you. Comments from members of council?
I have a comment.
Yes.
When I first read this, read the information, I thought these were large increases in some of the fines, but I thought what was super helpful was comparing it to other municipalities nearby, and in fact, while they're a really big leap for Summit, they're actually right on par with what other municipalities surrounding us are doing. I think they just might have gone up slowly or more frequently over time, so they're already there. So that's really, in my mind, what justified the big increase at once.
Thank you, Councilman.
Yep, I just want to say, I also work downtown, and I encourage everybody, please do not double park. It is incredibly dangerous, especially near a crosswalk. So I'm happy to see that we're increasing fines, not that we want to be punitive, but at the end of the day, safety first, so I just wanted to support that.
Okay. Other councilmember comments? Nope. Comments from members of the public? Come on up.
Good evening, Don Nelson, 20 Plain Street. Who enforces the parking laws in Summit?
That would be Parking Services.
How many members are actually writing tickets?
I would guess all of them, but we can defer to Rita for that question.
Is it one, two, 12, 15?
Rita. And if you have other questions, maybe it's just helpful to ask them now, so then Rita can answer kind of involved.
Good evening, Rita McDaniel, Parking Services Director. We have two full-time, two part-time officers that enforce on a daily basis, from Monday through Saturday.
Okay.
Has there been any thought of increasing the number of enforcement officers so that the parking problem gets resolved? After the fines have been issued, maybe people will learn, as opposed to, you know, continuing, circling around, and not doing what needs to be done?
Should I have asked that before?
Or is that more for the administrator or for you guys?
I mean, you know, whoever wants to take, whoever wants to take the-
Look, there's, there's always a need for more personnel to enforce. However, technology is certainly has sort of, it increases the efficiency of personnel, so what, two full-time or two part-time, which has been the case for many years, I'm sure Rita would tell you, if she had her way, she'd have more. I think all of us would love more personnel. Technology's implemented to, to try to increase that area that they have to cut.
I, I agree with you. The downside to technology is sometimes it doesn't work. And I'll give you the point, going into the city dumps. We put, we spend a lot of money on a license plate reader, and we still have somebody manning this station, which is okay. I don't, that's fine. It's always great to talk to somebody. But I drive around town a lot, and I see cars parked, double parked, you know, people move, there are no parking signs on the corners. And if you have somebody walking around town during the day, walking, not driving, but walking, train station, Union Place, Beechwood Road, Springfield Avenue, they used to do that. They would walk around. Granted, it costs money for somebody to walk around, but if we're raising the parking fees and fines, that could kind of be self-funded. We'll raise it a little bit more. The ultimate goal is to get people not to park where they shouldn't park, as opposed to, we're going to increase the fees. If you're driving a $400,000 car, a $60 fine is pocket change.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
If I could just make a quick comment, Council President?
Sure.
Mr. Nelson, I will say that this is, I've learned, at least from being on council for a short time, if I could spend every day, all day on parking, I, I would, because it's, it's that complex, and I, I hear you. Reed and I, and we're constantly talking about it almost every day, so.
If I could ask, we, we got to move on.
I'm not here to blame anybody. Rita does a fantastic job. I'm just thinking, people is what makes Summit work.
Yep.
Gotcha.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have another comment, public comments? Yes? Come on up.
Hi, Irene Lowes, 14 Lenox Road. Can you tell me, do most of the fines get paid? Are there a lot of outstanding fines?
The municipal court collects all the fines, and from what I understand, they have a 95 percentage. If people don't pay their fines, their driver's licenses get suspended, so there is that incentive.
Do you know where the people are from who get the fines mostly?
No, unfortunately, I cannot know that.
Oh, you can?
No, no.
Don't they send them out to, aren't they tied to?
There would be no reason for me to know what towns or how many people from a certain town. We can't have, that's illegal, that's conceived as targeting. So if you parked illegally, it doesn't matter where you live or where you're from, or how much money you make, or what kind of car you drive, if you park illegally, you get a ticket, you're required to pay the ticket.
Can you tell me, are the automatic readers that were supposed to be installed at certain corners or certain spots, are those in play already, and?
No.
No.
So that was the, the safety stick concept, and I think that's basically on-
We're just taking a little more time, doing a little more research. Reed, you can give an update if you want, but I think we're, we're going to revisit in a few weeks. I know you've been working with getting another demonstration from another municipality.
And I just want to, I, I just want to limit a little bit the back and forth, so if there's a bulk of questions, let's ask them all at the same time, and then our, our great professionals can answer them all together.
I'm thinking on the next one, we'll just-
Yep, yep.
The safety stick is, is new concept, so we're doing, the city is doing our due diligence. We want to see it active in other towns in Jersey. And also, we have to make sure that it is in line and works electronically with our court system.
Did you buy them already?
No, and we would not be buying anything. So that's another, that's an advantage to us, that we don't have to pay for that infrastructure upfront, but I want to make sure everything works, so everything's in pushback for right now, so hopefully, over the summer, I'll have more report.
Okay.
I don't have any more questions.
Thank you. Come on up.
Just one. Marcus McNamara, 53 Morris Avenue. Can the police enforce the parking?
Who wants to take that one?
Can Summit PD write tickets?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Come on up.
David Hoffman, 1 New England Avenue. Where should we park in Manly Court? There are no garages.
Yeah.
Rita, maybe you want to take this one, so he's on New England Avenue, so we've talked about the number of spaces per, that we have on New England Avenue, similar to Bavor.
There is something currently on the books, so that you're aware, and I don't know your particular location, that there is something for, that has multiple dwellings, 10 or more, that you can park on the street. So if you want to contact me tomorrow, I'll give you all that information in the process of what you need to go through. But some areas, they're not, and we're still trying to work on those for certain areas. People have lots of cars, and they need a place to park.
Is the two-hour limit still?
Two-hour limit is still in effect, yes. So you're talking during the day or overnight?
Well, overnight, we know we park 5 to 7:11, but then we have to have the car out by 8 o'clock, and then we have to move the car every couple of hours.
Yes. But let me talk to you tomorrow about that, okay? No, that's okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, other public comments? Gil, come on up.
Just a quick comment. I'm Gil Orrin, 45 Wallace Road, and also have my business downtown, and part owner of the building that we're in. People should understand what happened, is happening, has happened with the firehouse. The firehouse replaced 200 parking spaces. When this was a concept, I met with a city official and said, we have non-residents who are in those spaces. Where will they go? And the answer was, basically, they would go back to their place of origin, which made sense. They didn't. What, what has happened is, they've been placed in the garage, at least 100, it was 171 or?
125.
125 of them ended up in the garage, and where there was a little space for downtown employees and Summit residents, it was eliminated. Monday through Thursday, it's packed, and where there was, I'll give you an example, on the top floor, there were green stickers, Summit Downtown employees. They were clipped, and the whole first, the whole top now are non-residents. They pay more, but it's caused a major problem, a major problem. We've lost 120 spaces for downtown employees. 60 were in where the firehouse is, and 60 were on top. And what I was told, if it happened, would have made sense to politely tell those people who are out of town, that you'll have to stay in your town and park. And we, the downtown employees and the downtown residents would be served. The problem with downtown, and I'm there, is the employees come in a little later, and by the time they come in, the parking is, is, that garage, which was supposed to be for Summit employees and Summit residents, is 100, it's probably more than 125. How many tickets have you given to people who are from out of town, don't have permits, who park there? Quite a few?
On an average, about 70.
Is that all?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So it's 135. I think that you have to understand that, and I think that we should revisit what I was told, and that is, those non-residents should return to their place of origin so that the employees and Summit residents can use the garage as planned. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Other comments from the public? Nope? Okay. I think we're ready for a vote now. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Okay, and I promised my colleagues in closed session that we would take a little break at 9 o'clock, because we have a little bit of a chunky agenda left.
Should we?
So let's, let's take five minutes, let's take five minutes, and we'll come back. Yeah?
We can do a bit, or do a bit more. Your call.
All right. All right, okay. All right, we'll keep going. I like to, you know.
It's on the record.
When we promise, you know, I promised before, okay. All right.
Thank you, though.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, we're moving on to capital projects and community services. Councilmember Levine.
Oh, that's me. Thank you, Council President. Resolution number 10228 authorizes execution of an agreement between the City of Summit and SDI for installation, removal, and storage of over-the-street promotional banners on Springfield Avenue. City of Summit has been hanging and removing these banners since 2017 and it has gone well. The banners, SDI pays $125 to install or remove and this contract is for five years. Storage of the banners, when not in use, is in the city's public works facility. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Okay. Any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the community? No. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. Okay. Moving on. Number two.
Thank you, Council President. Resolution number 10335 authorizes the City of Summit to co-sponsor the dedication event of the Lord Pedestrian Bridge at the Park Line this Saturday at 3:00 p.m. The event coincides with Earth Day and is another way the Park Line brings our community together. We hope you can attend. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Okay. Any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay. Looking forward to that, for sure. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Okay. Moving on to number three. Councilmember Levine.
Thank you, Council President. Resolution number 10127 awards a bid to River View Paving Incorporated to complete the Rowan Road and Oak Ridge Avenue Improvement Project. The project includes repair and installation of curbs. Of note, there is a mountable curb for the narrow Rowan, which is a curb at a 45-degree angle so that one car can actually put its wheels up on it to allow for the passage of another car on that narrow road. It also includes drainage upgrades, sanitary sewer improvements, guide rail replacement, and milling and paving of Rowan, as well as Oak Ridge between Mountview and Mountain. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
All right. Comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? All righty. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. All right. Number four, number 10147 is being pushed from this agenda for now. And we're gonna move right on to number five. Councilmember Levine.
Thank you, Council President. As discussed in closed session, resolution number 10332 declares a vacancy for a building inspector. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to safety and health. Number one, Councilmember Fox.
Thank you, Council President. ID 10309, this resolution authorizes the submission of a grant application for the New Jersey Division of Highways Traffic Safety's Pedestrian Safety Enforcement and Education Fund Grant Program in the amount of $15,000. And there are no matching funds required for this grant. The grant will be used for pedestrian safety. $7,000 will be used for overtime safety details at targeted crash site hotspots. $7,000 will be used for signage to promote pedestrian safety and the remaining $1,000 will be used for printed materials to promote pedestrian safety. I move this resolution.
I seconded.
Okay. Comments from members of council?
Just one. Is there a matching grant for this one?
No, as I said, there is no match.
Oh, sorry, I missed that. Okay.
Okay. Other comments? Counsel? Comments from members of the public? Yes, sir?
Marcus McNamara, 53 Morris Avenue. Will they be working on the pedestrian crosswalk buttons because they don't work?
I think that's a, that's probably more a question for Director Schreger about pedestrian crosswalk buttons.
So what I'm saying is, when you come up there and the light turns green, it still stays red unless you push it. In the past, it was always automatic.
Which location are you talking about?
Right by Morris Avenue or Broad Street and Summit Avenue, by the Y, by the Texaco and right out here.
So some of them are smart, some of them are smart, traffic licensed, some are not. But I think it's really a question for Director Schreger because I don't know which or which.
So basically, what I'm saying, and I see people standing there, the light turns, they have the red thing and they have the right of way to walk, but the light is, the crosswalk sign is red. And like, I'll yell out the window, "You gotta push the button." They don't know.
Yeah.
And I'll be by the school, too.
Do you want to speak to that for, yeah, thank you.
Certainly, through you, Council President. A couple of things. One, we just had our annual maintenance review of all our traffic signals, which is sitting on my desk. So it's possible some are not functioning or might have issues with them. We have not reviewed that yet, so that might reveal that some systems do need some upgrades or have some issues. Second is, what gentleman's referring to would be pedestrian recall mode, which would be when the signal is set up so it automatically goes to the pedestrian phase, which can be implemented and it is implemented in areas of high pedestrian traffic. But you can't have it, you can't have it be a little bit recall mode only because then you have, pedestrians wouldn't know that after eight, they should hit the button. So if you do make that shift, there is an impact to the overall efficiency for the traffic signal for all modes of transportation involved, including the vehicles and pedestrians alike. So we are looking at some of them. Maple and Broad might be one that might qualify to switch to recall mode because there is a fair amount of pedestrian traffic there. But others, it might not be the best thing for the efficiency of the intersection, so. But we will look at them. Some, we've received some emails about a few. I believe those are the ones he had mentioned that we are looking at.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Other comments from members of the public? Yeah.
I know I'm not a member of the public, but I can't really, I mean, I live in the city. I was gonna say that if there is ever something that is actually broken, if you do see a button that's not working, if the person is actually pushing it and it's not working. But if you see a broken, something broken, See Click Fix, an app on your phone, I keep promoting that because I think it's the coolest thing ever and it gets things done very quickly because Director Schreger and his team do a good job, so.
You don't even have to download the app, for those of us that don't want any more apps. You can just go to the city website, report a concern. You don't even need the app, but the app is nice because you get the follow-up. So anyway, thank you. Other comments? Okay, I think we're ready to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. And we're on to safety and health, number two. Councilmember Fox.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID 10308. And this resolution authorizes the city to submit an application to join the Union County Comprehensive Emergency Assistance Services and Continuum of Care Committee, which is also known as CEAS/COC, or we'll just refer to it as COC because it's a mouthful. So membership in this committee will allow us to represent Summit's interests and to learn more about resources that are available for individuals experiencing homelessness. The COC is responsible for program planning, coordination, and implementation of a plan for housing and emergency assistance services in Union County. The COC makes decisions on allocations of county, state, and federal funds. So Summit's participation will allow us to advocate for more services to end homelessness here in Summit. The discussion about joining the COC began as an outgrowth of discussions with the mayor's forum on diversity last fall about the issue of homelessness in Summit. And the mayor can discuss more fully, since she has organized this working group. But the working group includes city officials, nonprofits, and the Interfaith Clergy Council. And it was, it was the first time that everyone sat down together to think about how we could all work together to achieve the goal of ending homelessness in Summit. The discussion, let's see. After city officials met with Mike Callahan, Dr. Mike Callahan, the director of the New Jersey Office of Homelessness Prevention in February, we asked him to attend the March 18th council meeting to speak to the public and other council members and answer questions about homelessness in Summit and the actions that Summit could take to address this issue. Both of the short-term levers that were identified in Dr. Callahan's presentation included participation in the COC. And after that presentation, information was distributed on this subject to all council members. And public can find that information in the council packet on pages 91 to 99. Participation in the COC does not obligate the city to take any action, spend any money, or start any new city programs. Rather, it allows us to influence how money is spent on homelessness in the county and to get information about resources and to connect groups in Summit to other groups who are working to address this issue. It was for that reason that I moved this resolution.
And I seconded.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to table.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Okay, so we're gonna vote on tabling this resolution and we'll do that by roll call.
That's correct.
Yes, so let's do that.
So the motion is to table?
Yeah.
Can't we, do we have a discussion about tabling it first?
No, so a motion to table takes precedent over the original motion. So you have to do a motion to table to the vote. If it doesn't.
We don't get to discuss on tabling?
Let's let Matt answer.
So when you're voting, you can speak, but the motion has to be voted on first. Motion to the table takes precedent under Robert's rules of order.
I think the question is, can we ask, can we speak on the motion to table about whether or not to table?
There's a motion to table, so you guys can, the speaker can say, "I'm gonna vote no, I want to pass this this evening." Or, "I'm gonna vote yes to table because I think more research has to be done." People can make their own things. You can't query why they're making a motion to the table. That you can't do.
So what we're gonna do, what we're doing right now, right, is we're having a vote by roll call on the motion to table.
Council President, can I ask a question just for a definition of what it means to table a vote?
Table a vote means that you're going to table it and take it up at a future date. It's not a date specific, but it's, that's something that can come up at a future meeting.
Okay. So.
It doesn't invalidate, it's not like a no vote. It's just a motion to table to a later date.
Okay, so we're voting now on a motion to table, correct? Okay, so let's do that.
Okay.
Rosie?
Mr. Jacoby, is each member allowed?
I'm sorry, Delia, I'm sorry.
I just had a question. I was gonna say, since I made the motion to table, would it make more sense for me to vote or to discuss why I'm voting to table it first? Otherwise, nobody has any idea why we're tabling it.
I would, I think you should do the roll calls, you normally would. And if people want to make comments, why they're voting one way or the other, that would be appropriate.
At the time that they're stating their vote?
Right, so you call them in the normal order that you normally call them.
Ms. Allen?
Yes, to table.
Is there a comment?
Okay.
Oh.
Is that one she comments?
Yeah, she can comment now, absolutely.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, are we gonna have a full discussion with the public, though?
If the motion is tabled, there's nothing to consider. It's not on this agenda.
Okay.
If the motion fails, then there'll be a discussion, just like you normally would do. The council can then have a discussion and you can invite members of the public to discuss. But if there's a motion to table, it's tabled.
Okay.
I would encourage everybody to vote.
Yes, okay. I mean, I would like to talk about this further, but the reason why I'm asking to table this vote is because it isn't a no. I don't want to vote no. I feel like while council has had a couple of weeks to have discussions around this, I feel that in the last meeting, I brought it up, I asked questions in public comment so that the public could have some preemptive conversations around what the care, the continuum of care is. So I'm voting to table this motion because I would like the public to have a lot more dialogue and understand exactly what this means for our community. And I think that there's some great aspects to it, but I think the public needs more time, so.
Okay, next on the.
Ms. Fox? I vote no to table, on tabling it. As I explained in my introduction, we have been, since March 18th, we, at the March 18th meeting, we had Dr. Callahan here to talk about the COC in the public with the opportunity for the public to ask questions. We've provided information in the packets, we've, you know, we've had many discussions on this. And this is, I think that people are misunderstanding what the purpose of this is. This is a non-binding action to attend meetings. We attend a lot of meetings on council and some of us are volunteering to go to more meetings. But the point is, this is not anything that takes us down any road, makes any commitments. It means we go to meetings to learn more about how to end homelessness. And I think we, as a community, can all agree that we don't want to see homelessness in our community, that we want to do something about it. And this is the thing that the Office of Homeless Prevention has told us is the best thing that we can do. So is to attend a Union County, to start attending Union County meetings to learn more and to find out what resources are out there. So I think we should have the conversation tonight. We have a lot of people here who want to talk about it. And, you know, if at the end of the day, people don't think it's a good idea, then we will vote no. But I want to hear all the people who are sitting in this room who've waited through a very, very long meeting to hear what they have to say.
Okay, next.
Ms. Hairston?
I am voting no to tabling this because I am thrilled at the number of people who have come out and I am absolutely interested in hearing what everyone has to say. And I feel to table the vote does a huge disservice to those of you who are in the room and those who have been paying attention. And so, for that reason, I vote no.
Ms. Hamblin?
So I would like to vote yes to table it. And I was under the impression that a vote yes to table also meant that all of you who have spent so much time coming out tonight would also get to articulate your feedback for the Continuum of Care. That was the advice that I was given earlier today, that a vote to table yes would also, of course, include all of you who have come out on this evening. I'd like to take a moment to explain why I think it's crucial to table this motion in order to give all of you, the public, and all of my colleagues, more time to research and discuss. First and foremost, it's absolutely a priority of mine to address the homeless issue in Summit, New Jersey. I spent a good time of my life, a good amount of my life, helping veterans, helping soldiers, and also focusing on businesses that prioritize mental health. It's certainly a priority of mine. When issues become major issues in town, such as Broad Street West, Maple Street, Continuum of Care, these are issues that every resident cares about. And we need to make sure we get this right. There is no reason to rush this. We need to be more, even more deliberative when bringing the higher authorities of county, state, and federal government into Summit, New Jersey. We also need to make sure we advocate for public dialogue and engagement. All of you matter. If I had to take a bet, we probably agree more than we disagree. All of us were elected by the resident, the resident taxpayers of the City of Summit. We do not rely on outside interests of builders, developers, consultants, county, state, or federal government. We owe it to the residents to make sure we are fully educated and the issues are fully vetted before voting. In turn, it is our duty to make sure the voters on major town issues are also educated and fully involved in the conversations. Deliberation needs to happen up here and it needs to happen out there. Just because we table something doesn't mean there isn't support or anyone has failed. In fact, just this week, President Vartan asked me to remove 10 ordinances for parking. And I said, "Wow, I think that's actually a really great idea. I need to do some more work on this." We just weren't ready for it. I learned about the COC at the last meeting. I'm learning and educating myself with all of you. I did attend the mayor's diversity conference in November, prior to taking the oath of office. Other than that, I'm learning with all of you. I just want to take a quick minute or two to walk you through my journey in educating myself on the COC since Dr. Callahan spoke. After Dr. Callahan's presentation that was shown to the public, I had the opportunity, along with another councilwoman who had just heard the information as well, to speak with Dr. Callahan. It was a great conversation. Although I learned plenty about the COC, I still left with many questions. Looking back, I think that's pretty normal. This is a very complex issue. I felt right at home talking to him and learning from him and learning more about how he can help Summit solve this problem. can help Summit solve this problem. After this, I also had a conversation with Proceed. I was grateful for this conversation, and I certainly think Proceed is something that Summit can and should benefit from. However, we don't need to be part of the COC to belong to Proceed, but we certainly can. I was then asked by our council president to forward any questions I may have so that he compile, can compile them and ask, send them to Union County. Anyone who has spent more than five minutes with me knows that I have to ask my own questions. I have to do my own research, I'm curious, and I have always found that asking questions is the best way to comprehend something. I then wanted to start my journey on learning about the COC, as I used to back at that podium or sitting in that audience, like all of you, like all of you are doing right now. I found that the Union County website was challenging. In fact, if most of you look it up right now, a lot of the site says it doesn't exist. As a resident, it's just difficult to learn about this topic in a couple of weeks. I was finally able to speak to Mrs. Topolowski, who's in charge of the COC at Union County, yesterday at 4:00 p.m. She is responsible for the COC. She's certainly a wealth of knowledge, she's been doing this for over 20 years. The facts are that Union County is still working on the coordinated entry process. This is evident when you visit the website, and Union County is still at the earlier stages of COC development in comparison to some other counties. With that being said, wonderful things seem to be coming together for Union County. We have mentioned that we are joining the COC for three reasons. You'll hear them over and over again. We need a seat at the table, we need the homeless management information system, and we need to be at the May 18th meeting. I'd like to think about some other options. I mentioned to Mrs. Topolowski from Union County that our community is recovering from some difficult times, and I wouldn't want to rush into another decision that the community desired to learn more about. Maybe some people couldn't come tonight. I asked if we could attend the May 18th meeting without putting in an application. She was absolutely amenable to this. In regards to the homeless management information system, what I would like everybody to understand is just because we join the COC, we won't get the HMIS. We will get the HMIS, the homeless management information system, if we apply for funding. That is simply a fact. We won't get HIMIS from day one as a municipality. Even if we did, who would manage that system? We use nonprofits like Bridges for this coordinated data entry. It's simply not the role of a municipality. Today, I spoke with Rich from Bridges, as well as the director of the Morris County COC. I prepared more tonight than I think I did for any college exam. Rich, thank you, you are a true professional, and I thank you for your service. I was inspired and humbled at what you did today, and it made me even more inspired to take our time through this process and get it right. In closing, I absolutely think we need to help the homeless. However, this is starting to feel a lot like Broad Street West. Let's slow this down, have a community meeting, talk some more, get our faith-based community, our nonprofits involved, and just slow it down a little bit. Thank you.
Okay, next.
Dr. Levine?
I would like to vote no to table the vote. Thank you.
Mr. Miniger?
No.
Okay.
And President Vartan?
I will vote no as well. So we're going to keep on talking about this tonight, because the motion to table has failed. So we're, I'm going to, I was hoping, to start off the conversation by saying that I believe everyone, and I repeat, everyone fundamentally agrees that we don't want our neighbors from Summit to live without a home. I think everyone agrees we don't want people without homes sleeping in bus stops, nor on the benches in the train station, nor in parks and playgrounds, and not in their cars. It's important before, I was hoping before, the rest of the conversation, that we remember that we're all starting from the same page about the goal, which is fewer homeless people in Summit. So for years, the nonprofit community, the interfaith community, and individuals have donated their time, talent, and treasure to help. We are appreciative of these Herculean efforts. But the reality is that despite the efforts, homelessness persists, and more of our Summit neighbors are homeless. We know that more than 65 people engaged with homeless services here in Summit. We know that about 25 of those have moved on from Summit. We know that about five have found permanent housing. That leaves a significant number of people without a home in Summit. This reality threatens the lives of those individuals, but also has a negative impact on the community at large. So tonight, we have two options as a community. Option number one is the status quo, and option number two is going and seeking out possible solutions. So the status quo is a continuation of the efforts we've seen in the last three years since the pandemic. The reality is that the status quo has not significantly decreased the number of people experiencing homelessness. The other option is that we can seek out possible solutions. I submit to you all that it is in the best interest of the individuals who are without homes, the people working to help them, including our police and EMS, and the community at large, to leverage the power of our local government to assist. We have an opportunity to do this by becoming a member of the COC. What it is, is the primary vehicle for planning and coordinating the delivery of emergency services to the homeless within a county. What it is not, is an obligation to do anything other than attend a bi-monthly meeting. It is not a financial obligation, there are no dues or other financial contributions. Now, we've heard some fears from members of council and some members of the community. I want to assuage those fears. We've heard that we don't have enough information. A working group has been gathering information for months. In March, information was shared with council members, and we received the presentation from Dr. Callahan. Since then, individual council members, as we've heard, have reached out to many people to do their own education. But after the last council meeting, I recognized that council members working from the same information would be most helpful. So I asked council members for their questions, that I then submitted to the county administrator responsible for this group. She promptly answered them, and those questions were shared in writing with the community and with council. We've heard that this is a gateway to building a homeless shelter here in Summit. That's like saying we shouldn't upgrade the baseball fields, because then it's a gateway to having a Major League Baseball team move into town. I implore those who are concerned, I implore those who are concerned about a shelter in Summit, to go and look at the bus stops and the train station and see, we already essentially have a homeless shelter. The program that Warm Hearts has been operating in the winter is tantamount to a shelter in Summit. We are trying to end homelessness, not manage it. We have no desire for a shelter, and we need to get Warm Hearts and the folks operating those programs the help that they need, so that their shelter programs become unnecessary. We've heard that there's a financial risk to Summit. Worry that with funding comes strings attached. There is no financial risk to Summit to attend meetings. The idea of there being strings attached is something, something we deal with all the time. We aggressively pursue federal and state grant funding for other programs like road projects, fire and police equipment, pedestrian and traffic safety measures, and recreation programming. We evaluate whether we want to accept the terms of the grant agreement on a case-by-case basis, and discuss each and every one at a council meeting with the opportunity for public comment before a vote is taken. We don't have the staff, nor the budget, to start doing social programs, and we don't have the authority to enter into any agreement without the majority of council approval. We've heard that we're rushing. That's subjective. And to those that feel that way, I'm sorry, we disagree. I view this as an urgent problem for those that are currently homeless, but also for those who serve the unhoused, to ensure that we can put the proper procedures and planning in place to prevent the kind of influx of homeless people that we saw last winter. We've heard concern that it's become partisan. That is deeply disappointing to me. It was not my intention. I don't believe this is a problem to which there's a partisan solution. I was originally thinking that the alternate council member we listed on the application should be Marjorie Fox, because she's chair of the Safety and Health Committee. But because we don't have anything to hide, and because we believe that this is important, Marjorie agreed to allow Lisa Allen to fill in that seat in that alternate position instead. I have said to Lisa many times, I hope that she will come with me to the next meeting and participate with me. We've heard that no other towns like Summit are participating, so why should we? Summit is unique, partially because of our enclosed train station, partially because of the hospital, partially because the service is being provided here. But at the end of the day, homeless people are in Summit for the same reason the rest of us are in Summit. It's safe, and it's clean, and it's wonderful. We need to take up our seat at the table and demand that we be taken seriously by the county and these other agencies. We've heard that the Housing Authority should participate instead of the City of Summit. Two things here. The Housing Authority's mission is to provide safe and affordable housing for low and moderate income individuals and families. The Housing Authority is not housing of last resort. They do not take people in off of the street. They have a long process to determine eligibility and a waitlist that is now several years long. And second, the Housing Authority is governed by its own board. We can encourage them to join, if that would be helpful, but we can't direct them. We've heard that the nonprofit and advocacy community participating in the program is better. When an issue affects our municipal operations, our hospital, and our quality of life in the way that this issue does, our nonprofit community representing Summit is simply not enough. We need the voice of those who are elected to adequately represent our city. I will close by saying, I know, this is a complex issue, but I call on my colleagues to recognize again that we share the same goal. We recognize the reality of the situation. We have to deal with this problem whether we want to or not. We must see the two relatively simple options ahead of us, and to move ahead in the way that will give us the best chance of actually solving this urgent problem. Thank you. I'll open up to other comments from members of council at this time. You wish we took a break now, right? Other comments from members of council? Yes?
Can I start?
Yep.
You, Council President. So I just want to, I do have a little speech. I just want to address a couple of things that you said, because I don't think this is partisan. Sorry, my back is too. I'm not, the idea that because two people asked to table it doesn't make it partisan. And we don't see this as a gateway, so to speak. The status quo in Summit is the feeling that it's being rushed. That's the status quo to me. And you have reached out, Marjorie's had a conversation, so I'm not saying you guys haven't reached out, but in that moment, when we were talking to, we were listening to the presentation from Mr. Callahan, and there was this expectation that this council would immediately respond, when it was the first time we were hearing about it, without, and you guys had gone months knowing that this was coming down the pike. So I'm just going to give you my little speech first. So, of course, I, my, my last name starts with A, so I always end up giving speeches first, and I had to follow all of you, but this is not partisan, this is not about showmanship, this is about our community and making good decisions that are good for everybody. So I just want to put that out, on the table. Because on March 21st, this council listened to a very broad overview from Dr. Callahan explaining the continuum of care program. Councilwoman Hamlet, I'm assuming Council Miniger, and myself were hearing the information for the first time, and I personally felt the information was overwhelming. And it took me off guard that we would be potentially shorting, be voting on something in short form. While I appreciate, Council President, that you had brought Dr. Callahan to the chamber, at the following meeting on April 4th during public comment, I asked council to consider postponing the vote. I didn't ask to stop the vote, I didn't ask not to vote, ever. I said, "Can we just postpone the vote?" My intent was not as a gotcha moment, rather, I was asking for more time for residents and council to be able to research, learn, and be informed on this incredibly important topic. As a council member, as and an elected official, I believe it's important we bring all matters to the public, and we talk about them openly, so residents can understand and hear what we're working on and how it benefits them, especially significant issues like development and like tackling homelessness. We owe it to our community to lay out the facts and examine issues publicly. This body, most of you know, but this body cannot deliberate as a body except on council nights. While we have a lot of discussions one-on-one to help each other, understand each other's viewpoints, and seek to find consensus, we are all still elected officials. That means the trust with our community is equally as important as the trust between each other. That trust is built by scrutinizing over ideas in this chamber that change the trajectory of this community. There's no reason, in my opinion, to rush this vote and join the COC tonight, because after a ton of research over the last three weeks, between hours of reading, dozens of phone calls, talking to experts, I personally come to the conclusion that this is not necessarily in this moment the right decision. It doesn't mean it won't be, but the COC, we don't have to join the COC to go to a meeting. So let's go. I will go with you, because I do want to learn. And I have been left out the last four months, and I think it was very kind of you to call me and offer me as an alternate. So I appreciate that. And I just want you to know that, at the end of the day, we do want the same thing. I think we all are on the same page. We want to tackle homelessness. And I want to be a part of the solution, I don't want to be a part of the problem. We know that homelessness is a serious issue, and under this council, over the last year, we have seen an incredible spike. Our neighbors don't have the same similar spike in homelessness as we do. So I'm going to hearken Simon Sinek, who says, "What is the why? Why do we have this spike in homelessness?" What are we doing in Summit that has prompted this increase over neighboring towns? And without exploring the why, I simply do not believe that we have enough facts tonight supporting the need to apply to become a COC member, when we can do things without being a member. We can go to the meetings, we can't participate in HIMIS unless we want to take out funding. I've read emails from people who have said, "You know what, we need to join the COC because we need funding." They don't even understand it. So if we, if we're at a place where our community understands this, then we're still receiving information that's incorrect, and we haven't wrapped our arms around it yet. I do see our role on council as one that helps our community. We take care of each other. And we're elected by our residents to make decisions that make lives better, to protect them, to ensure our tax dollars are spent prudently. We need a good police force to keep us safe, we need to ensure our roads are paved, ensure our sewers and storm drains work and do not flood, we need to fund a good school system, and officially run City Hall, and have productive relationships with our nonprofits who provide outreach to the community to help those in need. We are 100% accountable to our residents who lend us power temporarily to represent them. Yesterday, Councilwoman Levine and I went to meet with a couple residents who had concerns about the COC. And ironically, I think God works in strange ways, as I look at you, Reverend Harriel. A homeless man sat next to us, and it was very difficult to have a conversation, because there were two parts of me that felt like, I was nervous, because he was unpredictable, and he was drunk. And I'm sitting here having a conversation, and all I could think about is, what if it was our children sitting here? And then the other part of me was like, this man is homeless and deserves dignity. He deserves dignity and someone to help him. I don't know what that answer is, but the irony is that he sat next to us in that conversation, and we all need to come to a solution. This is not about us versus them. It's not about Republican or Democrat. It is about finding a solution that we can come to, that we all agree, so that we can solve this. And that's it. So that's why I asked to table my motion tonight, and that's what I mean, I had to go first, and I wasn't ready to go first. But that's why I tabled it, and it doesn't mean I'm a no, it just means let's explore more. That's it.
Councilwoman Hairston?
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Councilmember Allen. I absolutely love how we come at things, and I'm pretty certain it's our spiritual anchoring that has us approach ideas from a sense- anchoring that has us approach ideas from a sense of the personal and the communal. And so I, I have sort of kind of prepared remarks here, but I think I want to talk about two things that you said that are so remarkable to me of how important it is for Summit to be at the table and shaping and influencing, because I know that is what is the history of this town and of these residents. And, and seeing an opportunity to be a beacon, a roadmap for communities across the state of New Jersey and other communities like ours to shape what is happening, I see that absolutely as the opportunity. And so the two things that I heard you talk about is changing the trajectory of the city. And I hear the fact that homelessness is something we do have in common wanting to end. And I am really grateful to hear the reasons why you want to pause. It is the exact reason why I want to get in and, and influence it and make it go the way that Summit's history has proven over time that we don't have to do things in a substandard way. We are always influenced by federal, state, and county regulations. If you were paying attention to that extraordinarily dense budget discussion and how that is guided by, and mostly required by federal, state, and county regulations, and this is our opportunity to put a local print on what is happening that is coming down, coming down the road, and we can be at the table first. And so when you talk about the why and Simon's, Sinek's discussion about that, it is so important for us to have the opportunity to hear from folks in the room about those things that you fear and how fear shows up differently for different people, and how solutions can be brought about differently. And so Summit's why is, in my, going to repeat what I say, our history, when we were thinking about affordable housing in Summit, we didn't go along with what the status quo was happening. We went above and beyond for the benefit of the entire city and was a model. And so that is why I am absolutely in favor of Summit and our residents, I mean, and our council representatives absolutely influencing what happens, because this is not something that you can close your arms off to, and that we need to be in a solution-oriented mode. And that's why I absolutely see this as the opportunity to do that. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Other councilmember comments?
Go ahead.
Andy?
So I did have some prepared marks to, remarks to, but I was writing some stuff down just to respond to things I was hearing up here. I think this, Council President, what you said about this not obligating us to do anything was, it made me think almost immediately that there's a humongous difference between this and Broad Street West. It's very, very different. We're dealing with human beings. We have the opportunity to help people who are suffering right now in a way that doesn't obligate us to do anything at all. We're voting for you to actually just go to a meeting. You can hear that we're saying, oh, you don't have to participate in the meeting in order to, to hear the stuff. I would love to invite someone from Westfield and see the difference between somebody from Summit who has joined the COC and somebody from Westfield, and then ask Westfield to try to talk to this group and have them direct money from the COC to their town. It buys us influence. Joining a meeting gives us influence to actually discuss these topics. That's the only thing that we're, we're voting on tonight, is for one person to join this I, I, Councilmember Allen, I, I, I am, I don't know how to say this. The comment that we need to find a solution that's good for everybody. This is a solution that is bad for no one and good for people who are sleeping on benches, which is completely unacceptable in Summit. Just because it's springtime doesn't mean that we don't have an urgent situation on our hands. Winter isn't the only time that we, as a community, will help people who have no homes. This is a no obligation solution to something for people who are suffering. We need to pursue this, and I think it's ridiculous that we would not reach out and take advantage of this right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor?
Thank you, Council President. As you know, I don't vote, but I have the opportunity to speak when I want to. So as to status quo, Councilmember Allen, my understanding of what Council President was saying was that the status quo really refers to who's taking care of the homeless in Summit now. And, and that's the, a group of, of interfaith council members through Summit Warmhearts and nonprofits and other churches with fundraising done on an annual basis through a GoFundMe page. It is nothing that is institutionalized or really well regulated. And, and I know about the fundraising because I've been helping every year. I can also want to comment that for the last seven and a half years, I have made calls multiple times to the county for help in, in our, with the homeless issue in Summit, and it is certainly much bigger now than it was seven and a half years ago. And I've always gotten the response of, well, we can send somebody up, you know, maybe we can talk. Nothing's come of it. I agree that I do not think by joining the Continuum of Care that there is anything that obligates us. We can join and attend a meeting or two and say, this isn't working for us. We don't, we don't want to do this, and we can walk away. So a little history. When this building was built in 1994, the ground floor ring, wing opposite the Summit Housing Authority housed a public health department, including a full-time nurse and a welfare office, neither of which we have now. In 2005, one of the standing committees was in, one of the standing committees of the city was entitled Welfare, which morphed into a Recreation Committee when the, when Union County took over public welfare from local towns. That was around 2000. The Continuum of Care gives us a possibility of finding out funding resources, but also more importantly, helps us with human resources. As many of our councilmembers have mentioned tonight, they've spent time in the last couple of weeks finding out what's going on. What are the, what are the other towns doing? What are, what are the human resources that are out there? We've had more conversations with Rich Uniac in the last two months than I have in the last two years. But by joining the Continuum of Care, it's a little more truncated. You all don't have time to spend all this time talking to people and finding out what this process is. We all want to learn, and we want to find out. And I firmly believe that the, the point is, well, the point is, whether we like it or not, homelessness is the business of local government. It's here. We're the ones that, at the bus stops here, we're the ones at the end of the day, people don't call their neighbor and say, there's some homeless people staying at the bus stop. No, they call everybody up here, and they call the police. So the key to success, in my opinion, is networking. I, I spoke to or had a conversation with a, a member of council who, former member of council, who served 15 or so years ago on this council for several years. And he said that sleepers, homeless sleepers can seriously impact the quality of life in Summit, and that the Continuum of Care network sponsored by Union County is a natural, natural way to augment the local church and nonprofit efforts. So I would encourage council to vote yes, because we, this is a resource that we are not obligated to do, we can walk away from, but we sure need some assistance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Sure. So many things I want to say. One of the first questions I asked myself, or one of the first questions I asked others in many forums when I became a councilperson quite suddenly in October, was what is the role of municipal government in the homelessness problem? What can, what is the role of municipal government? That is a really philosophical and like politically scientific question. It's so interesting to think about that. There's so many things a government can do that involve augmenting infrastructure, to care for people who are homeless, to, yes, the concept of creating, helping to create a, a building to provide low barrier shelter, and I can go on and on and on. And I said immediately, that is not what we want to do in Summit. That is not at all the type of obligation that Summit residents want, and there's not the role of municipal government in solving the, in, in solving homelessness and ending people's homelessness in Summit. Maybe that works in some places, but not here. The role of municipal government in helping to not manage homelessness, which is what we've been doing a darn good job of, but to end people's homelessness needs to be a lot softer and a lot more subtle and not be, not such, and not overstep in that way. And then when I discovered this concept of the COC, I said, that is exactly what is the fit for Summit, and that is the, what I think a role of the, of our government in this unique city unlike any other, because there is no obligation to join. You can leave anytime you want. There is absolutely no obligation. And it seemed to me like really the way that we could do our part, because right now, the burden of this problem, and like it or not, we do have, have a problem with homelessness. It's, it's across the country. It's in New Jersey and it's also in Summit. It's being done by people, you know, the funding of, of, you know, generous residents towards nonprofits, faith-based groups, and I know we have at least one or two professional organizations in town, so anyhow, who, who do this, and we need some, this is our role. That was the answer to my question, was that this is a, no obligation way that our government can, can help. Also, so in the beginning, I, Rich, your name is being thrown around like all over today, but yes, one of the things we did is have coffee. And I said to Rich, I'm like, I am now a councilperson, because we knew each other, because I'd volunteered and done things with bridges, and I said, I'm now on council. What can my role be in? And, and it's a long-winded way of making that point with the COC. But my thoughts on the COC is that it is one of the centralized planning entities that would give us a line of sight into things, things we could do, that could be beneficial to our community, and exposes to opportunities we might decide to opt into and partake in. We are not, anything we decide to do must return here and be discussed in this forum and voted upon with the input of the community. We cannot apply for any grants, whether it's $200 or not, on behalf of the city unless it is a resolution on the agenda that we must vet and discuss and debate, and all of you have a chance to participate in. The only thing to come from our refusal to participate is ignorance. Simple participation pending any other choices can only serve to educate. I'm not committing us to anything. I understand the many thoughtful points that have been made in the past, but I favor being engaged and being educated. I just want to make one more comment. Everything okay? Good. One more comment, just Lisa Allen reminded me of a meeting, a really great meeting that I had yesterday with some residents, and Lisa, thank you for including me in that. And just to remind everyone that some people can be given the same set of facts and the same robust, you know, amount of information that they find on their own, they hear, whatever. But, but the point is, is that people can be given the same facts and arrive at a different conclusion, and it doesn't make someone evil, and it doesn't make someone, you know, that they want to ruin the city. And, and that is, I think, what happens in a, in a sense, that same facts and, and we arrived at different conclusions, but there was so much agreement in that meeting, I found. So, thank you. I think that's all I can think of that I want to say now, but there may be more later. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. So we've gone around the horn up here once, so let's, let's allow for the community, let's, can we?
I, I absolutely will, Council President. I just want to make sure that we do have the opportunity to speak again, because there are additional things that came up that I would just want to make sure that we're not being told we have to be quiet.
Yes, yeah. I think, I think there's a lot of people here, though, who look like they might want to talk. So let's, let's do that, and then we'll circle back with councilmembers once, once the community has a, has a chance. Does that sound good?
It does.
Okay. Thank you. So we'll open it up to members of the public at this point. Come on up.
Reverend Vernon, Reverend Vernon Williams, I'm the president of the Summit Interfaith Council, to members of the common council, president of our tan, Mayor Rades. I stand here on behalf of the Summit Interfaith Council, and we are submitting this letter of the, in support of the City of Summit becoming a member of the Union County Comprehensive Emergency Assistance System Continuum of Care, a standing subcommittee of the Human Services Advisory Council. Comprised of nonprofit and municipal entities, the Union County Continuum of Care's goal is to promote, promote community-wide commitment to ending homelessness by focusing on the areas of health, housing, public assistance, and social services. As a member of the Continuum Care Standing Subcommittee, our city would benefit immensely from access to the network of information and support programs, as well as federal, state, and county funding aimed at ending homelessness. Membership would not require any mandatory municipal action nor increase the levy for county services. Rather, the benefit to our city and residents would be the opportunity to consider enrollment in programs and funding related to housing and homelessness prevention, mental health and wellness, addiction prevention and treatment, and support for the disabled and elderly. This is not an insignificant benefit, considering that in 2019, Union County was awarded four-plus million dollars from the federal Continuum of Care, and in 2020, received over $5 million. As members of the Summit community and as the Council of Interfaith leaders, we take seriously our duty to ensure the welfare of our residents. As Dr. Martin of the King stated, "We are caught in an inescapable network of mutuality, tied in single garment of destiny. Whatever affects one indirectly, directly affects all indirectly." Therefore, we earnestly ask for your affirmative action on this request. Furthermore, to table this is cruel. Cruel in the fact that if you're going to wait to provide needed resources and needed help to those who are homeless now, is, you know, it's, it's just simply cruel. And so therefore, why not join some, I hear, I hear you talking about just going to a meeting, but it is going to a meeting that can provide you possible access to funding that is there now. And if you're not able to get the funding, at least you made the effort. You You can't do that by just simply joining the meeting. And so therefore, it would be cruel to ask those who are homeless now to wait. Thank you.
Thank you. Reverend, if you can just email or drop off your statement up here, that would be great. Thank you.
Marcus McNamara, 53 Morris Avenue. I guess my question is, and do any of you, have you personally talked to any of these homeless people in Summit? I have. I don't know if anybody. I think sometimes when there's a problem, the most simple solution is overlooked sometimes. You could go talk to somebody and find out that they just need a job. What will this CO, whatever the hell, whatever it is, how is addiction addressed in this? When that guy, Callahan or whatever his name was, when he came, I didn't hear him mention any single word. I looked on the packet, I didn't see anything about addiction. I'm specific, I am, what's the word I'm looking for? I'm 18 years in recovery.
Yeah, Marcus.
I know better than most on how to handle an addict or an alcoholic. An addict and alcoholic will take everything they can take. I know from personal experience. I don't see how throwing money at a problem is going to fix it. If you build a house, a foundation on sand, it's going to collapse again. My, the way I see it, these people need help to get sober. Then you work, you know, when I was in the Marine Corps, and you were EMT, you start the breathing, stop the bleeding. If you jump those steps, you're screwed. Now, these people are not bad people who need to get good. They're not weak people who need to get strong. They're sick people who need help. There's a way. I mean, the way our country treats addiction and mental illness, I think it was Ronald Reagan who shut down all those places. I'm not a Democrat or a Republican, I'm independent. I just want the right thing to be done here and, you know, prior planning prevents piss poor performance. You know, just dot your i's, cross your t's. But you can't fix a problem if you don't get to the root cause. I mean, a lot of you are doctors and lawyers and stuff. I paint houses. I'm an expert at two things, painting houses and recovery. I know how it works. I did it wrong for very, very long. I know two of the guys who were out there personally. One guy was in recovery from me. I said, Ed, what are you doing back here? He went to Florida. He went to rehab, he got out, he had dinner at Roots, and went down to Nork, he copped drugs. And I said, why are you here? He said, nobody gives me a problem. I can get on a bus and drive down to Nork, and I'm going to sleep here. Nobody bothers me. Sometimes the solution can be part of the problem. And I think that all the help that these people give to these people is fantastic. But from my experience, you can't, you got to take off the kid gloves sometimes. And, you know, it's, I don't know what that thing is about Jesus, where you give a man a fish for a day, if you know, for a day, teach him how to fish. He doesn't go hungry for, something like that. I'm not religious. But, you know, there's so many things that could be done. And I think Gil Oren had spoken before. What have we done? What have we done as a community, honestly? Who has gone up there, talked to these people? What's your problem? How can we help you? Instead of bringing in gov, and I'm saying, I don't know. This might be the greatest frickin' program ever. I don't know. But if addiction is not addressed, you can throw all the money at it in the world, and the problem will not be fixed. That's all I got.
Thank you. Next up, come on.
Carlos Maichat, 23 Stockton Road. Council statements come across as conflicting to me. On the one hand, you say joining the COC commits Summit to nothing, no obligation. On the other hand, you're saying it's needed to end homelessness. The motion seems to me like a Trojan horse into a slippery slope. If it weren't so, council would be open to providing citizens with transparency on what this path leads to, its implications and true goals, rather than downplaying it in order to get it passed quickly. There are various homelessness services and faith-based organizations in Summit, God bless them, that have been sheltering homeless individuals. The number of homeless people in Summit has increased significantly, and many of the people who use these services in Summit are likely not from here. While helping the homeless is a worthy cause, a major concern with the COC is that eventually it will lead to increasing the supply of services and shelter in Summit that will only incentivize the importation of more homeless into Summit. The council needs to provide more information to its citizens before moving forward. Thank you.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Radus, Mayor Yang, and absentia, Council President Vartan, and members of common council, Jim Bennett.
And happy birthday.
Thank you. Well, that was a couple of days ago.
That's okay.
B E N N E T T, 38 Fairview Avenue. When I was a law clerk at my father's firm, my father told me that unnecessary and systematic maintenance of information and statistics is an activity that taxes administrative resources. A decision to proceed with this kind of activity requires balancing cost and benefit. One such undertaking here might be the Homeless Management Information System, which I've heard called by its acronym HIMARS. HIMARS, according to the HUD exchange site, is a local information technology system used to collect client-level data and data on the provision of housing and services to homeless individuals and families and persons at risk of homelessness. Each Continuum of Care or COC unit that Summit is voting on joining tonight is responsible for selecting the HIMARS software that complies with HUD's data collection, management, and reporting standards. As such, HIMARS is suited to the social service agencies and COCs, not necessarily to a municipality like Summit. Maybe I'm misunderstanding the function of it. But by wading further into the water with HIMARS, Summit could find itself not only entangled in an activity that may not be its responsibility, Summit could be taking on a role that properly belongs to the county. Getting in becomes easier than getting out, and taking on unnecessary work is a hallmark of inefficiency. So my question tonight, if you should vote to join the COC, is that if you plan on creating some kind of additional function in the municipal government in order to accommodate HIMARS? Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I email up a copy?
Thank you.
Is there an answer?
I'm sorry.
He asked a question. Do you have an answer?
Well, I mean, I, I mean, yeah, this is the public, so I want to make sure that we can get through the questions. And then I think we'll probably circle back around on that. But, I mean, the short answer would be no. We're not, I don't think anybody's interested in adding municipal functions to manage something. I think what we're, what we heard from a lot of different people is that we're looking to provide connections between the organizations that are doing this work really well and the organizations in Summit. And I think that's the baseline of the, we can get into that more. But, yeah.
Steve Sartorius, 37 Tulip Street. I think like most people here, I first learned about the Union County COC and Summit's intention to join from the presentation by Dr. Callahan at the March 21 council meeting. That was the first I'd heard of it. One of the main reasons given by Dr. Callahan and council members for joining the COC was that it will allow Summit to receive funding to address homelessness from both the federal government and the state of New Jersey. So this weekend, to educate myself, I looked at the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development, the HUD website, and saw that indeed HUD was giving away a lot of money, primarily for the provision of shelter for low-income and homeless people. Interestingly, though, HUD has never given a COC grant to any Union County municipality. There are four Union County cities that are a member of COC, Elizabeth, Plainfield, Linden, Rahway, and then tonight after you vote Summit. The only time HUD has made any COC grants in Union County was back in 2013, and those grants were to housing agencies and homelessness service providers. If Summit were to somehow become the first Union County city to receive a HUD COC grant, what would you use that money for? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, Mr. Mayor, council. I'm Avi Friedman, F R I E D N A N. I live at 34 Hartley Road. I'm also the rabbi of congregation Or Shalom and a past president of the Summit Interfaith Council. And I guess I have a few things to say. First of all, if somehow Summit has the reputation of being a kind, generous, charitable place, then personally, I'm proud to live in such a community. Though I don't think that that is necessarily why our homeless numbers have spiked in the last couple of years. I think it has spiked because homelessness has spiked. It seems to me that the COC has a number of different functions, and we can decide which of those we want to partake in. But I think if we are strategic about joining the COC, we are a voice at the table about how money is spent in our county. And if we are strategic about how that money is spent, it will ultimately lead to an easing of our burden. Right? Right now, we have a burden that, you know, is a challenge, right? Nobody likes seeing the homeless folks living in our train station for a number of reasons, both aesthetic and moral. No one should live like that, and it's unpleasant. It's not what the train station is for. So why would we not want to be a part of the countywide conversation about how to ease homelessness? And hopefully, it will have an impact on our community. So as we've heard, there is no financial commitment that we need to make. All it means is we have a voice at the table. Why would we not want to have that voice and move this ball forward to our benefit and also for the benefit of the homeless who live among us? Thank you.
Vicki Letterman, 52 Clark Street. Two weeks ago, when we first heard about joining the COC, you said you've been working on this since November. You haven't answered the most basic questions posed to you. Why? Gil Oren gave you a list of 29 questions, none of which have been answered. I posed similar ones online, like, is the increase in the homelessness population in Summit, Summit residents who lost their housing here in Summit, or are they from other towns coming here for the services? Because those are two very different problems. Greg reached out to me, but refused to answer any of them in writing or on the record, and kept directing me to the 160-page packet, which says absolutely nothing about Summit's situation. Surely, if you've been researching this since November, you've asked these same incredibly basic questions and know the answers. So why not just answer us? We're all aware of how the problem is becoming worse and more aggressive in Summit. Yesterday, as has been stated, a few people were talking to Jamie about Bergen County's model, which you haven't even mentioned, by Julia Orlando, which is the first in the country to end chronic homelessness. You haven't even mentioned it. Ironically, during our discussion, an out-of-towner homeless man, doesn't, not from Summit, who clearly had mental problems and was drunk, came in. After he knocked over a table and was repeatedly disruptive, the management called the police to remove him. Later, he was seen lying on a bench in the train station. Summit does not have the mental health services that he clearly needs. Union County Social Services does. You've seen at least two presentations on solutions to homelessness. One presented by Julia Orlando from Bergen County was in a private for council only, while the other by Michael Callahan, who wants to make Summit the Western County Coordinated Entry Point, was a public presentation. Why not have Ms. Orlando's presentation be public as well? Her solution works. There are no more homeless people in Bergen County. Is that what we're trying to do or not? I don't really care about ending, I'm sorry. I don't think you really care about ending homelessness. Because if you did, you would be pushing for this successful model. Instead, you're hell-bent on voting tonight to join the COC so you can have a seat at the table, which isn't going to do anything to solve Summit's homeless problem. It's probably to make contacts to further political ambitions. The lying, I'm sorry for my, you know, the mood here has been positive, and I wanted to keep it that way, but I just can't. The lying, deceitfulness, exclusion, disrespect for residents and certain council members, and the politicizing of non-political things by this council have broken the public's trust. From council being about to sign a lease with Blackstone for Sub District 2 while telling us only Sub District 3 is on the table. How many people know that, that one? To the best little Zooming and resignation debacle, to not even owning a strip of land that Broad Street West would be built on, and my personal favorite of a little over 250 feet. There is no rush for this vote. When people have questions and you can't or won't even answer them, you want to end homelessness, so do I. Then follow a method that's proven to work. Now, if you're going to Union County to convince them to do the, or persuade them to look more carefully at the Bergen County one, I would support that. But this pervasive mismanagement and violation of trust has managed to make me do something that no one else has ever been able to make me do. And that is vote Republican for the first time in my life. And I, I just hope you hear what people are saying here. We need to be on the same page about this, about Broad Street West. You are the ones making this adversarial. I don't know why. You've got expertise in this room, in this town, people who want to help, people who know way more than you do, and you don't invite them to the table. So let's get on the same page and fix this mess.
Thank you.
Dennison Harriel, 34-year resident of this great city. And 34 years as pastor of Wallace Chapel Amy Zion Church in Summit, former, past president of the Summit Interfaith Council. Been around a long time. And first, let me begin by saying that I'm a little shaken because two councilmembers recognize the spirituality that is needed. Councilwoman Allen recognized me. And then Councilwoman Harrison said spirituality. So it's not often that, you know, church comes into political situations. So, thank you. I'm a little, I don't know what's going on now, but that's, that's good. And the other two is that, to the gentleman who spoke earlier, the quote was, "Teach me how to fish, and I'll fish for the rest of my life." It's not biblical, that's, Jesus didn't say that. That's some other office of it. And the other is the number of people who are homeless in Summit. They fell through the cracks through no fault of their own. They're not either alcoholics or on drugs. They may have lost a job or some other situation. So I wanted to speak to that. First of all, I want to thank Council President Vartan and members of common council, along with Mayor Radus, for being proactive in recognizing a problem and for identifying something that... something that can potentially be used to address the problem while continuing to work on other solutions that are out there that we may not have tapped into yet, but may become available to assist in addressing the problem. As many of you know, I approach situations like this one from three perspectives. First, is there a need? Second, is it doable? And third, is it the right thing to do? And then I conclude by saying, just get it done. Communication, compromise, whatever it takes, just get it done if there's a need, if it's doable, and is it the right thing to do. Using the analogy of having a cold and ignoring it, we'll see it become bronchitis. You ignore bronchitis and you end up with pneumonia. When you do not give the attention to something that needs it, it becomes a major problem. Now, I say to you this evening that the homeless situation in Summit is now at the cold level. Exploring opportunities that involve partnerships, interaction, communication, networking with the county or state or even the federal government that can be used to address this cold situation, the homeless situation, that could involve getting grants that could be used for mental health, finding out other ways of addressing addiction and mental health assistance, alcohol, job opportunities, a whole litany of things that money can help with, is nothing more than a win-win situation for Summit. And this opportunity, in my opinion, should be fully explored. Again, I received and, well, I printed it out on email, from email, I got a, from the City of Summit Press Office, Continuum of Care information fact sheet from Christina Tokolosky. To me, that covered every question that needed to be asked, and she was candid and provided the answers. But again, this opportunity should be fully explored. It does not involve any money obligation or commitment by Summit, and Summit will not be harmed in any way by participating in this opportunity. There is no downside to exploring this opportunity. Summit needs to be in the room. Summit needs to be at the table to learn of resources that are available to help before homelessness in Summit goes from a common cold to pneumonia and ultimately to an epidemic. We are blessed, we are fortunate, we are grateful that we have in Summit warm hearts and grace and the interfaith community, not for profits, that are doing their part, but they cannot do it all. There's nothing wrong with seeking help when you recognize you need help. There's nothing wrong with being in a room over and against being outside of the room wondering what is going on in the room. There's nothing wrong with being in that room and seated at the table to learn about what resources are available that you did not know about, that you can accept or reject, but at least you have the opportunity to explore. So again, this is an opportunity, in fact, an excellent opportunity, for the city to explore and learn about resources that may be available from all levels of government. And I say to you this evening, please don't close your eyes and ears to exploring what is available beyond Summit and that will benefit Summit. There's no need to delay, there's no need to table, there's no need to interject fear over facts, there's no need to do anything other than take advantage of what has been offered, that you can learn more of the opportunities, you can accept or reject them. So I simply ask that you do not delay this opportunity and regret it later. Homelessness in Summit is real. It cannot be wished away. So I say be proactive, deal with it now, explore what resources and helpers out there that can benefit Summit. The county is one possibility. There might be another agency at the state, and if there is, explore that. It's not going to hurt or harm Summit to have a council person and for Summit to become a member of this continuing institution, or whatever you might want to call it. But I do say that you will benefit from it. It's in our best interest, and by doing so, you become part of the solution rather than part of the problem. Summit has a history of partnerships. We've accepted money from the American Rescue Plan for COVID relief, we've gotten grants for public art, for police and fire, for education, for cleaning up a Bryant Pond, for affordable housing, to only name a few. This opportunity is no different. So I would encourage you to seize the moment, do what is right, and then, if this doesn't work, you can only say you tried, and it's nothing that beats failure better than a try. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
On the surface, this sounds like a great idea, and I'm sure that it is. I just have one question for you, and maybe this is one of those strings attached that we have, that we've overlooked. In your own fact sheet provided by the speaker, or Lisa Tavasky, whatever her last, her name is, is membership in the COC considered a prerequisite, I can't say this word, requisite to potentially applying for grants from the federal, state, or county governments? Is that for all grants, or is that just for homeless assistance or social services grants?
It's, it's just for some grants. So, so, right, so for the grants offered through the COC, membership is a prerequisite, yes, but that's not all the grants in existence that have to do with this issue?
Okay, so, this office, this is a county office?
It's an organization organized by the county.
But, so it's not a county office?
The administrators of it are county employees, yes.
Okay, they're funded by our tax dollars?
Yes.
So, in my previous life, I dealt with the county on several levels, and I know it's, Mayor, I completely agree with you, it's impossible to get answers. My point is, we're funding this organization. Why don't we already have a seat at the table?
We should have.
Okay.
We didn't know about it.
Okay.
And that leads me to believe, potentially, possibly, maybe they didn't want to split up the pie.
And that leads me to, further question is, why isn't Cranford, Westfield, Union, Springfield, all those other towns involved? If it's, I'm not saying it's a good thing or a bad thing, but it seems like the towns that truly need it take advantage of it, which is good.
Well, right now, Summit is the, of the 27 towns in Union County, we are number five in the amount of homeless people in our community.
Yeah, I agree, I see it every day.
So maybe the others don't feel they need it, or they don't know about it.
Okay, okay. So, and another thing that I'm struggling with is to talk to the downsides of lack of Mayor forums, council president forums, business administrator forums, you guys all get together, that's networking, is it not?
Was I invited?
Well, well.
Did we miss the council president forum?
No, I think I said council president.
No, I mean, I, I don't.
My point is, my point is, I think on the surface, this is a good thing. I think it will definitely help Summit. I know the Interfaith does a great job, I worked with them for a little while. I just, these little things thrown out there kind of threw me for a loop, that you can't apply for social service grants unless you're a member.
Only certain grants that are, that are provided through this.
No, I get, that's what I mean. Social services grant provided through this, but where does that money come from? It comes from our tax dollars, which we shouldn't have to, it's kind of, it's kind of backwards, okay? So I'll leave that hanging out there. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up. Yep.
Hi, good evening. My name is Tina O'Connor. I live on 10 Myrtle Avenue, and I'm just going to piggyback on Mr. Nelson's comment. There's, this is a question that has been raised a couple of times tonight, but we haven't really gotten quite a straight answer from city council. So several of you have stated several times that we, it is kind of very important and imminent that we join this COC and we vote on it tonight, but it's, seems to be that it's common knowledge that anyone can attend this very important meeting on May 18th. So I have to ask, why is it so important that we, that we vote tonight and join if Mr. Vartan, Ms. Allen, and anyone in the public can join? That is a question that has not been answered, and I would like an answer. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I thought that I had covered that, which was, which was that this is a very urgent issue for the people that are homeless in this community and the people that are caring for those people in this community. We, we should not, should not delay when we have the opportunity to be leveraging the power of this government to be helpful, and in that it doesn't cost us anything. That's, that's my, that's my response.
May I say something?
Sure.
I would just like to say through you, Council President, that my, the tabling that I was recommending tonight, one of the reasons I was recommending to table, I was under the understanding, and Council President can correct me if I'm wrong, but that we would not get a seat at the table on May 18th unless we voted tonight. So I felt as though, I certainly, most of you know me, I'm pretty kind, I volunteer all the time. It certainly is not that I don't believe in the COC. I simply felt rushed, considering Council President Vartan told me we had to make a decision tonight, or we couldn't attend the May 18th meeting, and I found out, number one, that's not the case, and number two, that we would not get access to the HIMSS system. And those were two really, things that I really just needed to do more research around, and certainly.
I don't, I don't think I represented that, that we would be unable to attend unless we voted tonight, what, tonight, to you, in our, in our, excuse me.
I think just, I don't.
Excuse me, please.
Maybe it was to the public, I don't remember.
So what I expressed at the last council meeting, and what I expressed in my conversation to you, and what I'm expressing this evening, is that I believe that this is a very urgent thing, and that it's very important that we move forward with it, because there's no reason not to. So I'll repeat that again. Thank you. Other comments from the community? Yeah.
Good evening. Try not to be repetitive with all that's happened and discussed this evening. My name is Amanda Block, pardon me, thank you. My name is Amanda Block, B-L-O-C-K. I reside at 13 De Berry Place. I'm the founder and director of Grace. Grace, Grace is a member of the Continuum of Care. We joined at the recommendation of the United Way of Union County, Overlook Behavioral Health and Overlook Community Health, in order to learn more about not just helping our currently unhoused in Summit, but enabling homelessness prevention measures. And because of the partnerships found present in the COC, we've actually prevented homelessness among our families in Summit this year. The COC meetings, they create a network of information and support between the municipalities and social service agencies. The meeting agendas are actually issues that flow through the Human Services Advisory Council of Union County, and it's the member organizations of the COC that create the agenda about the issues that are most pressing at that time. So this can be alcoholism and drug addiction, mental health, disability services, all of these social determinants of health that enhance the overall well-being of the community and can predict the rate of homelessness within the community. By joining the COC, there are no mandatory actions other than attending the meetings, and this membership increases access just to information to consider. We would get, we, more of us, would have access to news and programs that other municipalities and institutions have enacted. We would then be able to consider programs relating to housing and homelessness in this time of historic need. I know that Grace is one of several institutions within Summit who receive calls and emails and messages nearly daily about unhoused individuals and households that really are on the precipice of homelessness. And now is the time that we form together to look at all of the resources at our disposal. To anyone who would like, and I, I offer the general public this invitation, to anyone who would like more information about what it's like to be a part of the COC, or if they'd like to see for themselves, please contact me. I'll share minutes from previous meetings, or you could join me at the next meeting, May 18th, 10 a.m., on Zoom. I'll, I'll be happy to answer any questions then. There's so much information, there's so much misinformation. We need our leaders to access the best programs and services and network in order to manage our community effectively. And the COC of Union County is light-years behind other counties. That's why we don't have the clear-cut information. That's why other municipalities haven't heard about it, and that's why now is the time for other municipalities and other nonprofits to join, to shape this at the ground level and make sure that the discourse is what would benefit our community. So all of you, join me, please. Love to share the information, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Council President, Council President, I'm sorry.
Yes.
You know, through you, I just wanted to ask Amanda a question. Do you mind? Just because she's here.
Sure.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So through you.
Do you want to come?
Of course.
Thank you, Amanda. So are there other cities, municipalities at the table?
Yes.
When you're in the meetings?
Yes.
Okay. And do you, I don't know, publicly, you can say how many cities are in it or come to the meetings?
I, to be honest with you, I only know based on minutes in the, in the meetings I've attended. They, they don't publish a list. There was actually a big discussion about that at the last meeting as to whether they would publish a list for privacy reasons. I can tell you that, that I, I have heard municipalities speak, and I've read minutes where they have given reports.
Okay. And so, I, this is truly out of curiosity. So it's City of Summit, any of us can go, because it's a public meeting. Would we find out any information going just on our own cognition versus being a member? Is there different information you get as a member versus not?
No, not at all. So there, there would be no difference. So in terms of receiving information, no. In terms of whether we can access programs and funds as a municipality, that is the opportunity that Summit would miss in not joining the COC. So yes and no is the answer to that question, but certainly, there's just benefit in receiving the information, and there could be provided, you know, the master plan, the goals within the master plan. How is it that we could access additional funds or additional programs from being a member to achieve the goals within our community?
So, and the last question, Council President. So would it be, I, I'm here, if I, maybe I got it wrong. It sounds like the Interfaith Council, as the providers, not everybody has joined. So it sounds as though the providers, every provider- So, it sounds as though the providers, every provider should join. It shouldn't just be the city, that anybody who is in, um, trying to help should go to these meetings.
Oh, absolutely right. So, in, um, in discussing the rising unhoused population in Summit with all of the network that, that I work with, I, Grace, um, each of them were really convinced me, didn't have to do, work hard to convince me, but really gave me a lot of information to say, you need to be at the COC, you need to be a part of these conversations, you need to learn as much as possible of the information that flows through that. I, as Grace, do not intend on applying for a grant, but the, the net, I just, we don't have to, because necessarily, because the network that is available, there, there are other programs in place that we can then access by being a part of the conversation.
I'm sorry, I do have one more question. Does that mean that, um, can, can any provider apply for a grant?
You have to be a member of the COC in order to apply for a COC grant.
So, as a member, you could apply for a grant?
If I deemed it within my mission, um, I, again, the, the grants that come through are like afford, you know, build affordable housing, that's not what Grace is going to do, and so that doesn't, you know, work within our mission. Um, if something, if it were, um, you know, I, I've been trying to think of an example of a grant that I've seen made available that fits within the mission, but having um, understanding of how to help people apply for affordable housing, information like that, that is very valuable to the organization.
Okay, so what I'm hearing...
Through you, council president, I really need to jump in here.
Sorry.
This is such a wonderful line of questioning, because what you are illuminating for us is what is the missing link to some of the questions that I'm hearing. What is the benefit of a municipality joining? It is the federal, state, and county's government's way of providing a structure for collaboration. It is, and you are unable to apply for some of the grants if you're not a member.
Active member.
If you're not an active member, and this is the structural mechanism that allows collaboration to happen. And I think that is the missing link, that what, Delia, I know you are asking, we don't have to, we can just show up and get the benefit. You can get the benefit of the information and the networking, but you cannot get the funding that is being provided that is about, um, how monies are coming down through the different levels.
May I give an example, actually, of a program that a municipality would benefit from, that I learned about in the past month? Is anyone here familiar with the organization Monarch Housing?
Yes.
So, they provide, they provide housing, they provide homelessness prevention, they provide a lot of support. There is a landlord support program that a municipality can apply for, where if a landlord provides housing within a certain budget bracket, they provide funding for maintenance, for, uh, support to help the landlord keep the tenant housed, and, and, and keep the landlord indeed, and keep, keep the rent paid, shall we say? And that is something that would be a great benefit that is on the municipal level that an organization couldn't necessarily apply for.
May I?
And I'm really anxious to hear from Rich, because I think he would be able to provide additional information, not to dismiss you at all, but...
I don't want to put, I don't want to put anybody on the spot. I don't want to put anybody on the spot, but if you want to come and talk with us, we would love to.
Can I just address councilwoman Harrison's, um, comment real quick?
Sure.
I just wanted to say, um, respectfully, councilwoman Harrison, I didn't mean like we wouldn't go to the COC ever, I just meant for the first meeting or two, we could attend without being a member if the community had more questions. So, that's all I meant, not saying we would never do it, I just thought the community might need more time to learn more about it. That's all.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, everybody. I'm Rich Uniac, president at Bridges Outreach. I did figure since, uh, my name had been referenced a few times, I would say hello. We, uh, were founded here in Summit almost 35 years ago, so I feel very honored to represent this organization. Um, you know, we do currently employ a full-time licensed social worker, so if you have a need that you see in the community, please do reach out to us. The other thing that I really just wanted to highlight, and I was just so glad to hear the Bergen County model referenced, because I always like to talk about the fact that homelessness has been ended and was first ended here in New Jersey, uh, in Bergen County. They've achieved what's called functional zero. It's a data-driven, continuous improvement approach that, uh, is centered around the county doing the work and being connected to the counted housing, county housing authority, having all services under one roof, a very easy pathway into everything that a person needs, connected very, very quickly to housing. They can usually house people, I believe, within 45 days. And I do think that that is something that this county could use, and that this municipality would have the opportunity to advocate for as a voting member of the COC, that, that such a model should be considered, should be adopted. And, and for me, that's, that's a big upside to being a voting member of the COC, is being able to, as I keep hearing, have that seat at the table, have a vote, have a say. You know, a lot of what we hear from people who are experiencing homelessness, or the imminent threat of homelessness in this, in this town, is that they don't want to go to Elizabeth, right? And there really isn't anything else besides in Elizabeth. And maybe something needs to be created in Plainfield, you know, somewhere in Western Union County. I don't have all the answers, but I think that there does need to be a county-led solution, given that they are receiving not just tax dollars, uh, from Summit, but significant federal revenues that they develop strategies on how to spend that Summit doesn't get to vote on. So, that for me is a big reason why I, I am increasingly seeing that Summit should be able to have a say as to how the county is tackling homelessness, because Summit is certainly being affected by homelessness in Union County.
Thank you. Thank you, Rich. One of, one of the, yeah. One of, one of the great, one of the great things that Rich said to me in a conversation about this was, you want to be the one to say, hey, put your boss on the phone, right? And, and when Summit is there and in the room and a part of it, if we're hearing something we don't like from one of these other county agencies, or, or we can say, hey, we want, we want some attention paid to Summit, and we can't do that if we're not there, if we're not a part of it. So, thank you. All right, yes.
Hi, I'm Stacy Allen. I'm on Plymouth Road. I've been researching the COC since you guys brought this up a couple of weeks ago. I've learned that almost all funding from COC is given to projects that entail some kind of construction. COC does a priority ranking and awards zero points to projects that do not include housing. It seems like Summit is joining the COC, and that might be aimed at making homeless shelters, which I think President Vartan brought up earlier, that that was not the priority. But can you please clarify what is the priority? If the funding that we would be getting would be for construction and for sheltering, what else would we, what other kinds of money could we get, and what would that be for?
Sure. So, I, I think the priority is, is fewer homeless people in Summit, which I think everybody on the day has, has continually been saying over and over again is our goal. And, I'm sorry, the second part of the question?
Well, the question is, if we're looking for funding, for joining, obviously, we can attend the meetings, we've all learned that tonight. So, we can attend the meetings anyway and get connected, but if we're looking for funding, and that's what you say the rush is, is to get funding to help our problem, it sounds like they only award funding when you're actually building something or doing some sort of construction.
So, there's no, so as we've, so there's no program at this point, there's nothing other than just going and being a part of it and learning. There's nothing that we're actually applying for. There's no grant program that we're actually applying for at this moment, and we hope to discover some, some help, that we hope to discover some help here. And, and I think, yeah, yeah.
I mean, we would only apply for funding for things that we felt were necessary, we could use in Summit, and we'd want to use in Summit money. We don't want to construct a shelter. Now, Summit Warm Hearts has to raise money every year for a security guard to stay at the churches in the nights when folks are sleeping there from November through March. Um, we have several different houses of worship that are providing food and meals on, on cold nights. We have someone who's working and, well, who's volunteering at the, at the Beacon United during the day from nine to one, who has to assist with these folks and help them, do the intake, get the information about them, help provide, find job training, um, help provide, find housing for them through vouchers. Case management, Bridges has a, a social worker, and Atlantic Health has a social worker that they help us, but not all the time. So, I, I would call those soft costs, things that we could use that would help our current organized structures, let's say, Summit Warm Hearts, Interfaith, help them provide the services that they're currently providing without having to, on an annual basis, go to the public, private citizens, and race funds. I mean, that would be my idea of one of the first things. If those programs, if grant money is not available for them, then, well, then we learn, we didn't, we don't get the money.
So, is, is it totally blind right now? Is it just a hope that they will have those types of soft programs?
We need to learn, yes, yes.
So, there's no things that you've seen that you have your eye on? Because it sounds like they really focus on giving.
Well, if they do, then we're not going to have the success that we'd like to have, but we have to find out.
We, we also heard that we had, earlier, we have an extremely lean municipal budget. We have no additional funding for any new staff, any new programs. If there's a grant program that requires matching funds, sorry, we can't do it. Right? If, you know, and I think that's like a really good frame of reference to look at this through. We, we just got our budget situation also.
And you have to say that, please say that the Bergen model was something that you all visited. You visited, Nora.
Yeah.
You all, we talked about it. So, the fact that, uh, folks, uh, are saying that is something that is a good thing, it has been at the core of what this council and staff have investigated. And so, and here's where I'm like wanting to, to jump out of my seat, because I am now hearing a disconnect between what is existing in other places that is missing at the county, is what we, what, in the county of Union, we think we can force to have happen that we, and it doesn't have to be to build shelters. It could be the things that you all are, are raising, but if we are not at the table and at a, as a municipality...
So, you're saying we'd be pushing for, uh, Union County to get these services and then help Summit, or that Summit would deal with them directly? And that we would be the hub of this kind of activity?
Well, no, no, no. I don't, we would not commit ourselves to being the hub for Union County. And, and what, what, what I want to make sure, um, council president, uh, I am hearing a disconnect, uh, that needs to, uh, uh, talk about a structure that is being formed to get funds and ideas that are, the federal government is looking for ideas for local implementation.
How long has COC been around? It, it's not last year, right?
Um, can I, can I just say something? May I say something?
Sure.
Well...
I didn't, I didn't research that part.
So, I wasn't going to pull these out, because I'm clearly, apparently, the person who doesn't want to help the homeless now, which isn't true. But one of the things that I was really frustrated around, and again, I didn't know how long the COC had been in existence. This is what I found when I tried to find the Union County website. So, it's not that I don't want to help the homeless, or all of these people don't want to help the homeless. The website isn't where it was. When I looked on the Hut Exchange for who's in charge of the COC, I'll pick that up later, who's in charge of the COC, her name was Samantha Carpio. When I called Samantha Carpio yesterday, again, I just learned about this three weeks ago, when I called Samantha Carpio yesterday, now I knew the answers, but again, I'm trying to educate myself as I would the public. So, I called Samantha. She no longer works for Union County. So, I got Randy. Randy, are you in charge? No, I'm not in charge. I write the grants. Okay, we talk about what kind of grants you write. Well, if you're not in charge, who is in charge? Jennifer. Can I talk to Jennifer? Nope, Jennifer's on maternity leave. Okay, who's in charge? I know Samantha's in charge. Who's in charge? Agnes is in charge. I ask Agnes a few questions, I'm back to Samantha. So, again, what's the rush? It sounds like a great thing, but what is the rush tonight?
So, so, Delia, those would have been excellent questions to submit to me.
I just got them yesterday.
When I, no, when I asked...
Yesterday.
Hang on. When I asked, after the last council meeting, let's get all of our council questions together...
I was working on them.
And we'll go...
As fast as I could.
And we'll go to the county, and we'll ask our questions, and then they'll get them back to us in writing, and then we'll all be able to read them.
I don't want to ask my questions through you, I'm sorry. Maybe sometimes, but I need to do my, and I, I'm trying to get caught up. You guys have been doing this for three or four months.
I understand. So, okay, let's, let's...
My, my only point about asking how long COC has been in existence is, how long have we been in the dark about it?
I think our, our mayor has been very candid with you, uh, with the public, and I know we're talking about so many different things.
No, I just mean for us to think it's so good right now. When was it six months ago?
No, no, no. We are telling you the county has, the framework may have been in existence in the state of New Jersey, and how it is executed in Union County has not benefited Summit. It has not benefited Summit. And there has been a concerted effort because the funding and the opportunity for different ways to access federal, state dollars is changing. And now, an opportunity exists for Summit to influence how the county is operating, which we need you to know, has been inferior. We all know that. And now, this is the opportunity that Summit can influence it, so that Summit is benefiting. Okay? And, and you, you, uh, in terms of what our councilwoman is talking about, what is the holdup? What is the downside of not moving now? We will be held up as a municipality to move forward, as a municipality to move forward because of the way our structure works with how decision-making happens. Okay?
Through you, council president?
Yeah.
Sorry, I just, I, I did have an answer to her question, real quick. It's 1994, I'm sorry.
J.C. Allen.
Yeah. Okay. Carrie, yes?
Hi, Jamel Boyer, T-04 Morris Avenue. I wasn't going to talk today, but, you know, I was just, uh, I was just witnessing, um, as you stated, Susan, a disconnect, right? A disconnect between council and a disconnect between, you know, two parts of our community. And I think that's the point, though, right? I think the point, in order to make this work, we need community buy-in. We need both sides to come together and say, hey, we want to do this. Now, the other disconnect that I see is that councilwoman Allen and Hamlet are just saying, hey, we just need more information, so that we can pull the community together and that we can do this as one community. Because we can't have one fraction that wants it and another fraction that doesn't. We'll be debating and having arguments at every council meeting. Now, um, council president, I heard you say before on Facebook Live, and there was a previous meeting, that, you know, you wanted comprehensive knowledge of this program before you would vote on it and move forward. And, you know, it, it seems like there are still kind of some unknowns. And what I've learned tonight, and actually, I learned the other day, is that, you know, you don't have to be a member, right, to attend the meetings. And there's a whole ranking system, right? And there's a project that needs to happen. We have to have... We have to have some idea of what we want to do. Is it sustainable? Some kind of tangible idea? And I think what the community is just asking is that, unless funding is imminent, but if I know the federal government, there's nothing imminent about the federal government. But I think what the community is asking for is, hey, what's the plan? Right? We just want a plan. So, you know, I get all the back and forth, right, but we are Summit, right? That, you know, we are a community. So if we could all just get on the same page and we all can get buy-in, I think maybe this will work. But at least if we have all the education, we're all edified about it, then we can, one part can equally stand up and say, I hate this idea, and the other part can say, I love this idea, right? But at least we'll have all the information and no one will be in the dark about it. And I think that's all we're saying. And that's all I have to, that's all I have to say.
Thanks.
Hi, my name's Mary Cronpus, forty-two Escotway. This is like an hour and a half past my bedtime, so I am going to be very brief. So the way I understand it, the meeting is on the eighteenth, that we would be going as a member, assuming it gets approved this evening. I guess my question is, I'm of the mind, a more measured, slow approach might be a little bit better in this case. Is there any issue with attending the meeting as an interested party on the eighteenth, then regrouping with the community the week after or the beginning of June, getting past Memorial Day, and explaining to them, how did the meeting go? What was covered? What are the expectations? Just so that everybody's aware. And then you can regroup at the next council meeting in June and go to the, whenever the next COC meeting is, you can then go as a member. I guess that, to me, that's what my husband and I would do if we were discussing something for our family, is to get information and then quickly make a decision and move on. And I think that's really what people are looking for, is just at least a little bit of a community meeting to discuss and put it out there so everybody who's in town is aware of this. I only learned about this yesterday and I actually do read a lot of the community information that's shared. So thinking that people have any idea what COC means is totally wrong because where I grew up in Chicago, COC is what they call a fly ball that goes to center field, it's called a can of corn. So that's all I wanted to share. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm still Gil Orin. And it's still the eighteenth. I did submit twenty-nine questions that had been supplied to me. Half of them have been answered so far, half. And I've learned a lot tonight. I think, what I heard last week from Council President, you have committees. And when the committees are ready, it comes here. And if you're a council person who asks a question to another committee, it's sandbagging. I think, my man, yeah, Jamal, that I called?
Yeah.
We got to get together. Trust, trust. We don't have trust here. You have to trust the public and we have to trust you. Trust has two main ingredients, truth and transparency. And this is not ready for a vote to join something we had to look up when they were put in existence. I did ask questions. I got some answers. I can answer one question for you right now. Who are the municipalities that are members right now? And they did answer that. It wasn't private. Mrs. Toploski answered it. I have it right here. They are. The City of Elizabeth, Linden, and Raway, they're the municipalities. Plainfield and Elizabeth have a housing authority that's a member, but the municipalities are three of the twenty-one or is it twenty-two municipalities?
It's somewhere around there.
Where are they? Where are the other ones? Here they are. She answered it, Toploski, Mrs. Toploski. Other municipalities have been invited in the past, but due to staffing limitation, were unable to participate. And you just said, Mr. President, we don't have money for a staff if we're going to get involved in this. How simple is this to attend some of these meetings? This didn't happen overnight, homelessness, and we all, believe me, I feel exactly the way you do, you're a pillar of this committee and I respect you, right? But we do need a minister.
Gil, you're not, you're not going to be on the.
Steve, people from home won't hear you if you don't speak into the mic.
Three minutes, three minutes?
No, no, no.
No, we're saying, speak into the mic so people can hear what you're saying and the people watching.
I will conclude today.
So, so, so two quick things.
Here's what I'm saying.
Okay.
All the questions I asked that were given to me, half have been answered. The other half have to be answered as well. And wonderful questions have come up tonight. And all the spirit, everybody here agrees, we have to do something, we had to do better, we can always do better. It's like parking. There'll never be a solution to parking in Summit, but it can be improved and we can improve it.
Yeah, that's good.
And that's where I'm coming from. This is silly to rush. That destroys the trust. You say, well, we've been doing this since November. I'm with this young lady, where?
She left. She left.
So, yeah, so, so, so just a couple, so just a couple of quick things. So the other municipalities, the three municipalities that you listed.
The other ones have all been invited. They declined because they didn't want to create staffing and they wanted to handle it themselves where they are.
So the little bit of, the little bit of confusion is that for some of these other municipalities, all of them actually, they're sending to be part of it, staff people from the municipality. And that's not what we're doing. I know for sure, Michael has a lot to do and all the other department heads have too much to do. So this is going to be me, Greg Vartan, representing the City of Summit. I'm not going to, we're not going to assign it to another council member because we all have enough meetings, but there'll be an alternate spot and Lisa will come with me and that's fantastic. But other municipalities are sending staff people and I think, I think that's just a little bit of a disconnect. They weren't, they weren't talking about hiring more people.
This is what she answered, not you.
Right.
She said this.
Yeah, that's what I, yeah, yeah.
They're not members.
Sure, and then one more thing.
Yeah, so I just wanted to say, this idea that we've been working on this since November, we have been meeting.
You have, right?
No, no, I have not. That's what I'd like to explain.
Well, somebody has.
Would you please let me finish?
A committee has.
Let me just explain.
Go ahead.
So this committee that has been meeting, it was the Mayor's Forum on Diversity that started meeting with the Interfaith Council, Summit Warm Hearts, and, you know, all of the groups that, and Bridges as well, all the groups that have contact with homelessness. And the idea was to, to talk about how to sort of get everyone out of their silos and work together. That started in November. We didn't learn about the COC until we spoke to Dr. Callahan in February. And as soon as he told us about this, we invited him to come to a council meeting. So we have not been holding this secret from other people.
That's a good step.
And what I want to explain to you and everyone else, we met with Julia Orlando, we went to visit the Bergen County, but that's only something we can do if we have the county's cooperation. That is all county-run in Bergen County. That's, you know, it's something we'd very much like to do and that's a reason to join the COC, is to be at the table to say, we want to do what Bergen County's doing in our county.
I don't disagree, but to use the baseball analogy, you're in the dugout. We are outside waiting for a ticket, for information. And I think everybody here, if there's anybody here that's against helping the homeless, they should leave as well. But it's not ready. You haven't brought the public with you. And if you make this decision, it'll be the same thing that we, before. You have committees that when you're ready to vote, you vote. No, you got to involve the public.
We have involved the most impacted, the most impacted is who comes to that Mayor's Forum on Diversity. Please, please understand the difference between the public and who is at the table. And that is the difference between the urgency that we're talking about here.
There's no urgency.
There, talk, did you just hear from Amanda Block, there is an urgency and some of the other folks that are talking. And I hear you, I hear you and I know I'm out of order, so Council President, forgive me, but I do.
No, I respect you.
I really do think in terms of the urgency that the downside of putting this into the public's hands is, is creating a bigger divide. It is going to create a bigger divide. And if you would come to the Mayor's Forum on Diversity and join and, and learn about the most impacted and do what you do best, which is offer solutions instead of an avenue to divide, is what is happening, is what I really have to say, that that is the delay that we who are feeling the urgent plea from those who are most impacted, and they are the public, those who are coming are those who are providing the services without any resources.
Bring the public with you and.
We do want to do that. We do want to do that.
And you have a large interested public here.
Yes.
Learning, learning, learning.
Yes.
You, whoever's on that committee had four months to work on it. We've had four days. I'm saying it's not urgent in terms of a month. There's no reason, ordinance is introduced, then there's a hearing. A resolution can be voted on at the same time, but it can be done next month after people who are interested go to the meetings and the rest of this public gets with you. Trust is truth and transparency. Give it time.
Thank you.
Tara Gagliano, six Ashwood Court. Boy, you guys are very passionate about helping the homeless. Are you guys that passionate about helping taxpaying residents? Okay, because I'm one of the most impacted taxpaying residents in this city right now. And I want to know if this urgency to join the COC at this point is a backdoor way for more affordable housing funding? Because everybody seems to be talking about grants, access, and other things, okay? And nobody up in the council has expressed what those grants are. I haven't heard anything other than from a testimonial here about affordable housing. I just find it funny that, you know, President Vartan is going to be on that committee representing the City of Summit and aren't you on the Housing Committee?
I am.
Yeah. So, my house is a duplex and I, my house is right next to the Morris Habitat for Humanity Site. And it's owned by my parents. And my parents, along with the other residents of Ashwood Court, fought to keep the court a court and not have an access way. We did not fight Habitat for Humanity or housing. As a matter of fact, part of the settlement was for my parents to grant an easement for that site to have water. And that's what we did. And now my property remains a mess. Mayor Radist, I've been up to speak with you several times about it. Marjorie Fox, we've spoke to you. You didn't help us at all.
I don't think you did speak to me.
Oh, it was in the beginning on the last council meeting when all of this was approved along with President Vartan, who was just a councilman. Yes. I want to know if the, the RFPs that were put through for Ashwood Court, which would now not only I would have affordable housing on the side of my house, but now in front of my house, that parcel of land that is literally a postage stamp, is that a backdoor way to get more funding to develop that land now?
No.
So, so, wait.
Let's, so, let's, okay. So I think we're talking about two very separate issues.
No, it's not, because we're talking about grants. I heard about grants. It is directly connected to the COC. I want to know if us joining the COC and the urgency for that is to provide more affordable housing. We have housing on Morris Avenue for the Morris Habitat for Humanity Site. You want to put, you put an RFP through for more housing in front of my house. I would completely surround it. On top of that, you have housing on Russell Place, you have housing down on Morris Avenue. Why is all housing, affordable housing, being, all this new housing is being located in East Summit?
Okay, joining the COC has nothing to do with trying to get more affordable housing, nothing.
So, so what are these grants that I'm hearing about? I need clarification.
We want to join to learn about what grants are available.
But they don't do long-term affordable housing.
They don't do affordable housing.
Right, and so let's just, let's just separate.
I'm hearing about construction, new construction.
Excuse me, one moment. So let's just separate the two issues again as well, because there was, there was several years ago, right, the settlement agreement between the City of Summit, the residents of Ashwood Court, and Habitat for Humanity, right? And that's a completely separate thing from what we're discussing here. And there has been no RFP submitted for anything on Ashwood Court and we, I think, should get together and talk about that separately at a different time, but it has really genuinely no connection to the issue that we're talking about. I, well, we can, I look forward to connecting though and we can talk about that, really. So, thank you.
Well, you'll need to connect with me because with my parents.
Yeah, send me an email, please. Send me an email and we'll, we'll get together. I'm right across the street still on Russell Place and my grandparents are still right around the corner.
Yeah, I know, your grandparents are my brother's godparents.
Yeah.
My parents were very good friends.
Right around the corner. So we'll, please, send me an email, we'll talk about that, but it's really a very separate issue.
But I think it should be on the record because my parents have died since and I cannot settle my dad's estate.
I'm sorry to hear that.
Well, you know, we're working on the deed.
No, you're not working on the deed. I had to hire my attorney to correct the deed. So now it's coming out of my pocket because the City of Summit owns my house.
Yeah. You know what? This is not part of this conversation.
Mr. Council, may I say something?
That's not true.
Let's keep it.
I just, I think it's important that we, can I just address her comment real quick?
Okay, excuse me, everybody.
It won't.
Excuse me, everybody.
It will, I think.
Okay. All right. Let's continue with public comment.
Hello, Eric Kraslaski, one sixty-nine Broad Street. I will avoid being redundant. Had personally shared some comments with the council and the mayor, just in terms of my own personal feelings, I am of the opinion and implore this group to considering holding off on the vote. I know we can go back and forth playing ping pong. I have a very, very simple compromise as a solution, since there is skepticism and I'll address kind of the elephant in the room, the T-word, trust. What if we, since we're headed down the inevitable path of voting in favor of this, what if either Councilmember Allen or Councilmember Hamlet were to be the representative for Summit for COC?
We should discuss it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Other comments? Yeah, can we try to, let's do everybody once first, like seconds, you know, or in the cafeteria or something.
Hello, council members. Reverend Dr. Robin Tanner, I'm Vice President of the Summit Interfaith Council, as well as a member of the lead ministry team at the Beacon Unitarian Universalist Congregation. Apologies for my late arrival to this meeting. I was at our congregational board meeting. I was at our congregational board meeting, so I did something wrong in a past life, I guess, to keep going to board meetings. I had an eloquent piece I was going to share, an etymology of the world welfare. But, you know, just to get down to an exact concern I have. Whether we join Continuum of Care tonight or the vote is postponed, I agree that there is a deep issue of trust. But I think truth and transparency work both ways. And that it's not only the truth and transparency coming from council, but it's also within the Summit community. And I'm disturbed just by the small amount of behavior I've seen even within this meeting and in prior council meetings. It, there's a certain erosion of civility in Summit. And we often talk about a Summit being exceptional. And what concerns me is a growing trend across the country of a breakdown in trust and a way in which we behave together as a community. When I was a child, I used to spend many summers with my grandparents. And on one of the, in one of those summers, my, in the, you know, we woke up early in the morning and my cousins and I heard my grandmother scream at my grandfather, "Bob, are you trying to kill me?" And of course, that got our attention because they were normally pretty civil to one another. And we went into the kitchen and asked my grandfather what happened. And he explained that my grandmother, being a diabetic, he had put the wrong jam on the toast and gave her the full sugar jam. And that's what occurred. And we said, "Well, why does she scream at you over that?" And he said, "Kids, it's never just about the jam." And I feel a little like it's not just about the jam in this moment. As we talk about truth and transparency, building trust, I think it's important within the community that all residents in Summit also commit to not sharing narratives without founding that those narratives are true, without sharing facts that have not been verified, and disputing the evidence that is put forward. Because what we begin to have is a conversation about the fears in the community, the fears of building a shelter for those who are unhoused, the fears of something being pushed upon people without any clear evidence that that is what is going to happen. So if we're going to talk about truth and transparency, I implore all of us, and I hold myself to the standard, to please share the facts, share the decision-making. But the backroom conversations and the constant interruption of council members and speaking over one another and the lack of respect that we're showing one another just in this room this evening, I don't think is the exceptional Summit that we should be striving toward or the people who built this community would seek of us.
Kevin McGoy, Woodland Avenue. I actually wasn't going to talk about this. I don't know enough about Continuum Care. I don't want to know enough about it at this point. I've spent way too much time digging in and trying to understand other things that have gone on. But there is a pattern of making uninformed, poor decisions that this city council has made. And there's also a pattern of not exactly owning up to them. And I was just sitting back there right now, and I think what, what she just alluded to was what goes on and I, that you, that you spread, you're a big part, believe it or not, the way that you present things, you make this about ideologies. Everybody, if these people were here during the other meetings where they watched them, all that was ever asked for, and it's based on all of the mistakes that you guys have made, okay? They, you never admitted any of them. But we're just saying, here goes another situation where something gets brought up. People have questions. You can't answer them. Other council people have questions. You can't answer them. Gil, if you read through his, you, you guys should be thanking. You have a resident come in here thoughtfully presenting ideas, questions you should be asking on behalf of Summit. It helps you understand what are we getting ourselves into, okay? I have heard numerous times, we have to join this because we, we can't attend the meetings if we don't join it. That was said numerous times. Norrie, you said it to me yesterday. We can, the thing is, all of these council meetings are on YouTube. So we can go back and, I, you guys know I'm good at this, right? I clip it and I, I point it out, and there's a ton more, right? And unfortunately for a lot of people, I think that we need to document why there is some, why there is an enormous lack of trust. And I can document it all. It's going to take me a lot of time. But I will methodically go through and show times when you guys have knowingly misrepresented things to people and continued to knowingly misrepresent things. So now, I'm in the back of the room next to a minister who's basically saying, when she comes up here, and it's about more than information, that it's about people's bias. People don't want this. This is the same thing that I heard in, you said I was against affordable housing because I said a building's too big, right? I gave you numerous reasons. It was a horrible financial deal. And at the end of it, you said, "You're against affordable housing. That's why you're doing this." So this, you spread this. When you started off your thing, you talked about homelessness. We have a homelessness problem, and we can do the status quo or we can fix it. Nobody here is saying doing the status quo. There were a lot of other programs. When Callahan was here, he talked about proceeds. You didn't even know what it was. Proceeds sound like an excellent solution. It was something that helps people. And Norrie explained to me yesterday, it helps people to stop becoming homeless when they get into those financial situations. It's not going to help the drug addicts, but it's going to help the people that you're talking about. And that's going to help people in Summit. We should know about that. We should go after that. All we're saying is you're committing the city to something that we don't understand. And you can say you have a seat at the table, but Greg, you're one seat at a table of how many? But, and, and I don't think Union County does a lot for us, but we're the rich town and, you know, that's just the way that life works, and that is fair. The rich pay more because we don't need as much. We don't get as much back. That's just the way it works. It's interesting that the pilot program, one of the big selling points was, we don't send money to the county. So, you know, it's just frustrating for me to like watch you guys literally defied. Like, these people think that what the issue that we have is, we're worried, we don't, we're against homeless people. We're against these dirty people. That's literally what he was basically implying to me, right? Like, you're biased. I'm not biased. It has nothing to do with that, but that's caused by you. It's by, it's by you telling these people or getting these people out. These people are against the C O C. We're not against the C O C. We don't know enough about it. We're against them making decisions that they don't fully understand. You know, that's all we're saying. And like, I don't know how you're ever going to gain, regain trust. I don't know how you're ever going to do it. Because up until today, I'm hearing more lies. You, you've said, "We need to join this because we can't get money if we don't join it." But now you're saying, "We don't want money. We're not going to take the money. We don't even know what the money's for." I mean, it was interesting to hear Amanda. Like, I would love for Amanda, it seems like you guys could learn a lot from Amanda. How much have you talked to her?
A lot, a lot.
Right, okay, well then, why, why do we not have all the answers? That's all we're doing. You don't need to rush to do this. Then the people are saying, you're, it's unfair. It's cruel not to join because you're not going to help these people. Why are they talking about? You can go. We can learn more. We can help people. We're not going to get money from them. According to Callahan, you had to have a program in place. Does the city have a program? Every single nonprofit, you guys should all join it because you have boots on the ground. You have things that you can get money from. We can't get any money. We don't have a program, right? So, and I, I still, tonight, I don't know what the grants are. Amanda made it sound like a lot of it was for housing, and that's a concern for people because, you know, there's not a lot of trust here. And you can say one thing, and Greg, you're going to be the guy up there. How busy are you? I'm serious. You have a job. This is like your life, the city council thing. I mean, but you've made a ton of mistakes. You've, 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 at the last meeting, you told Orin we had written approval from the, from NJ DOT. You said that. You told him we would, for the Babel Street closer in 2002. You blatantly told him that. That was 100% factually inaccurate, and we'll get when that in general comments. But I, what I just couldn't stop is that you literally are dividing this town, making these people think that anybody, that we're against this and that there's some kind of ideological divide. And you're fostering that and using it like a politician. It's just gross.
All right. Any other comments?
Chuck Rush, 10 Stony Hill Court. Leaders lead. I just want to zoom out here for just a minute. And one of the frustrating things, I've been a minister in Summit almost for 30 years. So this is not my first time to the rodeo with this. And most of the time, we haven't had that much that's been done on the part of the town, which is why our most creative outreaches have come from people in town. I wish we had those voices at the table coordinating with government so that we could get a more, a bigger solution to this. The reason that the churches do so much with the homeless is because the town doesn't do much of anything for the homeless, and they end up at our door. And so Bridges started at Christ Church. The community food bank started from a woman in town who decided that she'd had enough of this. And somebody, and, you know, she wanted to take care of that. Amanda has started this program, reaching out to people. We've had all of these different, by the way, Family Promise also. First church, first town that they started in was in Summit. And our church was the first church that they actually had homeless people serving, all because people in town saw a problem and wanted to get involved. And this was their outreach effort to try to do it. We can do better than this. And longer term, we have never had a coordinated approach that has allowed us to provide services to people in our communities that have done anything with and through the government. It's all been just charity so far, and that's just not enough. This just isn't good enough. And the problem is going to persist. Doesn't have, I appreciate the drug addiction. It's all true, Marcus, you know, and I, I'm totally behind that. That's why we have three AA meetings every day at our church. But about 1% of our population is always going to be unable to provide for themselves for whatever reason it is. And they're just not going away. And we have to eventually, whether it's tonight or in the future, join the conversation more thoroughly than we have. We're just not doing a good enough job. We've got a tremendous amount of talent. And our ideas coming to the table are going to really maybe transform the whole way that we've been thinking about this in our county up till this point. Bottom line.
Thank you.
Council president, can I just say, I mean, there's someone else. Oh, go ahead.
Yeah. I just want to say a simple thing. Those people who are involved daily in taking care of the homeless want us to act quickly. Now, Councilwoman Allen, I empathize very much, and I thank you for the story you shared about your react, your emotional, by valence, so to speak, reaction to a situation that made you uncomfortable. Yes, fear, but also compassion. And I hear a lot of fear in this room. I hear a lot of fear about this. But nobody who knows how organizations work can argue that having a seat at the table is not a valuable thing to have. You always get a lot more having a seat at the table than not having it. It costs us nothing to get a seat at a table, and we can leave whenever we want if we don't like it. We need this. We need it quickly. We have our leaders in faith telling us that it's cruel not to do it. Maybe some people do not trust some people who sit at the dais because they're politicians. Maybe they're from the same party, maybe it's from the opposite party for their reason. But I think that the moral leaders of our community have spoken, have told us we need this quickly. So I will, you guys get to vote. I don't, but I will leave it at that. Thank you.
Can you, Diego, can you just give us your last name and address?
Sorry, Diego Quik, now I got a court.
Thank you. Okay.
Hi, Dory Gagnon. I wasn't going to speak tonight. But there, there's, there's so much disconnect here at every meeting. And it's like, it's so disgusting. It is almost 12 o'clock at night. And we hold these things on a big budget meeting, and, and I don't understand why. It's like, can't we digest the budget? It's like, that's, that's hard enough. And poor Mr. Rogers has spent months on this because it's, it's like such a big thing. But, you know, I want to applaud all the people here and the volunteers who do spend their time. Amanda and Interfaith and, and all the clergy and the ministers and everybody who, and, and up here who have worked their time with the homeless. And tonight, it's not about who's against it and who's for it. It's about the trust. And Mr. Vartan, I'm sorry, with all due respect to you, you are not the person to be sitting with the C O C discussing on how to tackle that. These people out here have worked with them. They're the ones, Amanda Block and, and all these people out here who actually spend day in and day out representing the homeless. But you being, you know, on, on the affordable housing and then with the homeless, representing the C O C, are not the man to do that. We need someone who understands what they're going through, someone who's been in rehab, someone who's been in the Marines and understands what they're doing on the ground and has a conversation with them. We need someone representing them and, and what they stand for. So with all due respect, we need someone from the city or someone with a nonprofit who's doing that. So if you're going to vote tonight on this, you really need to understand as, as an alternate or somebody else from the city, what we're doing. And if we're going to be applying for those funds, because that's obviously the sounds because those, that point system that the C O C outlined, it's really confusing. And, and it's really upsetting that there's no mental illness in there that it's tackling. Like, oh, I get like three points for tackling mental illness and helping them. Because we need a social worker lined up for that. That, that's like number one on the priority for these guys, and they need to help. So like what Marcus was talking about is like, that, that should be huge along, like they need housing. Is that what a big priority is? Because it sounds like it. But we don't have, you can't give us the answers. Everyone's asked all these questions. But I, I, I'm not trying to embarrass you or put you on the spot, but like, we need, these people out here know what they're doing. And, and you being on both boards and all this affordable housing and stuff, I, I, I feel like we need to figure that out before we say, yes, you're representing the city and answering all these questions to help these homeless, when you might not be the right man for the job. Thank you.
Thank you. Sure.
Just one final comment. I think that at this point, the need to join the organization, to me, is clear. It's needed to be, to have a seat at the table. However, I don't think it limits how many people can attend the meetings. And as a result of that, council president has offered, because I heard him say earlier that the rest of the council members are extremely busy. Not that he's not busy, but he volunteered to do that. So if he goes, what, what is there to say that people from the community cannot also attend along with him? We are a community of volunteers. Whoever wants to step up to the plate and attend with him, or when he cannot go, maybe one of the other council person can attend. So it doesn't limit, you know, he, I think we should give him credit for volunteering of his time, his willingness to, to go and, and learn. But he should not go alone. He should not be a long ranger. So if there's anybody in the, in, in, in the, in the audience who's willing to say, "Council president, I will go. I will accompany you." You know, we can have five or six members from the Summit community be there as long as we have a seat at the table. He should not be the one representative because if he came back and I wasn't there or you wasn't there, I don't even know exactly what took, took place if you're talking about trust and transparency. If you're saying you don't trust him here, are you going to trust him there? So what I'm saying is that we're not limited. Any member of, of common council can go or with him. Any, any member behind, any person behind me can attend. If I'm available, I'll be willing to go, but don't write that, don't, don't put me down. So I think we all can share in this, and that's a way of building trust. Trust comes about, it's a work in progress. Once you lose it, you have to start back working at it. But it can be regained. But we're all in this thing together. We all either go up to the top together or we go to the bottom together. And I think we want to succeed in what we have to do. So I say, I recommend that we approve this. We need to be there, but don't let him go by himself. Thank you.
Thank you.
What I'm hearing from the, I'm going to call them service providers, is there's a desperate need, and they need help immediately, and it's urgent. And I get that. What, I only heard about this Bergen County program two days ago. Apparently you've known about it more, and you agree it's good. Rich, back me up. Thank you so much, in saying that it has literally ended homelessness in Bergen County. To my knowledge, and I am very uninformed, that's pretty much the only solution that's working anywhere. So I. So I see going in two different directions, and what I'm trying to say, it sounds like the point of going to the COC is to get help for our service providers. It has, the homeless, despite all the work that they're doing, more and more and more, the homeless population is increasing. My gut tells me most of it are not Summit residents. I don't know, I asked that question, I didn't get an answer. I think we're providing so many services, people are coming here because we're treating them well, and I'm not saying not to do that, but I don't think the homeless population, the Summit homeless population, I don't know, is that big. And I'm not, that does, I'm not saying we don't help people, but the solution that's worked is the Bergen County one, which is county centric. It's focused, it's one central location where every single service is provided. And I actually have a tiny bit of experience with it because my cousin's son is on the verge of being homeless and is probably going there, and I only was able to refer him because I heard about this two days ago. There's an intake, everything's there. He doesn't have to worry about laundry, food, nothing. It's in one location in Hackensack, opposite the county jail. It's not divided among all the other cities. I bet you New Providence, Mountain Side, Berkeley Heights, they're sitting back loving that we're taking care of all the homeless people in the area. It's, we want to get the problem solved, and if joining the COC, if you can put pressure on the county to look at this Bergen County model, which is the only model that's working, right? We see here, the more we do in Summit, the more our population grows. That's what I'm trying to say.
Thank you, Vicki.
Marcus McNamara, 53, Morris Avenue. You know, there's a thing called enabling in addiction, and you have a parent or you have a spouse, and you keep getting them out of trouble, and you keep getting them out of trouble, and there's never consequences. Why would somebody stop? You know, you could go online and look up numbers of homeless people who were arrested, who did this, and they were forced to finally get sober. All the services that everybody provides are fantastic, the, I was used, I am lower to moderate income, I'm not rich, and there's been numerous services that I've used personally in Summit to help with food and stuff when me and my wife had first gotten married. We're good now. We're good now because I got sober and became a man. But I think my biggest fear and most people's fear here who don't want to sign this thing right away is I'm getting a real hard sell here. Like if I go buy a car and somebody really pushes on me, I don't like it. I'm getting a hard sell, and, you know, I will volunteer and go with you guys, and we can go talk to these homeless people, find out exactly where they're from, what they need, you know, I will go, I will do that. I'll go to the COC. But I just feel it's really important not to just put Band-Aids on things, like the real issues have to be addressed. Listen, I had a house in Summit, sold it, moved to Costa Rica, came back, was renting, wanted to buy a house, I can't afford a house in Summit. I had a great apartment, I was really good friends with the landlord, old guy, he passed away. His son raised my rent from 1,700 to 4,700. I had to go find a new place. I know what it's like, you know what I mean? I didn't blame anybody. I'm not, you know, I pull my bootstraps up, you know what I mean? I could solve this thing right now, but nobody's going to like it because it's not going to be nice. You know what I mean? You got to have tough love. I know what it's like to be an alcoholic. They will take and take and take. I took and took and took, and I'm not, I don't enjoy getting up here and exposing my past, I have a business here, all that stuff. I really don't, but I really feel this problem will not get solved if the number one underlying issue is mental illness and addiction. I had a lady call me, my wife's Costa Rican, I'm pretty close with a Costa Rican family or a community. This lady calls me, I don't know her, she's getting thrown out of her apartment, she's crying, she called me 20 times, you know, they got her a place down in Newark, but she wanted to stay in Summit. But, you know, I don't know, I, you know, just, it's the whole process of doing it right the first time, because either decisions Broad Street West, Maple Street, these are decisions that affect, will affect my children, you know what I mean? Like, I'm not saying this, like I said, I don't have enough information, I don't know. And the biggest red flag, I listened to the guy, Callahan, whatever, the Irish guy, and I didn't hear one single mention of help for alcohol or drug addiction, and I'm not, I don't pull punches. There may be one or two people living in a train station who are legitimately just homeless, they're hardworking, and something happened to them like almost happened to me, but I'd say 95% of them are drug addicted or alcoholic. And let's be real, we got to be honest, and please, I really want you guys to be honest. I'm an honest guy. Please be honest with us. Thank you.
Counsel President, I just want to echo something that I've heard the last speakers mention that Amanda mentioned that is missing from this conversation, and it is about preventative homeless services. And that is what is happening at an epidemic rate, and these are people who are invisible to us because they're not reaching out. And these are people who are, have lived in Summit and who are unable to afford the things that are happening, and reaching out through Grace and through the Interfaith. These are the invisible homeless that this opportunity will allow us to urgently address. So I just wanted to make sure that that gets into the conversation.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
Sue Fiesler, 71 Madison Avenue. I have had the opportunity to talk to every single one of the homeless people who have come through Summit this year. I've gotten to know them, I know their needs, I know where they're from, and I can tell you, not all of them are drug addicts and alcoholics. I can also tell you that in July 19th, 1988, I came to Summit because I was in recovery. I was homeless before I went to Fair Oaks, and I moved to Summit to get my life back together. I can tell you, every day I talk to the men and women in the train sta, they're people, they're not homeless, they're people. The men and women in the train station who just want to get their life back together. They're in Summit not because we give them services. We give services because they're here. They're in Summit because they don't get beat up here. They get robbed in Morristown, they get beat up in Newark, they get beat up in Elizabeth, they don't get beat up in Summit. That's the bottom line. We have vets that are sitting in the train station that we're talking about right now. They went to Vietnam, and we're like, oh, wait, we don't have the time for this right now, let's learn more. No, it's a matter of life and death. There is a sense of urgency for this. There is nothing to lose by joining this COC, but everything to gain. What we will lose by not doing it is more lives in the train station. And I'll tell you, I got to know these guys personally, and I take it all personal. And if you want to know about any one of them, just ask. That's it, thanks.
Thank you, Sue. Will?
Will Von Klemper, Colonial Road. After the previous speaker, we should almost close. Summit joining the COC could be the beginning of some of the other municipalities in our county joining. I think that's a leadership that we can provide. I confess, I'm, I feel bad, I feel uncomfortable when I see a homeless person. I've been in situations where I've even been fearful. I'm probably not alone. The discomfort, the fearfulness that perhaps others have is manifesting itself tonight in a number of ways. I think it's manifesting itself in blindness to what we know that COC is easy in, easy out. I think it leads us to focus on only moving forward if we have all the answers when I believe we don't know all the questions. We don't know all the options. There's a hesitation here that comes out of the fear. The bad feelings manifest themselves, I've heard raised voices, I've heard the word disgusting, I've heard crazy. I think that's just because we're humans and the subject makes us nervous. I think the fear is unnecessary, it's unfounded. Join, please. Lead in our county. Once we're there, Westfield, Cranford, they may find they don't need to fear. Let's start. It's easy in, it's easy out. The questionnaire, I read the questionnaire for the questions and answers that was online, that was really useful. So, yeah, I'm nervous when I see homeless people, but I move ahead. I hope you will too. Thank you.
Make a comment, Council President.
Sure.
I would just like to say, and thank you for your comments, I would say that I was nervous when I went to war, but I went anyway. It's not that homelessness makes us nervous, and I think the mayor, with all due respect, she was trying to do something great here. She was really trying to figure out a problem with homelessness. And what happened was, they went to Bergen County, which is doing great things. So they started doing great things, and I think Councilwoman Levine mentioned at a council meeting or two ago that maybe we should have given more updates, and maybe that would have sped up the learning curve. So I think the intentions were really good here, and I think that all of our intentions are to join the COC. What happened was, when we went to Union County, the program just isn't as robust, it's just not there yet. And for some of us, that just simply raises more questions on what are we getting into? Because it's just not as fully developed, and we just needed some more time. So I hope that tonight, I think tonight was needed, for sure. I mean, I know personally that I was relentless trying to get New Jersey Transit to help the homeless in the train station, because you know what makes me uncomfortable? Is letting them sit there without an outreach van and without services. That makes me very uncomfortable, and that should not be acceptable in Summit, New Jersey. But we've been doing it forever. How often have we been pushing New Jersey Transit to come and clean it up? We have to hold Union County accountable, we have to hold New Jersey Transit accountable, we have to hold ourselves accountable. And Mayor, I congratulate you for really trying to do the right thing here. I think maybe we do need, for the community, maybe, as the Reverend said, maybe a different leadership up at the county to make everybody feel more comfortable. But thank you for taking this leadership, and I feel badly that you've, a lot of you have put a lot of work into this, and I think the important thing to recognize is we just have some questions, and this is a big topic, and we want to get it right.
One quick remark through you, Counsel President, that the working group or that our mayor assembled included the transit police, and they were present in those meetings.
I just want to clarify, so the mayor's form of diversity has been around for 20-some years, and it goes through ups and downs in terms of its usefulness and the amount of time that it gets together. Since I've been mayor, we've convened at minimum four times a year. Our last meeting was, of the whole group, was in November, and I said, we typically have a couple of different things we talk about, or I just open it up to the members of the forum and say, you know, what are the topics that you want to discuss? This one in advance, I said in my email inviting everyone come to the meeting, we have one topic, and that's the homeless situation at Summit right now, and so what can we do? And I had a sense that we had, I knew, we had lots of groups that were trying to do various things, I just didn't know how much they were communicating. I had a sense that we had silos going on, and I wanted them to work together, and then that's from that, we formed this working group, which is, was made up of representatives of the various organizations that were providing services, including Bridges, Grace, Summit Warmhearts, Atlantic Behavioral Health, Police. I did not, and they ended up having conversations on Zoom most Fridays, just to share what they were doing and to share the help that they could give each other. I was not part of any of those conversations, nor were any members of council. This was what these nonprofits were working on together. I helped them only in the sense that I helped them raise some funds through the GoFundMe that was set up online. Sorry, getting late, my mouth is dry. And then we heard, learned about Dr. Callahan, so through Rich and Greg. So we had him come and talk to us, and we said, wow, this is interesting, I didn't even know this stuff existed. We've asked the county for assistance over the years, haven't gotten it. Okay, let's have him come and talk to council. That's when, that's when he came in February to talk to council. We were just trying to learn, and we heard about this continuum of care, it doesn't require us to do anything, as Mr. Von Klemper said, easy in, easy out. We don't have all the answers, we don't even know all the questions, we don't know what the grants are that's available. We want to learn, we can go and get rolling here, and if we think it's a waste of our time, out, we're done. If we think we can help make the continuum of care in Union County more robust and more effective, then let's have a seat at the table and let's do that. As Amanda said, they're woefully behind other counties. Well, let's make them better. We were smart people, and I think you're right, Reverend Harriel, it shouldn't but just be one councilperson who goes, we can bring other people. Why not? It's always better to have a couple of heads rather than one. So that's why I want to say, I wanted to clarify how this whole thing got rolling. It was not through council, it was through the mayor's form of diversity, and then the working group or the people that are the boots on the ground. Sue Fiesler, every single day, involved with Summit Warmhearts. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel President, I just want to, I know that it's getting late, but I just want to clarify, the first thing I did when we talked about the COC after the council meeting is I went to Union County, I went to Google, and I typed in Union County, Continuum of Care. And Councilwoman Hamlet's right, the link is broken. And so that was a journey of reaching out to lots of other individuals and organizations, but the fact that from the get-go, Union County doesn't have the information on their site is derelict of my duty to be able to do the right research, because you guys should expect me to be prepared, right? And so I feel like the, what I'm struggling with is that, are we going to get, there's a lot of questions that are contradictions. Are we going to get funding? Are we not going to get funding? If we get funding, we have to, it's through HUD, and if we don't get funding, we can't be part of the HIMSS. But the HIMSS is part of the reason why we're joining, but we're not really going to get funding. And why aren't the providers going to the table? Because the providers can go to these meetings. I know, I'm just trying to tell you what my contradictions are. The other thing is, is I've been told, the top three things that we're joining, we're joining because we need to go to the meeting, in order to go, I'm sorry, in order to go to the meeting, we have to be a member. That is not true. I was told that we're joining it because we need to be there in order to get into HIMSS, because that's how we help the individuals who are homeless. That's not true. I'm told that now, in order to get funding, I'm sorry, in order to join HIMSS, you have to get funding, but I've been told we're not going to join, we're not sitting around the table just to get funding. So there's just a number of contradictions, and yes, I shared the story about Duncan Donance with Councilwoman Levine to show you that we're all human, and we are a paradox, we're all complicated, and it doesn't matter. My identity, number one, is I'm a parent, I'm a wife, I'm a Christian, I'm a councilwoman, I'm a volunteer. I happen to check a certain box on this dais, but that doesn't make any other identity that I have any less. And Sue, I absolutely appreciate your And Sue, I absolutely appreciate your story. The fact that you know every single name of every individual out there who deserves dignity and respect, thank you for what you do. And you're right, they all deserve the attention and appreciation and compassion and empathy. And you've done your due diligence. And I would just like to be able to know that there are questions that can get answered. And last point, Mayor, when someone said, well, what is the C O C? Well, it's not really defined. I don't want to join something that, in order to find out the answers. It is our job to find out answers so that when we join, we add value. And leaders don't just throw spaghetti on the wall. Leaders have a plan. And we can go to the meeting. I don't know what will change tomorrow. If anybody can tell me what will change tomorrow, if I vote yes, and we become, and we go to the C O C. This is urgent. It is 1,000% urgent. That's why every single one in this room is invited to go to the C O C on May 18th. But if we join tomorrow, or tonight, we vote yes, what will change tomorrow? Because we're not going to go to the meeting till the 18th. So what is going to change?
I can tell you that leaders also have an intention. And please talk about what your intention is for this urgent situation and this urgent need that has been expressed. Talk about your intention.
That's, that's my question. You actually asked-
No, I'm asking, I'm asking, as Councilwoman, you were talking about-
That is my question. You're right.
Yeah, what is your, no, what is your intention? Is what I'm asking. When you talk about how leadership shows up with those three things that you said are what was the intention of this mayor and council in attacking an urgent need? And I am asking you, Councilwoman, please share what is your intention in tackling this urgent need that we have all said is urgent? What is your intention?
I'll tell you what our job is. It's to understand what we're voting on and have answers to the things we vote on. I absolutely respect that you guys have met and you have met with the appropriate stakeholders to try to solve this problem. Like, there's no, this is not even an argument. My intention is to say, I don't have the answers that I'm seeking. When you go to Union County, the link is broken. And it is our job. Now, do I need to show up at a meeting? Or I'm not going to show up, not show up to a meeting because the link is broken? I'm not saying I'm not going to do that. I'm simply saying, like, everybody out there is going to say, you have to vote tonight because otherwise you don't care about homeless. That is simply not true. That's how I feel. I just, you should know that that's how I feel. That because I don't have the right answers tonight, I don't feel like I have to vote yes, but that doesn't mean I don't care about homeless. And I'm disappointed that I just don't have more answers. And I will go, but my intention, I'll go to the May 18th meeting. I will go with whoever wants to go. And Sue, if you will spend time with me, I will go to the train station. I will meet anybody that you want me to meet. I am human and I am open to this room. Because I am here temporarily to solve problems. And when I don't get answers, I will tell you that I need more answers. And however I can participate to get those answers, I will work with you. That's my intention. I just, I just don't have the answers that I need tonight. That's all. And I, and there's so many contradictions that I just need to share that with you. So you know it's in my heart. It's not that I don't want to not solve it. It's just, I'm feeling like I'm hitting a wall because I don't feel as though we've done our due diligence to make an educated vote. We can still go to the meeting on May 18th and not be a member. I will go.
So I think, you know, there are, this is an imperfect, the C O C in Union County, from what I'm hearing, is imperfect. Granted, the website isn't good. There's information that isn't out there. But we have made, you know, we've, you know, Councilmember Vartan, Council President Vartan, reached out to Christina Topolowski and got answers very quickly, very, you know, very good answers to the questions. You know, we have made every effort to get as much information as we can. But at some point, this is letting the perfect be the enemy of the good. Or the good be the, something like that, it's a little late. But my point is, we could study this to death, but I think what's more important is for us to act. And I think we know enough to know that this is something we can do without a downside. And we can go and we can get more information, we can find out what grants are out there. What we get at a minimum is the opportunity to sit down and meet with some of these organizations and learn about some of them. And, you know, there are a number of organizations that in talking with Rich and with Mike Callahan, that we didn't know existed, that we now know exist. And the opportunity to go and meet with those organizations and understand what they can bring back to Summit. And, you know, to people and what our existing groups can, can sort of harness by knowing about this. And I think absolutely, you know, Amanda's already going for Grace. I think that Summit Warmhearts members should go as well. You know, but there is a difference. We play a different role as a municipality than the nonprofits and, you know, and interfaith groups do. We wear different hats, we have different strengths, we are able to do different things. And, you know, and I think we should use our, you know, our relationship within the Union County system to harness these things and to make this, to help shape this organization. If it's lacking and it's less good than other counties, then we should be there to work on making it better. I just don't see how studying this more makes any difference. And I think there are always going to be people who want us to study more as a way of not doing anything. And I say, we move forward, we figure out what, you know, we go and anyone who wants to go, that's great. And we find out more and we work to solve a problem.
Thank you. So I'd made a comment before and just didn't feel as though it was properly addressed. And maybe so through you, Council President Vartan, before I make an assumption, would Councilmember Allen or Councilmember Hamlet be willing to serve as the representative for Summit? And then for all council members, any reservations if Councilmember Hamlet or Allen were to serve as a Summit representative?
I think that's-
So it's the responsibility of the Council President to decide what committees are assigned to whom and all of the liaisons' assignments.
But if the urgency is representation-
Eric, the answer is no. I'm going to be the person who's primarily representing Summit.
And that, that's where, but that's in fairness, that's-
So, so, excuse me. I'm going to be the person primarily representing Summit because it's the prerogative of the Council Presidents who makes those decisions. I'm going, I'm going to, I mean, I'm guessing, we're going to have now 75 people that, from Summit, they want to come with us, right? So anybody that's welcome, anybody's welcome to come with us. But we've got to put somebody's name on the form as the primary person for Summit, and that's going to be me. So I hope that answers the question.
Yeah, but respectfully, if the urgency is being at the meeting and representation from Summit, there's no reason, there shouldn't be trust in any of your fellow council members? And so there's distrust from members of the community. However, if we have the right representation or feeling of right representation, you can work towards a point of compromise. And I fully agree to the point of we can over-engineer this and there are multiple outlets. And I agree with the Reverend about volunteer, and I agree with Ms. Gagnon about we should also kind of diversify our participation, the service organization should be as well. But the number one priority should not be your representation at C O C. It should be a representative of council. And you all should be comfortable with any one council member serving as the single representative.
Thanks. Thank you for your comment.
So I posed a question through you-
I'm answering. I'm answering the question.
You can't, you can't poll individual council members.
Yeah. I'm answering the question. Thank you.
So, so just, so I'm clear, the priority is your representation on C O C and not Summit's?
I'm going to be representing the city-
I'll take that in the affirmative.
As the primary person, as the contact for Summit. Thank you.
Sitting a long time, my legs are giving out. Rosemary Grace Chestnut Avenue. I didn't intend to speak and everything has been said. This is like beating a dead horse at this point. And it's very late. And my voice and my throat is very dry as well. I just want to say that I trust that you, Council President Vartan, will represent this city in the best way possible. I think what's going on here is a power struggle, pure and simple. And there are people that don't seem to recognize that there are procedures here. There have been procedures when this council was all one party. Now, we're actually more democratic in that we have two parties that are represented here. But in a democracy, and on this council, the majority will prevail. But I get a very strong feeling from the undercurrent of comments I keep hearing behind me and around me, is that there is tremendous resistance to this exercise of democracy. And disrespect. And it really upsets me and disappoints me tremendously. And this has been a theme, just as the Reverend from Beacon said, this has been a theme that's been happening at many meetings. And I just wish people would take a self-inventory of their behavior. Yes. Yes. And you know who you are. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Hi, Bob Palowski, 3 Crest Baker Court. Just following up on some comments that I made on the last meeting, at the last meeting about this. You know, I said that this sounds like it might be a good and promising program, and I still think that that's the case. I'm not sure. I also said that I really think it's important for the town, the city, that everybody feel good about this. Everybody feel that they were heard. Everybody feel like they got their questions answered. You guys answered some questions tonight, you didn't answer others. You know, not everybody has the stamina to make it to a meeting like this or to make it through a meeting like this. I think it's a mistake that, that we're not taking written questions from people who couldn't come here. I think you should consider changing that. So I just think that you guys should hold off on the vote. Because, you know, as a lot of people have mentioned here tonight, trust is really important. And it's pretty clear that a lot of people don't trust the council's motives when it comes to this. I don't know if I'm one of them or not. But, you know, you could take a step towards rebuilding that trust, especially since you can go to the meeting. And one question I had was, since 1994, when the C O C started, how many C O C meetings have any council members gone to?
We didn't even know about the C O C until February.
So how many meetings since February have any council members gone to?
Thank you.
Council President, thank you for letting us be heard tonight. I feel like we've had a good dialogue and that we've been able to share our concerns. I would like to see the Housing Authority join the C O C. I spoke with Morse County Human Services. They said that generally the municipalities don't join their C O C, it's all the providers. So, you know, I don't know in Bergen, if the, they have, if their C O C has their municipalities as part of, do we know if, because I just want to say this and then I'll ask a question. Bergen is a great model. But Bergen County's peer is Union County. And so we're a municipality. And so we're trying to say that we're going to emulate Bergen County's model in our municipality. So, all right. So are there other, are there other municipalities in the C O C in Bergen? But why don't, that's what I mean, why don't we, and I mean to be respectful, I'm sorry-
Because it's not relevant.
It is relevant. We've compared our C O C to Bergen all night long.
No, we haven't. We've said that we want to accomplish the zero, you know, the zero homelessness that Bergen has accomplished. And we would like to push Union County to adopt a program like Bergen County's, which is all under one roof, that uses the same model. And that our presence at the table is a way that we can advocate for that kind of program. That's all we've said.
If anything, sorry to interrupt both of you. Through you, I'm interrupting both of them. Is that okay? Okay, thank you.
Sure. 12, almost 12:30.
What was I even going to say? Oh, Bergen, right. So Bergen County, if anything, I think we have been contrasting them. I don't think we've been comparing them. And just to give some history and color as to how we became acquainted with Julia Orlando, and it was the same people who have been advising us regarding the C O C. It was actually Rich set up, you know, we went with Rich, sorry, Rich, I'm always talking about you, but, you know, Rich was with us when we went, you know, to Hackensack. And these weren't meant to be done instead of, it wasn't, okay, guys, which one are you going to do, C O C or go visit Julia Orlando and check out her model? These were done always in parallel. Create, some, joining the C O C is something we could do now and start, and whether, you know, it leads to change soon thereafter or not, it's something we could do now with no resistance and nothing really needed just to join. Whereas Julia Orlando did in Bergen County, took, you know, decades and is something that we can't do right away. That's like the long range plan that we can learn about, educate ourselves about what's possible, and have in our minds as like a, as a model. And when, anytime I've spoken to anyone who is an expert in this area, they've always stated that as the model, the functional zero, what they've done in Bergen County. And that always comes out first. But that's not attainable for a municipality. We would never, for, no one, none, no one among us would have a reasonable expectation that we in Summit are going to recreate the Bergen County model. That just makes no sense. But we, it would be amazing if Union County had something like that. And being part of the C O C, starting to make these connections, having these conversations, then that concept can all of a sudden, with the fervor of a municipality like Summit, I mean, please, like Summit is going to buy into something like that for the county, then I think that does carry a lot of weight. Because as you guys know, when it comes to that pot of tax money, who's giving them the most money? Union County, which municipality? I mean, you know, it's us. And who's getting the least amount of funding from the county to deal with homelessness? Summit. So I'm bringing that up. And that was my point I was going to make just after I interrupted you. But one more, like, super quick point was, this was sort of mentioned today, but as another gain of being part of the C O C, is that the federal government gives money to the county to use and decide how to use to try to end, prevent homelessness and end people's homelessness. And the people who are voting members of the C O C are the ones who help have a big say and where that money goes. And if you're not there, then the people who are there at the table, they're the ones deciding where that money goes. And it's not coming to Summit. So that's another important point I wanted to make. Okay, I interrupted you and you. So-
I think we're ready.
Okay. Sorry.
I think we're at a, I think we're at a point- No, done. I think we're at a point where I think we're, we've made a lot of the same points over and over again. So let's, let's- Yeah, done. We got to call it. It's, it's almost 12:30. So let's, let's, let's call for a vote on this. I think it's probably best to do it as a roll call vote at this point.
Ready?
Born that way.
Ms. Allen?
Respectfully, no, nay.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Hairston?
Yes.
Ms. Hamlet?
Respectfully, no.
Dr. Levine?
Yes.
Mr. Miniger?
Yes.
President Vartan?
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Let's take like literally three minutes. Let's take three minutes. We've got, we've got a consent agenda. We've got a lot of stuff left to do. So I want us to take a three minute break. Because I promised one three and a half hours ago. We're now at the consent agenda portion of the evening. So I'll ask anybody if there's anything they want to pull out of here that they're going to, that they anticipate they want to discuss. Nope. Okay, so we'll make a motion or we'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. The consent agenda is approved. We are now at the public comments portion of the evening. We'll hear topics from, comments from members of the council, of the public about issues that are not topics on tonight's agenda. If you have something read or if you're reading from something prepared, please provide a copy to the city clerk. And let's try and keep it around three minutes. And please have a seat when you're all done. All right.
Thank you so much. Did Aaron leave for the night?
Possibly.
Oh, really?
Michael, Michael told staff that they could leave.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, okay.
He didn't tell me I could leave.
You're stuck with us, sorry. If it's a question specifically for Aaron and you just want to email it.
Oh, I've emailed it already.
Okay.
I've emailed it for a couple of weeks. I'm disappointed the truth and transparency crowd left. Because that's why I waited five hours to get up here. And I know that you're going to say the past is in the past about 2022. But I have a couple of quick questions that I didn't get answers for in email. And Nora, on Saturday, you said you would ask Aaron and then he would email me. So in 2022, has anything ever submitted to the Department of Transportation to close Maple Street? Was anything submitted in writing? Let's say yes or no.
It's not about, you can, this is public comment, not a public grilling of the council.
Oh, it's not a grilling.
No, no, so you can just ask your questions.
So yes or, so yes or no?
They're not going to answer your questions.
They're not going to answer my questions. Okay, so nothing, okay, perfect. Public comment. We know now that nothing was ever submitted in April of 2022. We know that the street was closed within four weeks without any due diligence being done. There is five criteria to make a street a pedestrian mall, which this council, Mr. Miniger, Ms. Hairston, Ms. Fox, Ms. Allen, Mr. Vartan voted on. Ms. Rades, you signed the ordinance. In August, Aaron got an email from the Department of Transportation letting him know what needed to be done. I could, yeah. You're on the email too, Marjorie. And she left her mailing address so that he could send her not only the ordinance, but additional information. In August, nothing was sent either, not a grilling. Statement of fact, which I know is really important to the people that left tonight. Instead of this council doing the work, they left the street closed unlawfully. They knew about it. They continued to leave the street closed. You didn't do the work. You didn't do the due diligence. You lied to the community, Greg, who said you had approval from the DOT. You didn't, right? And you continue week after week after week, false narratives, misinformation. And then you blame the people in the room for asking questions. Yes, that's what you do, Nora.
I'm not blaming anybody.
And if you have the approval, why don't you just send it? Because it doesn't exist.
So I'll just start by saying, at the meeting last week, when I was speaking with Mr. Orin, who's still here, I, I did believe that we had written approval from the DOT. And I spoke without confirming that information. And that was my mistake and I sincerely apologize. And I, I sent you the email earlier saying that as well. Yep, thank you.
May I make a comment on that?
Yeah.
So I think it's really important to take this moment to, and I spoke with, I'll just say here, I think it's really important, I think Councilwoman Hairston and I spoke about it today, that when we put an ordinance in a packet going forward, that we also put the potential permit in the packet. And inside the ordinance also has a date that says, until we get the permit, the approved permit, we won't close the road. And then that circles back to the lawyer because I feel like what we're missing is, is sort of a closing the loop. So I, we can talk about it maybe amongst ourselves, but I think maybe we should tighten up that process a little bit. Just things will get missed.
Okay. Thank you. Come on up. It's a, it's a new day. Almost.
It is.
I'm still Gil Orin. And now it's 12:35 of the next day. At the finish Maple Street, I was at the meeting. I'm going to read this because I don't want any, I want my, say something that, that I don't want to say. At the council meeting on April 4th, Council President Vartan stated that the closure of Maple Street in 2022 was approved by the NJ Department of Transportation prior to the closure as required by NJ SA 39,4-8 and other statutes that relate and administrative code that relates to that. After the meeting, I requested a copy of the prior approval of the closure by NJ DOT received by Summit. Yesterday, I received a letter from the City of Summit confirming that no approved prior approval, no prior approval from NJ DOT was either requested or received by the city prior to or during the closure of Maple Street in 2022. The failure by the city to comply with the requirements of the NJ New Jersey State law is a very serious omission. It rendered the closure in 2022 illegal. Today, I received an email from Council President Vartan acknowledging that he was mistaken and he said he was sorry, which I accepted. The process of NJ DOT approval is onerous as described by Summit City Solicitor, Mr. Jukowi, many times. The statute provides that no ordinance or resolution to close a street for more than 48 hours shall be of any force or effect unless it is approved by NJ DOT after a proper written application from the city, including a certified statement by the city official, one official, after a detailed study. One could ask, why bring this up now? Although obvious, the answer is that the illegal closure was wrong. It could have been exposed the city to liability for any loss that occurred. For example, if we need one, last week, a driver of a large truck lost control of a truck due to a medical condition, jumped the curb and slammed into the Summit Diner. Fortunately, no one was injured. However, if that same driver of the large truck passed out and proceeded uncontrolled at a very high rate of speed on Maple Street from Union Place to the forest when Maple Street was closed with diners in the street eating, the city's loss could be staggering due to the nature of the illegal closure. It is entirely possible that the city, if the city had followed the law and made application to DOT to close Maple Street, it could have been denied by NJ DOT on the basis that Maple Street should remain open as just one of two main arteries to and from Summit's downtown. And I sign that, I'll leave copies. I'm going to leave it at that.
I'm concerned, very concerned, as you know.
Thank you.
This one. That will circulate.
Yep, thank you.
I watched the last council meeting away on break with my family. And I have to tell you, the comments made about staying in your lane from council member up here was truly disgusting because Councilwoman Hamlet is the only one up here who I applaud for fact checking everybody. Because right now, Council President Vartan, you should be ashamed of yourself. The fact that that road was closed illegally and nobody was hurt thankfully, I mean, we don't know if somebody was hurt. You do realize Ms. Colby S. lives there. If there was a fire and that's her home next to the Elks, God forbid we couldn't get there, okay? We came here for like over a year. Not talking about not outdoor dining. We didn't want outdoor dining. It was the fact that it was a major artery. My husband came and explained the whole like heart and artery and all that stuff. It wasn't done legally. And so you're yelling at her for not staying in her lane. She's fact checking you. In the COC, we're fact checking you, saying, are we doing this right? Can we take a pause? We were fact checking you for Broad Street West and you were wrong. You were wrong. Like 500 feet or 200 feet or like, what is it? What are we doing here? And you're wrong. Like, are we playing like, it's like fifth grade math or is this calculus? What are we doing here, guys? Nobody knows. And she's spending hours and hours and hours. She's not sleeping. Why? Because nobody can do their job. Everyone's a volunteer, but like, God, it's not legal. If you don't know what you're doing, take a pause. Why are we here till 1 o'clock in the morning? None of this makes sense. I, I, a public comment. This poor woman over here has her whole front yard ripped up. And she's been waiting for how many hours to speak? Public comment should be at the beginning. And you should have known today was going to be a long meeting. We all knew it. Have her speak in the beginning. The whole year I thought was going to go great with you. We were like, oh, yeah, you was going to. No, it's not. It's a nightmare. Everyone needs to rethink what's going on in this council. Because guess what? It's a shit show and it's 1 o'clock in the morning.
Thank you for your comment.
Don Nelson, 20 Plain Street. I'm flabbergasted to hear what my fellow members have said that this was an illegal closure. If this was, if that was me and I was in my job, I would have been fired. So I think a public apology should be applied. The facts should be printed. And resignation or some other form of justice should be held. You can look up, taking notes. My problem with this, I'm sick to my stomach because I've been involved with this town for a long time. And this is the first time that I've ever heard something like this happen. Susan, you and I go way back. Have you ever heard this happen before? When we talked about trust, we just lost the trust. Just lost the trust. And I worked in a, in a career where trust is everything and you just lost mine. And probably a lot of other peoples in town. And I hope that you would put a public opinion hour letter to the editor explaining what happened if you want to get the trust back. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bruce Therkoff, owner of 26 Maple Street in Summit. Ditto to what the other people said. But I have a, I have a question here for the council. Is it my understanding that before they canceled Maple Street to open up, that the SDI had actually transferred or was about to transfer around $80,000 to the town? And was the town actually going to accept it to go ahead and buy outdoor furniture for the four restaurateurs and new, and also new barriers? Was that being considered? I'm asking it.
There was a question, a discussion at an SDI board meeting about whether or not they would possibly do something like that. There was no number thrown around, to my knowledge. And there was certainly no description of stuff. But it was a conversation. It was like, well, let's talk about it. We'll wait and see what the city does.
So there was no money that was moved over and then moved back?
I do not believe so.
Well, you were at the meeting then, right?
Yeah, I was.
Okay, you're at the meeting. So the SDI was thinking about purchasing furniture for four restaurateurs who are profiting from the extra seating capacity of the street.
Mr. Therkoff.
Wait a minute. And they want the other 221 people in town who are paying their surcharges to actually pay for the furniture for these? I'm just, I'm just asking.
It was, I'm answering. It was not furniture for the restaurants. There was possibly other seating throughout the area, but not restaurant furniture. The restaurateurs were going to have to buy their own furniture.
Okay, all right. But there was, there was some, also there's, I guess there was, they were talking about moving, what other, what else were they talking about purchasing other than the barriers?
Just as I said, some, so like sort of some casual seating so that it would be usable for people that were not just going to the restaurant. But it was a very vague conversation because the city hadn't decided what to do.
I guess.
So nothing was decided. There was no money put into a fund. The SDI had a reserve fund.
I guess what I'm really confused about is that there's such a push to try to close Maple Street, which you people did last year. It was illegal, which you did. And then, and then you, you persist in pushing this and, and, and for four, for four restaurateurs that could go out of business tomorrow or, and, and, and what is the, what is the benefit to the other 221 businesses in town of closing Maple Street other than for the four restaurateurs? I heard a story and I don't, this is, again, it's hearsay, all right? But that one of the, and I don't know whether they appeared here in a council meeting, but one of the restaurateurs apparently mentioned, or I don't, maybe it was another meeting at the SDI, that they had to turn away 60 or 70 people on a weekend. You know, if they had had the, the streets, they would have been able to accommodate these people. Well, is, they, they bought a restaurant to accommodate their business. They didn't buy a restaurant to, to include in that business the street, street dining. That has nothing to do with it. If they needed a larger place to accommodate people, go buy another building. You know, I mean, don't try to say you're, you're, you're not closing the streets anymore and I'm going to lose business. I'm sorry, that doesn't hold water. It doesn't hold water. And that's, this whole thing is, is, as far as Maple Street is concerned, and he's, it, it doesn't make sense. It does not make sense because it's not being fair to, the doubt, the search and search taxes are not being used to the benefit of everybody in town, just a few people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. How you been?
Hi. Don Cachario, 6 Ashwood Court. After my wife standing up, Councilman Vartan, your responses, you're familiar, I take it, with the settlement and release agreement? Okay. And I've numerous emails, Mayor Raddus, yourself. They have not followed that agreement one bit. They're using every excuse in the book. I, tons of, I've copied you on emails, Mayor Raddus. I got one from Matt Deloria the other day. It was vague. It was BS. It was just simply, there's no dates in it, you know? If, this, they broke, they broke that ground in front of my house last July. July. Any other contractor, the city would have been armed like that to say, that sidewalk's got to be fixed. Stayed open all this time. It's a mess. I'm sure you've seen the site. I know several, like, you've been down to the site, Councilman Hamlet, Lisa. What's it going to take to get them to do what they're supposed to do? So it doesn't go back into court?
I know that, and Aaron's not here, but I know that they had a meeting on Friday. And they are pushing very hard to get the contractor to do what he's supposed to do.
Red tag him.
I don't know what that means.
In other words, he's obligated to do X, Y, and Z. Like, you know, electrical, you're approved, plumbing, you're approved. They signed this settlement and release agreement. They're obligated to do this. If they're not, they're in violation. Stop them. Don't let them continue work. You see how fast they move their ass.
I'm sure. I'll discuss it with Aaron in the morning.
Yeah. Can I make a comment quickly?
Yep.
Through you, Council President. I wish Aaron were here, Director Schreger, because it just really doesn't seem fair to me that you had to wait all this time to express this concern. And it's important to me that you know that you've had the chance to talk to all the right people. And I'm hopeful that you felt like the people you needed to talk to were also available to you during normal business hours, too.
Talking...
Okay, good. Good. I'm just asking, so you wanted to come in this forum as well, which is good. But I, I personally am going to also talk with Aaron about this because it doesn't sound right. I don't know all the details, but from what I'm hearing, it really doesn't sound, it sounds like there's something going on.
There's the settlement and release agreement signed by...
I just, yeah.
So I think, Michael, so I think what we have here is, is an enforcement issue within the construction and zoning office.
Right, exactly.
And Habitat's looking for ways to get around obligations that are in that zone.
So I think, I think we're all on the same page that we're going to have, yeah, we're going to make sure that city staff follow up on this and make sure that everything is compliant. That's, that's the follow up that's going to happen.
I mean, I'm reading emails that are saying, it's impossible to do this, it's impossible, nothing's impossible.
Yeah.
It's just going to cost them a lot of money and it's, well, that's on the city's, I had one contractor tell me right out, it's the city's property, they can do whatever they want. And that's not the case because there's a legal agreement signed between three parties. So, you know, and this is the foreman that's directing the work to be done. And he's telling me this. So he's getting his orders from a higher up. This is what they intend to do.
Right. So, yeah.
Is that right, Michael?
So, there's a number of issues going on. Some of it, if it's construction related, those are different. That's the construction office that we need to have looked at. We have a consultant engineer that needs to go out on the site. So there's things that they need to be held accountable that you're seeing. And I need to clearly understand what those are. So does Aaron, so does our construction official. Whatever's settlement related, and I'm aware of some of the issues, we are working on it, we will correct it. This other issue is what was mentioned, and your wife Tara, who I've spoken to, about the affordable housing is a totally different issue.
So are you going to put a house there? I'll be blunt. Does the city intend to put, try to put a house on that small postage stamp of land?
All I can speak, well, I'll speak, I'll speak to what is. I'll speak to what is. So you want an answer, Don, I'll speak to what is. That settlement agreement says what it is. There was a contemplation of potentially two more affordable housing units. That's what it says. What was, what is actually executed on is a discussion that this council has to have and that we have to have internally with the council. And then you will get that answer soon enough. Fair enough?
Because in order to do that, every, we're not talking about like the project in one next door.
I understand.
Every setback law, I mean, literally the side of the house would be this far from my property. My picture window, I'd look out of the side of a house.
Actually, Don, I have pictures for you. So just so everybody knows, I've been, sorry, Marjorie, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Ms. Fox, but this, this has actually been really upsetting for me to go down to this neighborhood. And I'm sorry, it's going to take a few extra minutes to show my fellow council members the situation that is going on down there.
I actually did go down there.
Well, then, great.
And how do you proceed?
Well, if you haven't, I have some pictures.
So I think, I think what, I think what was...
I just wanted to just express my sincere apologies for what's going on down there. And my heart breaks for you. And that's all I wanted to say, but I really think we need to give it our undivided attention. And Michael has been wonderful at coming down there and I'm sure Aaron's been down there, so I think we're seeing progress. But I am very sorry and...
I mean, they've done everything. I mean, you know about, I mean, my house is in the City of Summit's name.
Yes, and that was not the city's doing.
It's not the city's doing. It's the fact that Habitat for Humanity hired a third-rate engineer who did it. Now, I could get no answers. You know, I got answers directly from, I have contacted county, I got right in. They said, yes, it is, your house belongs to the City of Summit. As soon as the one across the street.
And we don't want that.
I understand you don't.
Right.
But they're not willing to protect it. So I had to hire an attorney. I will sue Habitat for those legal fees. And then if they want to go after that, you know? But their feeling is, oh, well, you know, they don't care. It's just, you know?
Well, that's not right.
No.
We want to do everything we can to help.
Neither is them not completing the wall and putting up...
Yep, no, we agree 100%.
The grading being wrong.
Yep.
Water going down my drain, everything they've done. Not repairing my driveway. I mean, any other contractor, if they were building $2 million condominiums there, city beyond them like that, say, you have to do X, Y, and Z, and they would shut them down if they didn't. But because it's Habitat, it's low-income housing, you know, we have a quota to meet this, that, the other thing, they'd give them leeway to give them leeway. They don't have the right to destroy other people's property, including the city's.
Of course not. And we are, we've been talking about it, Michael, we've been working with the construction office and make them do what they have to do, what they should do.
Okay. I'll keep in touch then, and I will...
Absolutely.
I mean, Mayor Raddus has been hooked in now, tell you. So I will hook you into the emails I've been sending, Mayor Raddus, you know?
Please, we're going to follow up, we're going to follow up step one on the enforcement action and step two.
That's what I want, the enforcement action finally.
And step two on the other conversation that we're going to have.
Okay. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Hi, Don. Tara Agliano, 6 Ashwood Court. On top of all those other issues, we have parking issues as well. And not only am I impacted by the Morris Habitat for Humanity site, the two new affordable units, which Greg definitely plans to put there because I'm not stupid, which I hope that this council will take a look at my property and how badly it's impacted and my quality of life. But I'm also impacted by the park line. The park line goes right behind my house and you can look in my bathroom windows. So now that there's a walkway in front of my house, along with two affordable units, the two affordable units and the Morris Habitat, and there's an access point for the park line there, this is now going to be parking for the park line on Ashwood Court. Also, we are going through huge issues with parking with Habitat for Humanity already, parking on the court. Early in the morning, contractors, they get around it by parking their personal vehicles. There's literally no parking for any residents on the court as it sits. There needs to be some kind of ordinance passed, parking permits, or something to preserve because right now, the court is not preserved at all. At all. So we, our way of life, I have two young children, four and two years old, this has been their, my two-year-old, her whole life, my four-year-old, more than half of our life, that we've been dealing with this. On top of losing both my parents, dealing with the issue of the deed, the Habitat, my entire life has been impacted by this. I am sick to my stomach about it. And it's bad when my four-year-old walks outside and says, mommy, why are they parked there again? We can't get out of the driveway. That's a four-year-old.
All right, well, I will speak to the, I'm very sorry about that. I'll speak to the chief about that in the morning.
I mean, yesterday morning...
Because I do believe, when I saw an email, that there was some, they did discuss it with Habitat, but it has, it's enforcement and that's our responsibility.
Habitat, the contractors have told me that Habitat is personally telling them to park their vehicles on Ashwood Court. Habitat thinks you guys are a joke. And they think we're a joke. Okay? And what happened was yesterday, there they were again. And I saw a contractor walk up the clearly marked, do not walk, if you've been to the court, you've seen it, the walkway. He walked right past it, blatantly ignored it, and broke the caution tape and accessed the site. Okay? I called the cops. My daughter was late to school because I had to deal with that and he was parked right in back of my driveway. I mean, this is every day of my life. I should not have to deal with this. I should not have to deal, I should not have to pay out of pocket for my, my, the deed to get fixed because Habitat is a horrible, they claim they're a do-gooder organization and they do good based on the backs of other people. They expect us to do for them. $50,000 my parents spent and now I'm spending more. Okay? This, this, if these two houses go through in front of my house, every one of you need to imagine living around that.
Thank you. Yep, I'm going to talk to the chief in the morning. I think you should not have to deal with this.
I mean, Greg, I'm shocked.
Council President, Tara, I just wanted to say, I'm the park line liaison and along with Councilwoman Hamlet will look at the parking. We certainly do not want, first of all, I was dismayed to see your yard and the, it's late, the condition it was in. So I am really sorry and I agree with you that you cannot be looking out your front window at a wall. So, but I'll work on the parking with Councilwoman Hamlet. Okay?
Thank you.
And I'll also talk to the chief about the enforcement in the morning.
Okay. Thank you.
Kevin McGoye, Woodland Avenue. The honesty is, when I first got involved with this, and I repeat for the thousandth time, I supported everybody up there and Danny, the only person I never supported, I couldn't vote for you, but I didn't campaign for you because I trusted in David Nadoo and I trusted in you guys. And then I got involved because I saw Broad Street West, I saw Powell's presentation, I was like, this guy is selling the city down river. Talked to David, David, you know, you must talk to these people, you have to help them. Marjorie's my good friend, put me in contact with you, tried to help. I expected to help you guys be out, be gone in like a couple weeks. And my experience was unbelievable. I was lied about. It got to the point where, you all know now, I had to start recording the conversations I had with you to protect myself. I had to record conversations to protect myself because I was being lied about in the way I was representing myself and the things that I was saying. And thank God I did. I didn't put them out on blast, I didn't put the stuff that was said, which I think would shock people if they heard the stuff that came out of your mouth. I didn't pay attention to Maple Street because I was busy with that. And people were like, oh, the Maple Street, do you care about, I like the outdoor dining. When I look back at it now, Gil Orin was going through the same thing I was. He sat in front of you and laid out the legal issues with you closing that street when you voted to close it. When you just read that ordinance, in and of itself, it makes no sense. The five requirements that you need make no sense. So I didn't start looking at it until more recently, when then you have, again, you're dividing, you divide the community because you're like, everybody likes outdoor dining. Nobody's against outdoor dining. It was that you did something illegal and you can't legally close it when you look at it. And Giacobi, you said at one meeting, after several times of Greg saying, oh, well, the DOT would never have approved it if we didn't do, oh, we did, they didn't push it back. If we didn't do it, they would have pushed back. At any point in time, did you ever ask if there was approval? Certainly when people put in DOT, Oprah request for the DOT approval, which by the way, when you do Oprah requests, for whatever reason, you guys never email each other, never on the public server, but in any respect. You got this like, what, a month and a half ago, an Oprah request, and you saw, we didn't have it. So everybody else knows you don't have DOT approval, except the president of city council, who goes around telling everybody, we have written approval, we have written approval. You said at that meeting, which we knew, you knew, you didn't have. I was sending you emails, people were sending you emails. Did Rosemary never tell you? Did you never have a conversation with Aaron? Like, oh crap, you know? Like, they'll go away, they'll go away. You can look at me, Greg, it's all recorded. You don't need to take notes. There is no way you didn't know. There, I just want you to look at me because it's, you just, I know what you're thinking. This was the whole plan. Greg's going to apologize, say he shouldn't have said it, and that's going to be done. It's in the past. It's not in the past, you don't know if it's in the past. And this is the problem, Marjorie, you're a lawyer, right? We illegally closed the road for how long? What if some lawyer, somebody had a stroke during that time period on the north side or a heart attack? You don't know that that didn't happen. All they have to do is get a lawyer and the lawyer goes, oh, that was legally closed. They do traffic study. What is the traffic study going to say? That it doesn't impact response times? Of course not. Right? We don't know that you didn't create that liability for us. But what's more important is that you're just, you just lied. You just lied to us. And yes, I know that's a horrible thing and you, you say like a horrible accusation. I will document, I will document multiple lies. When I sent you emails, please take down this from the frequently asked question page, it's not true, you know it's not true, for months. Well, we're not responsible for the frequently asked question page. It's in emails, you sent it, you all were on it. You all sit by and watch people lie and it's all due to mislead. And that's why there's this horrible, horrible trust. And I'm sorry, Greg, I don't think you're going to be able to gain our trust back by being up. Sorry, I shouldn't have said that. You know, it's just so clear. You sat up here and you argued in favor, you argued against the interest of Summit when it came to the fair share housing settlement agreement. You basically, as a city representative, said your interpretation of that legal agreement was something that it wasn't, and that was very much not in the favor of Summit. And it was in the favor of a very litigious organization on the other side of the settlement agreement. You can look at me, Greg. What do you think it's going to, do you think it's going to help Summit if we wind up back in court? Which, of course we will. And we don't have 50 bill because you know we won't. They're going to sit there and go, well, your honor, even their city council thought they had to build 50, even though it does not say that in the settlement agreement and you know it does not say that. You sat up there and argued for that. I can't understand for the life of me why you did it. I don't understand what motivates you. I don't understand why you need to lie to us. It doesn't make any sense. If you're here to serve us, you wouldn't mislead us, you wouldn't lie to us. But you're very comfortable with it, very, very comfortable. You all are. And it's not the way to do business, it's not politics. I don't know if the lapel pin or something makes you think like, this is the way big-time politics are, but it's not. And I don't know what your ambitions are, but I don't see how your pattern of behavior, and people can say, oh, you care about Summit, you care about Summit. There's a lot of things that you did that doesn't align with that. And I don't know how you can feel comfortable or expect anybody to trust you when you repeatedly lie. And it is lies. Last year, all last year I spent continued to make misstatements of fact, inaccurately stated, even after you know it. I avoided the lie because I don't want to see combative, but it's just too much. I'm just so sick of this. And it's not changing, it's getting worse. You know, you have residents up here that do work for you because we want to work for us. I'm not, like, why am I here? I don't want to be dealing with this. I got involved because I was trying to help. And then I just got lied about, I saw you lying to the community. I can document it, I can document. Greg, you're good at not putting stuff on email for Oprah requests, I know that's something you tell people, but I, other people put stuff on? You do. And you know you do. But why, I put out an Oprah request for you and Justin, right? Because I wanted to see what went on there because you, you made him resign because he embellished a resume on LinkedIn.
Kevin, we're at about seven minutes now. So if I can ask...
Yeah, I could go for three hours. And me compiling the stuff is going to, with documented proof, and Susan, I'm sorry, anything that I say, I will back up. Right? And I've been very, very nice throughout this entire time, but it's gotten so out of control and so, so bad. And you're taking advantage of the fact that the people in Summit trust you because they don't pay attention. And that is, that is the worst part of this. Literally, you're able to get away with this because people don't pay attention and they blindly trust you and you make it political. I voted for all of you. I actually voted for all of you now, except the people I couldn't vote for. But I supported you, I was Team Nadoo. I did not expect this and I know where those people are coming from. Because I was on the other side. When these, when people were first talking about the gas plant or leap board, I was texting David Nadoo going, ah, you know, don't worry about it, whatever, thank you, sorry you have to put up with this. I didn't realize that this is what people were dealing with. And it's awful. And I don't know, I don't know how you live with yourself.
Thank you for your coming.
I have, listening intently to these comments by everybody and I would just ask that, the last speaker has a litany of allegations, maybe, of factual information that he has used to address the council president. And that is within all of our rights and citizens to do. However, I would caution that in the attempt to provide services for a community as a politician, there are situations that occur that we may not as residents be aware of. And your, Mr. Giacobi would probably agree that there's always a need to show intent to do something. And I have, I know all of you very well, with the exception of maybe a few whom I've gotten to know, but not as well as those of unknown for a long time. But I was, I'm standing not to speak in behalf of anybody, but I'm standing to just say that the accusations that I've heard levied against members of city council, including the president, all of us have transgressed, all in short, in many ways. We will continue to because we are imperfect beings. But I think all of you have the interests of Summit at heart. And if you don't, then I stand corrected, but I think all of you do. But if any one of your intentions was to do something harmful, that is different from you making a mistake in doing something. I have made mistakes and I'm a master politician. How do I know I'm a master politician? Because I'm married to a woman. I became a master politician when I said I do to her. And any of you who are married, you too are master politicians because it involves forgiveness, it involves listening, it involves giving people a second chance, it involves putting yourself in the place of those persons and saying, what would I do if I were in your shoes? See, we don't know. So, I would just say that I do not believe that the council president or any of your intention, whether you, whether you're accusing him or her of lying, I do not think that he intended to lie. I did not say he did not lie. I said, I don't think his intention was to lie, which is different. Intent to deceive and intent to do any injustice or whatever is different from, you know, just blatantly doing it. So, once a person apologizes, I'm respectful of Gil Orin's statement that he accepted his apology. I think that's commendable because he apologized. He apologized and I think what else can you do? You know, you want to, you know, I don't know what the other remedy is, but he apologized and I think if you apologize, you are admitting to, I mean, you're acknowledging that you're willing to try and the next time, get it right. That's what is known as second and third and fourth chances. So, I'm just, I'm just troubled by some of the things that I'm hearing. I'm troubled by some of the things that, to me, are petty, some of the things that do not need to be addressed at this council. So, I would encourage the public, once you elect a public official, know that you are not going to always agree with whoever you elect. You elect them based upon believing that they're gonna represent you in the best manner that they can and when they don't, you know, don't, you know, don't throw them, as the young people say, don't kick them to the curb, but just give them the opportunity to inform you as to why they did what they did. And if they apologize, just as you would apologize and want them to accept your apology, to do that. So, I hope that those of you who have said what you said will, you know, accept any of the council persons' apologies and then move on because trust can be rebuilt, but it has to start with two people working together. And Mr. Giacobi, I have a question for you, sir.
I'll try my best.
I very seldom ask-
I'm a wee bit tired.
I very seldom, well, this is the first time I think, no, the second time I've asked the council question. Is it permissible? And I do not know, maybe it is, maybe it's not. But in meetings of this length, in which there's been public comments, common council comments, is it permissible for any member of the public to stand and say a point of personal privilege or a point of order and call for a vote?
No.
So, that means that that can only happen up here.
Yep.
Because having asked that question, I was prepared about three hours ago to call for a vote.
Well, if you had told me, if you had told me, I would have had a different ruling at that time.
Thank you.
Susan Bowen, Waldron Avenue. I really respect what you guys do because this isn't easy. And you're not getting paid to do this. And I know you're doing your best, I really do. The through point that I'm seeing, just since I've been, as I describe it to my friends of blue haired old lady in white tennis shoes and coming to these meetings, the through point on the Maple Street or the COC or the Broad Street West, you know what it is? It's due diligence. I know, Marjorie, you're an attorney, Jamie, you're a physician. You had to learn how to do a differential diagnosis and you didn't know before. And you had to know, or I'm sure you had to know, that you needed to know the other side's argument better than your own in order to feel prepared. And I think what's needed here is more fulsome due diligence and proof thereof and possibly it's a sheet of paper. This is what we've looked at. Or in the case of the permit, was the permit, what's the date of the permit? Where's the copy of the permit? So much of this stuff, which really, really comes down to, on this side of the table, are people who are lucky enough to live in Summit, New Jersey. And that probably means that we're good at what we do, right? We've become experts in what we do. And unfortunately, I think you guys have an awful lot of experts in the stance, right? So, if there were more fulsome due diligence, if something is brought, I can't even think of the word and I'm tired, if something's brought to a vote, we should be able to think, yep, Susan Hairston saw the things, it was her thing, she was in charge of shepherding the due diligence and here's the chart, here's the permit. And then we don't have to think about it. And then, there's gonna be plenty of things we disagree about, but that's fine, that's fun, it's interesting. I actually don't really like arguing, but there are people who think it's fun. But the through point that I want you here, to hear from me, and I think maybe by extension, many of the citizens of Summit, is do your work, do the due diligence, don't come unprepared because I've done it. I was just telling Gil Orin, when I started at the Bank of New York and a long, long time ago, I had a good education, I was a CFA, I knew everything, right? It took till I was like 32 before I realized, oh, I don't know anything. I don't know anything. I've gotta work, I've got to do. And my job, of course, was doing this due diligence, which is boring, I get it, it's boring, unless you're like me and you like that sort of thing. But if we knew that we didn't have to do things like look for permits, how much more fulsome of discussion would we have? Because we would all be dealing with the same facts and we might disagree, that's okay, people disagree all the time. But I think what I'm hearing in the through point with all three of these particular issues, nobody was in charge of the due diligence. Nobody said, I'm in charge, this is my issue, ask me anything, I got it. And I support it and here's why. And I know more than the people who are gonna disagree with me about the issue. And I know what they're gonna say and I'm ready. I think maybe that's where people are describing, this lack of trust or what I'm hearing from this side is partisanship or whatever. I think that's at the crux of it, is because nobody's saying, I did the research, I'm ready to go. And if I'm not ready to go this week, I'll be ready to go in two weeks. But I'm not gonna say anything that I don't know the answer to. If I don't know, that's another great thing about being like 32, 35, maybe having a couple kids, you realize you can say, I don't know, I don't know, but I'll find out. And I think that's what's missing here and I, you know, I sit and I don't often speak, that's what's missing. You guys are great. You wouldn't be elected if you weren't caring and smart and detail oriented and willing to walk around Summit on a Saturday afternoon in July and walk on, knock on doors. Use that same energy to be prepared with the correct due diligence because then this won't happen or it'll happen less. Because I don't think anybody likes this and now I have to go to bed. Good night.
Thank you. Thank you.
Council President, I don't think anyone's gonna ask any more questions.
Yes.
I voted to close Maple Street and I voted for outdoor dining. Did DOT approve that road closure?
So, I think where we are, where we are here in this conversation about Maple Street, right, is that, is that we, what I did not know was that we did not have something in writing from them. What took place was conversations between DOT and city staff, okay? And that is where there was a miscommunication. Certainly for me, I think we had the same information, you and I, when we voted in favor of it. And we voted in favor of it because we thought it was the right thing to do for our city. And, and I am being completely honest with you when I say, I did not know that until this week, that we didn't have that. So-
In writing.
In writing. So, so I don't, you know, I don't wanna be kicking this around here, you know, this was before I was council president. I'm just telling you for me, that when, at the time, I thought, I looked at the ordinance like you looked at the ordinance and the supporting documentation that we had, we had a desire to close Maple Street because we thought it was the right thing to do for our city and we voted for it.
So, through you, Council President, Mr. Giacobi, if we, if anything had happened on Maple Street, would we, and it was not approved by DOT, would we be covered under our JIF?
Do I think you'd be covered under your JIF?
With insurance?
I think you would be covered under your JIF. The only time they don't cover, frankly, I've never seen a JIF not cover. I think that if there was, if the council voted and you had an understanding that you were voting on something that you had approval for and you voted in good faith, they'd cover that. You're still acting within the scope of your thing. Where people, where the JIFs get touchy is like if, for example, you're the alleged sexual harasser in a sexual harassment lawsuit, then they'll try to get you different coverage and they'll do a disclaimer where they can withdraw coverage. But I've never seen any of the joint insurance funds do that either.
Is your limited liability?
Not that I'm aware of.
Is the JIF primary?
No. The JIF is prime, so the way it works in, in New Jersey, there's a joint insurance fund. I think you guys are suburban Essex. There's different JIFs, I don't know what JIF they're in. And then above the JIF, there's a thing called the municipal access liability carrier that sits above it, and then above that, they have other access piles. They have policies that go up many, many millions of dollars.
Is this personal liability for them or is this-
Well, I'm not gonna keep taking questions.
Yeah, I just, I didn't wanna get off track, I just-
So, I'll just, the JIF is a joint insurance fund and it's, it's a group of municipalities that get together. There's different ones, there's ones in Bergen, there's ones in Morris, there's, I think you guys are called suburban, I think you're part of suburban Essex, right? I think that's what it's called. But there's different towns, it's not like based on like if you're in Essex County or Union County and they, and they pull it together. And then on top of joint insurance funds sits the municipal access liability carrier and they have extra access layers above it. So, I've never seen the joint insurance fund deny coverage unless there's a capelone statute of limitations or something like that. But a case like this, if a governing body votes, you guys are voting, you're elected, you vote, I mean, do people make mistakes when they vote? That happens often, there's lawsuits, people, for example, you know, a clerk doesn't produce Oprah documents, there's a lawsuit, the JIF covers it. Doesn't mean that, you know, Rosie purposely withheld something, there's a lawsuit and there's a shift of fees, that's what the JIF is there for. So, I think you would absolutely be covered.
Okay, so I just wanna say, because I voted on it, I apologize to our community for making that error. I'm embarrassed, I'm personally embarrassed. I didn't do my due diligence and because I assume, which I shouldn't do, that committees did the right work. So, I am sorry. I, like, and this is why I ask questions tonight, this is why I ask questions and I should ask questions a lot more. So, I just, people should know that I apologize, we put our city, there is a risk. And when we vote and we deliberate, that's what we, that's why we do this. And we scrutinize and we scrutinize and that's why sometimes, I mean, I'm, that's why, right? Like, we can't just jump in and say, I mean, I don't, and we won't even get into tonight, like, who knew what when? So, yeah. I just, if someone knew specifically that we needed to put paperwork in and they didn't do that and someone turned their, I don't know what that conversation looked like, but if that happened, it's wrong. It's wrong and I should be able to say that because I did something wrong. I didn't do enough of the work and I take responsibility for that. So, I won't stop asking questions. Okay, so I just, I needed to say that.
I really, through you, Council President, would like us to talk about the role and responsibility and the relationship between governing and staff and the structure of our government, which is an administrator, a city council president, a mayor and council and a whole host of staff and guidance that is provided by our constitution, by our organizing documents. And that precarious, very fragile, but absolutely statutorily guided responsibility between governance, governing body and staff and how that's carried out. Can you talk about that? Because the thing that I take as my model, coming from a more corporate structure, that how you hold staff accountable is different than doing the work and preventing the staff from being able to do their work. And that's, that is a fine line and it's why you hire who you hire and you hold them accountable. But I know that there is a whole lot of law behind it and I never wanna see a council that is 100% lawyers. Sorry, I love you lawyers, but it is not-
Lawyers can't do anything, that's why we went to law school.
So, please talk about that aspect. Because I think it would be helpful.
I think, I think that the, what, what people have to understand is, elected officials, there's no prerequisite to be an elected official. You could be a nuclear physicist or you could be- You could be a nuclear physicist, or you could be, you know, an 18-year-old kid who just graduated high school. And so the cities or municipalities, the city municipalities, towns, et cetera, you hire a, an expert, your administrator, and you hire a CFO who's a financial expert. And then they have various staff who are experts in the fields that run the day-to-day operations of those different areas. So, for example, very few people in this room know the intricacies of police work. That's why you have a chief of police and the different layers. Same thing with the fire department. You have, so I think that the governing body, an elected body, has to be able to, you know, you, you hire the different experts in the different areas. So when, you know, for example, Michael Rogers is giving his presentation tonight on the budget, he's an expert, working with Tammy and putting together a budget, municipal finance, and he's explaining it to you. So I think that you guys don't get in, you don't run the city. You don't do day-to-day operations. You have committees, and you have oversight. I think the governing body's job is to make sure that the city is well-run. You don't run the day-to-day operations. It's impossible for you as volunteers in this form of government. And the only forms of government, you know, you have such, there are certain towns where you have mayors who are full-time mayors, like Newark, Jersey City, some of the huge municipalities. But that mayor, he or she, even though they're full-time, they don't run everything. The governor doesn't run everything. They have experts in all the different departments that actually do the running, and they rely on those people. And do people make mistakes? They do. I think the Reverend said it perfectly. You know? People make mistakes. But you guys have the right to rely on it. And I think that with regard to Councilman Allen's comment, if you vote and you relied on it with the understanding that things were done, you're allowed to do that. You're covered.
Thank you.
Bob Palowski, Three Crestaker Court. Stop blaming Aaron Schreger for all your shortcomings.
We're not.
Okay? He's a good guy. He does his best. He tries to make you guys happy. All right?
Absolutely, nobody's doing that.
I don't think any of us blame him.
Absolutely, nobody's doing that.
No one has said a word.
Nope.
We all know what an illusion is, right? Illusion. Anyway, you guys passed an ordinance where you said, you found all kinds of things to be true. Marjorie, you said, "Just because we don't see it doesn't mean we don't go through processes." Okay? You guys, you didn't find any of those things. You passed an ordinance anyway. Okay? You passed an ordinance, right? Are you allowed to implement an ordinance before you get all the legal approvals that are required? Does DOT give verbal approval? Come on. You guys pivoted to verbal approval now. Are you kidding? You didn't do what you were supposed to do. Admit it. Don't say, "I'm sorry I misspoke." Say, "I'm sorry we didn't do Jack, you-know-what." There's gotta be accountability, guys.
Thank you.
Tony Melchior on 42 Maple Street. I think two records tonight. One will be, "I'm not gonna talk long." The other one will be that this is probably the longest council meeting on record.
No.
I don't even think so.
Sorry.
I don't even think so.
I'm not speaking into the mic?
No.
No? Okay. Oh, sorry about that.
Good to know the hair is still on point, though.
I know. What can I say? So all I want to say is, "I told you so." I told you this was all illegal. I told you, I told you in November. I told you in past February. And I was just, "Oh, it's Tony because he has a business on Maple Street. Oh, everybody hates Tony." Okay? I told you so. All due respect, Councilwoman Levine, and I have it on my phone, that you said to me at the last two or three council meetings, and you spoke to me and said, "Tony, we spoke this morning, and I tell you, I will tell you that we will never do anything illegal," and such and such. Councilwoman Marjorie Fox, you had said the same thing in a longer version. I, I have it, but I don't want to play.
I'm not denying that. We don't, I am, you know, I need to get more information because what I learned is what I learned last week. So, you know, I need to find out more. I'm not admitting that we did anything illegal at, you know.
We, we, we had many legal experts here, Gil Orin.
Well, we also have a lawyer who would not let us do anything that was illegal.
Of, of course he is, because he's Mr. Arduous, and he told you many times how difficult this was and how we had to do this and that. And about Leonia, which is being sued by the Department of Transportation, I think I know my next move. Have a good night.
Thank you. All right. I think that's it for public comments. So we're gonna go ahead and close that section of the meeting. And we're moving on to council member comments and new business. Anybody? Nope. Okay. All right. I think we're at the point where we can move to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes? We are adjourned. Thank you very much.